To the April 30th, 2024, meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Supervisor Koenig.
Here.
Friend.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
McPherson. And Cummings.
Here. Is there any member of the board who would like to dedicate the moment of silence today? Seeing none, we will take a general moment of silence. Thank you for all joining us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America, to the people for which it stands by one nation, under God, indivisible, the original, infinite.
Before we move on, I'd like to read a land acknowledgement. The land on which we gather is unceded territory of the Owasso-speaking UP tribe. The Amamitzin tribal band comprised of the descendants of indigenous people taken to Mission Santa Cruz and San Juan Batista during Spanish colonization of the central coast is today working hard to restore traditional stewardship practices on these lands and heal from historic trauma. With that, move on to item number three, considerations of late additions to the agenda, additions and deletions to consent and regular agendas. I'd like to call on Mr. Palacios.
Yes, Chair Cummings and members of the board. On the regular agenda, item number 12, there's additional materials. There's a revised agenda, page six, which is replaced. The formal title should read, "Hold Public Hearing to Consider Sewer Service Charges for CSA 7 and Zone 7 and 2, Adopt Resolution Setting a Public Hearing on June 4, 2024 for the Proposed Sewer Charges and Take Related Actions." On the consent agenda, item number 27, staff request that this item be deleted. Item number 44, there's additional materials, revised attachments, see Engineers' Report. Large-size attachment online and on file, no package page numbers are impacted. And then item number 59, staff request this item be deleted and will be brought back at a future date. Thank you very much. That concludes our changes.
Thank you very much. And moving on to item number four, any board members that would like to remove an item from the consent to the regular agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us on items that are not on the agenda, or if you'd like to speak to an item on consent, or speak to an item on our regular agenda, knowing that if you speak to an item that's on a regular agenda at this point in time, you will not be able to speak during that item when it is heard. So we'll go ahead and we'll open up oral communications. Good morning.
Yeah, good morning, Justin. It's April 30th, 2024. You know, wow, what's going on? What does this thing do, actually? Does it protect you like a chain leak fence, protect you from mosquitoes? Or is it just a facade? You know, what really came down about four years ago with the indoctrination that you kids are all pushing? You know, today's agenda, oh, almost 2,200 pages. Any document that's over 30 pages is not included in that printout. I've experienced where there's over 10 times the amount of material that's not actually in documents like those 2,000 pages. So, you know, a resident declared a state of emergency and FEMA became in control of this country more than four years ago. What does that actually mean? Who's in, who's in control of FEMA in this county? My understanding is it's Carlos Palacios. You know, I do call you kids. It's kind of more polite than Judas goats. Um, you know, you come up here, the art on the walls is amazing. I must have taken 30 pictures today just of the fifth floor. You know, what children can do when they're just left to do stuff is quite amazing. It seems to imply that you folks care about the children. By what you're actually doing, I don't see it as much as I'd like to. I mean, there's still an issue of police brutality that happened on June 28th, 2021. There were three videos of that. One is public information. You know, over six minutes, that's six minutes and 41 seconds is one of the lousiest examples of peace officers I've ever seen. And it was done by eight Santa Cruz city police officers. There's lots of remedies to that. I haven't seen it. So, good morning, folks.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your support of the ongoing North Coast facilities and management planning process. I'm Noel Garanbach, and I've been a North Coast homeowner for over four, almost 40 years, and I'm a board member of the Davenport North Coast Association, DNCA. We have been seeking solutions for the traffic, traffic, trash, and lack of toilets on the North Coast for many years. Finally, about five years ago, we became aware there were multiple developments, including the rail trail, national monument, and cement plant reuse with separate and disconnected plans for the North Coast. So, we spoke with supervisor, then Supervisor Ryan Coonerty, about the importance of coordinating the planning process with the various agencies. Thankfully, Ryan agreed to help out and named County Parks to be the government agency to oversee and coordinate the planning of these projects. A little shout out to Rob Didmore and Jeff Gaffney. Our DNCA board member Mike Eaton solicited funding from coastal conservancies so that the coordinated planning process could proceed. We want to thank Supervisor Coonerty, I'm sorry, Justin Cummings and staff who've been coming to the planning meetings to find solutions, along with the many stakeholders, including representatives from the California Coastal Commission, Caltrans, and the Land Trust. Now it's up to RTC, BLM, parks, and state agencies to provide well-coordinated, well-managed, safe facilities to finally resolve the problems of toilets, trash, and traffic on the magnificent North Coast. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Cummings, members of the Board of Supervisors in our Santa Cruz community. My name is Anna Sutton. I'm the Director of Nursing for our Public Health Division here in Health Services Agency. I'm here this morning to present a proclamation and read it, along with leaders and leaders across Santa Cruz County representing the various nursing specialties. In partnership with Health Improvement Project, the proclamation is as follows. We'd like to proclaim May 6 through 12 as National Nurse Week in Santa Cruz County, whereas nurses play a crucial role in providing high-quality health care to individuals and communities across Santa Cruz County.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jennifer Holm. I'm the Director of the Cabrillo College Nursing Program, and I'd like to read the second whereas statement. Whereas National Nurses Week is observed annually from May 6th through 12th, providing an opportunity to honor and recognize the dedication, compassion, and tireless efforts of nurses in delivering patient-centered care across our community in a variety of settings.
Good morning, Primavera Hernandez, Manager, Children, Family Health Unit. Whereas nurses demonstrate exceptional professionalism, resilience, and commitment in their roles as caregivers, educators, advocates, and leaders within the healthcare system.
Good morning, Emily Feen, an Assistant Director of Nursing for Santa Cruz County Public Health. Whereas the demand for nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging population, emerging health challenges, and the continuing expansion and need for quality healthcare services.
Good morning, Cesar Rochelle de Vergilio, Program Director for Health Improvement Partnership, 20 years of nursing. Whereas the theme for National Nurses Week this year, Nurses Make the Difference, highlights the invaluable contributions of nurses in promoting health equity, addressing public health challenges, championing environmental health injustice, and improving the healthcare outcomes for all individuals. And whereas during this week, we express our sincere gratitude to nurses of all levels for their unwavering service, especially in the face of unprecedented challenges, including weather-related emergencies, infectious disease threats, and healthcare workforce shortages.
To close out, we therefore ask Chair Justin Cummings, Chair of our Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, to proclaim the week of May 6 through the 12th as National Nurses Week in Santa Cruz. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for the amazing work that you provide our community as it relates to healthcare and taking care of our loved ones. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Primavera Hernandez, and I am the Manager of the Children and Family Health Branch in the County Public Health Division of the Health Services Department. I'm here to further acknowledge and celebrate nurses, and in particular, public health nurses. Public health nurses are RNs, or registered nurses, who complete extra training and maintain an additional public health license. What is really special about public health nurses is that they work to promote the health and well-being of underserved and vulnerable individuals, families, and communities. They are essential workers towards eradicating health disparities in our community. There are 18 public health nurses in the Children and Family Health Branch who, along with the rest of their teams, worked tirelessly to support some of the most vulnerable populations in our county through a wide variety of public health programs. Our nurses support children with complex medical needs through California Children's Services. They manage our county's lead poisoning prevention program, and they ensure foster children in our community see the doctor and dentist for routine care. We have public health nurses who provide education to community partners and parents to prevent sudden infant death syndrome, or SIDS, and also work to elevate the awareness of maternal mental health and advocate for readily accessible and affordable treatment in our maternal, child, and adolescent health program. We have public health nurses who provide home visiting for unhoused individuals, individuals experiencing substance use disorders, very vulnerable people. For all the reasons I mentioned above and so many more, I would like to say thank you to public health nurses on my team and in our public health division. I would also like to say thank you, Board of Supervisors, for supporting public health nursing programs. I celebrate public health nurses every day. Please join me in this celebration next week for National Nurses Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Minister Secretary. To all of you, sounding my voice, my name is Charlie Walker II, and I'm here in for home care workers, by just as home care workers, SCIU. We know that our contract is June 30th, but we are looking for a raise to have our living conditions and have better things upon ourselves. We are providers for many family members, and we do friends, loved ones. We are their care. Okay, we give care. We are that person who listens, who does physically and mentally and deal with those situations. I like what I do. Matter of fact, I am here in Santa Cruz, and I'm here and I want to stay. And I appreciate the time that I'm given to do so. So, thank you. We want more in '24. We want more in '24.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Terezita Ramirez y trabajo para el programa de IHSS. Estoy aquí para dar un testimonio como mi trabajo esencial con personas de la tercera edad. El trabajo que nosotros hacemos es esencial, ya que trabajamos con personas vulnerables que necesitan de nuestro apoyo. Personas que no tienen nuestras capacidades, personas que tienen discapacidades diferentes. Y estoy aquí para decirles que el costo de vida, de acuerdo a los vivienda, hogar, todo se está incrementando, y estamos aquí para que escuchen nuestra petición de un salario más digno. Me encanta lo que hago. Me gusta ayudar a las personas que nos necesitan. Y queremos alzar nuestra voz para que nos tomen en cuenta, ya que nuestro contrato está por vencerse. Queremos que escuchen a la voz de los más necesitados y de los que necesitan de nuestras fuerzas. Vatras.
Bueno.
Gracias.
Morning, my name is Terezita Ramirez, and I work for IHSS. I'm here representing each of the workers to give you an idea of the time that we have been coming over here and assisting people of the third age. My petition has to do with our labor that we do as essential workers. We care for people. There are vulnerable people. There are people that are up in age, and they have different necessities. That's why I'm here, so that we can request that you please give us a better increase in wages. We're not even making enough so that we can do a decent cost of living. We need to have a place where we can actually take care of our patients, and we like to keep them in their own homes because it's a lot less expensive for them to stay home instead of going to a nursing home. I work in this area, and I do it willingly because it's an employment that I do, something that I try to help people so they can have a better quality of life. So my request is that we get an increasing wage. Please take in consideration the cost of living in this area. Everything is increasing. Inflation is going up and up, and our wages, without even considering our rent, the cost of living, essential services, and even the food is going up. So that's why our contract is coming up for renewal, and I want you to please take in consideration that we're here so that you can hear our voice and take us seriously. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Vasquez. I'm an IHSS care provider. I've been
Thank you.
I've been working for IHSS for two years. I love my job. I'm here. We are here today to remind our Board of Supervisors of how hard work caregivers do with those most vulnerable, and that we also deserve to have livable wages. We currently don't have vacation pay, holiday, or pension like all of you do so. Our wages, our access to affordable care is important to take care of ourselves and our families. We have worked through a pandemic, being in the front lines, putting our clients' lives before our own. We want to remind you that our contract is coming up soon. And we ask that the board put us on path to 20 or continue to let us have affordable health insurance. We appreciate anything you can do for us. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Terrence Concannon. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Visit Santa Cruz County, this county's destination management organization. Within your consent agenda today, you will find our annual report, and I just wanted to take a few minutes, actually, 1 minute 45 seconds, to let you guys know how much I appreciate and how much my staff and my board appreciate the support of this county for the tourism industry and for our efforts to promote this destination as the world-class destination that it is. We all love living here so much, and we love to show it off. And in the eight months I've been here, I have never been more pleased, more gratified by the hard work of my staff of nine outstanding professionals. So, thank you so much for your support of our efforts. I also want to thank, for the record, Supervisor Justin Cummings for his guidance, for his leadership on our board in the last year. And I also want to welcome Supervisor Bruce McPherson to our board in a next coming fiscal year. So, thank you all again for your support of the tourism industry in this county, and thank you again for your support of Visit Santa Cruz County.
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Julia Feldman. I'm the Executive Director of the Conflict Resolution Center of Santa Cruz County. CRC has been serving the community since 1986, providing mediation, facilitation, training classes, and restorative justice processes. We cultivate peace in the agency of people by teaching skills that allow community members to resolve their own conflicts outside of formal system involvement. There are billions of dollars being invested in homeless services in our state. Rarely do you hear prevention services being given adequate attention and discussions focused on solutions. Not only does it cost significantly less money to maintain someone in their home versus connect them to new housing, it is also less traumatic and destabilizing for families. In 2023, CRC provided services to 385 people facing eviction, including 146 mediations between landlords and tenants. If eviction cannot be avoided, mediation usually leads to a soft landing for the family, meaning it provides enough of an extension that new, safe, and stable housing can be obtained. Unlawful detainers do not provide the same opportunities. About 50% of our clients are monolingual Spanish speakers in Watsonville, and the need and request for mediation services steadily increase each year. CRC is part of the Eviction Defense Collaborative, along with Community Bridges, Tenant Sanctuary, and Senior Legal Services. This highly effective collaborative that serves and advocates for people facing evictions is at grave risk of not being funded to continue this important work. At the end of this year, CRC will no longer be able to provide free services to this vulnerable population. Every person experiencing the intense stress of eviction proceedings deserves to be treated with dignity and respect and understand their legal rights. If there are no preventive measures in place to maintain people in stable housing, more people will become homeless. I request you consider the negative impact of having no free mediation services available in the county for people facing eviction, that you invest in homeless prevention services such as the EDC and Conflict Resolution Center. Thank you.
I'd like to move my cup a bit for you. My name is Kevin Flynn. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Semper Virens Fund. I've been on the board for about 15 years. Semper Virens Fund has been a protector of lands in Santa Cruz County for the last 125 years, and right now is one of the largest landowners in the county. I want to, I'm speaking today as a private individual. I live in Aptos in Seacliff neighborhood. But I think, I know my feelings, I think, are consistent with other members of the board. We've not acted in an official manner on two of these points. One is, I'm going to echo the North Coast Association in the support of a comprehensive plan for the North Coast. Semper Virens Fund, we own the 8,000-acre, co-own the 8,000-acre parcel of the San Vicente Redwoods on the North Coast, and working closely with Bureau of Land Management on the national monument and opening data. So the support of that, a comprehensive plan, I think, would be great. On a separate note, I'm disappointed in the vote of Supervisor McPherson and Supervisor Koenig against the rail and trail. And I strongly urge that the continuation of the trail and a continuation of those Section 9 and 10, if my memory serves me well, extending out from Capitola into Seacliff and then possibly beyond that. Transportation is a major issue in this county, to say the least. We have a once-in-a-lifetime, once-in-a-generation opportunity to alleviate that issue. And I can't think of another, any municipality that regrets having both a comprehensive trail system for biking as well as a public transportation system. The notion of not having public transportation in the form of rail for Santa Cruz County will be something that future generations will look upon us and say, darn it, we missed it. We missed that opportunity. The people have spoken in the referendum that went out, and the state is prepared to give us a large grant. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Serge Cagno, Executive Director of a local nonprofit, been on a lot of boards and stuff, too. A shout out to the IHSS workers. And as you know, I don't know when their contract is coming up, but it's almost impossible to get IHSS workers. So I came to talk about a friend of mine who was housed through the rehousing wave. She's in an electric wheelchair. She's not safe to transfer by herself, and I've even put ads in Craigslist trying to find IHSS workers. People don't want to do it for that price. So, please, look at that. Just, you probably hear about, historically, Santa Cruz has had a really hard time, and it relates to the housing crisis as well. So my friend was housed through whole-person care, gets support through Rehousing Wave. In the Rehousing Wave contract, it's written really well, talks about doing assessments for ADLs. If you have an elderly parent or something, you'd know that means activities of daily living, making sure the person's safe. So you do a full assessment, so you understand exactly everything that the person needs. My friend didn't get a shower for the first month that she was moved in because they never did an assessment. There was never any help. It was, it was me trying to advocate. So the reason I bring this up is because I'm still advocating for this person, and I'm dealing with housing matters and finding out that the case managers and supervisors have never seen their contract. They don't know what's in it to do that support. Number 55 on your consent agenda is giving them some more, increasing some of their contracts. And also later, you'll be talking about the core. My question or my hope is, we start talking about accountability for contracts. As far as I know, like, there isn't somebody, analysts, or somebody who actually, throughout the contract process, make sure they actually do what you're putting the money for. So, I ask that that be something that you ask about in the core process, and something that we start looking at in our contracts. Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Frances Geretto. I'm a COPA leader from Holy Cross Church here in Santa Cruz. And I'm here because COPA has had many house meetings over the past, and we have heard many, many stories about predatory practices against tenants. And there's been no, without any enforcement of current tenant protection laws, and again, no consequences for these owners or property managers who who are practicing these abuses. Most tenants can't afford legal services or afraid of retaliation. I myself am a property owner of a rental unit. I have been for over 25 years. And when we took possession of a rental unit, I made sure that I took pains to learn what the laws are, and I follow those laws. Those property owners who do practice abusive practices, there's, as I said, there's no consequences. They get either through ignorance or because they know they can get away with it. And they give us law-abiding property owners a bad name, a bad reputation. And it's divisive. So, I ask that when planning the budget, please consider support for tenant landlord protections, education, and legal services, and for outreach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Eli Holliday. I'm an organizer with COPA, which is a union of 26 faith institutions, labor unions, and nonprofits in our region. And one thing that they all have in common is a mission, and for all of our member institutions, part of that mission is care for the indigent, care for the downtrodden, and care for those that don't usually have a seat at meetings like this. And as we have been doing conversations and house meetings within our institutions recently, one thing that has come up over and over and over again is that those who are the most vulnerable in our community, especially those who have poor credit or have bad or don't have access to a social security number or documents, are oftentimes subject to abuses at the hands of a very, very small number of predatory property owners who take advantage of them, who take advantage of their status, and who, you know, they can jack up the rent, they never fix anything, and they can get evicted at a moment's notice. Something like 10% of property owners are responsible for 80% of evictions in our region. And so, we're here today as we think towards the next few weeks and the budget deliberations that will soon begin, asking that we take seriously an investment in prevention. A pound of prevention is worth an ounce of cure, or an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. I'm sorry, I screwed up the order there. And so as we start thinking about the budget over the next few weeks, we're asking to make this investment in some sort of mediation services between landlords, tenants, so that they have a forum to make agreements, and so that the solution is not just eviction, which just adds to this homeless crisis that we have in our region. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Hugh Shiba, and I'm appreciative that you're here to listen to me. I'm here to talk about Mountain Charlie Road, which in February this year had a slide, and you can see the damage that occurred there. This impasse has affected our everyday lives, stress levels. All of our households run high from school schedules. Activities for these children, they run late, and they have no way to get home. They're at additional one half hour to get home, going through Scotts Valley and coming up through Glenwood. I'm a 35-year resident of Mountain Charlie Road, and I've helped many a neighbor shoveling out the road from devastating earthquake, cleaning down trees in many a storm, and clearing out drainage ditches and debris. Each of us are neighbors on our own doing this. We've endured years of power outages, losing our refrigerator contents year after year, knowing there'll be little heat or light for homework for the kids, surviving giardia in our water, termites, wild animals, managing our own septic systems, and paying our own way in this county. The one big ask from the county is to keep our road open. Years and years of neglect, obvious fixes that have been deferred. I'm asking you to consider building a temporary bypass around this slide area. This will allow us to get through, and a temporary road access will allow a permanent solution later when funding is available. Please consider a temporary bypass so we can get through the northern end. There is no fire access. We live on that road because We live on that road because we knew we could get out two ways and now we can't. Thank you.
Yeah. My name is Chris Copeland. I'm also here to speak for the people who are affected by the slide on Mountain Charlie Road. I live on Glenwood Drive, a couple miles from the bottom of the road, so I'm very familiar with the situation. There are five houses that used to be connected to Mountain Charlie Road and are now connected to nothing. The road is gone. The county approved plans for the houses to be built, charged a lot of bundy, a lot of money for building permits, and charged even more money for occupancy permits. Then the county started collecting very high property taxes for decades. Doing those things created an obligation on the part of the county to allow those five households the quiet enjoyment of their property. They have lost that and the county is doing almost nothing to live up to the obligation. The county has said that there is nothing that can be done now. That is untrue. This slide should be mapped by a geotech company to a scale of one inch per foot. They do that with a military-grade GPS. How are you going to know when the slide stops moving if there is no map to show where it is now? Also, de-watering of the slide should start immediately. Thank you.
Yes, hello. My name is Lodmila Boyka and I primarily came here to talk to Mr. Coning, you know, First Supervisor for First District. And tomorrow you have also scheduled a meeting with the people and I request you to invite for that meeting Director of Behavior Health Division and maybe some other people finally to stop that in human torture that is going on for 12 years. 12 years, I'm trying to deliver that message to the Board of Supervisors that is a lot of violence, a lot of neglect and a lot of abuse going on by Behavior Health Division and Health Department never opened their door to listen about that and help us also. So when it gonna end? How many more years I have to live with that? Do you know when I see people smile, I, I'm happy for them. Do you know that they have that reason to smile, to laugh? I do not smile, I do not laugh for 12 years because all my mind concentrated how to protect my daughter, how to continue to protect her, what to do, how to recover her from that abuse that is going on. Because psychiatric medication is very powerful, you know, and there is right now, my daughter was imprisoned by Public Guardian first, who kept my daughter out of all public benefits. And after I got her out of hands of Public Guardian, Behavior Health Division imprisoned my daughter by the psychiatric medication, by the, all the, that hypnosis and again, so she will not be herself anymore. So please think about tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Becky Steinbruner. I am a rural resident as well on a privately maintained road. So my thoughts go out to the Mountain Charlie folks and hope that you will please help them quickly to, especially as fire season comes on, so they have secondary ingress and egress. To that point, Consent Item Number 71, you are considering closing two access roads in this, in the summit area and Ben Lomond. And I really want to ask that you, before you approve this, that you consult with Fire Marshal Chris Walters about this to ensure that you are not cutting these people off for a secondary access for emergency ingress and egress. I also want to ask, point out to you in correspondence, letter number, letter number N from Mr. Paul Lego, the Director of County Water Advisory Commission. That commission received a report from Mr. Michael Beaton regarding the condition of the water contamination at Roundtree Property. This letter requests that your board provide bottled water to the inmates and their families and I hope that you will because they have no way to get clean, safe water otherwise until the problem is fixed. I also want to point out Item Number 59, awarding another $600,000 for Forleaf. I have not heard a report back as I think Supervisor McPherson asked for the status of the CEZU fire rebuild permits and why so many are on hold. In my last few minutes, I'd like to just point out to you that the Catalyst for Local Control announced that Superior Court of Los Angeles Judge Curtis Kinn declared SB9 unconstitutional. That affects charter cities and counties and I urge you to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Charlie E., Consultant for Paharo Dunes. I'm speaking on behalf of the boards for Agenda Item 44, which is the assessment increase for CSA4, the fire district at Paharo Dunes. I'd like to first of all, thank the county staff for collaborating with homeowners associations and getting this done in a timely manner so that the election can take place in, in a way that allows for the increase in services for fire that's badly needed and especially in light of the new budget realities for Cal Fire. And I'd like to say that the boards themselves have worked very hard with outreach to their various constituents and members. And we are looking forward to a successful election and we'll see you on June 25th. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Carol Turley. I'm representing Parker Dunes Association today. I'd just like to express my appreciation for Michael Beaton from General Services, Chief Nate Armstrong and Engineer Rick Clark for helping us through the process and getting it to the point that you're ready to approve us moving forward on this assessment election. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other members of the public who are in person who would like to speak during oral communications? Okay, saying none, are there any members of the public online would like to speak?
Yes, Chair, we have callers. Caller user one, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett, we hear repeatedly of viral illnesses and this virus and that virus, and we have to have vaccines for it. There's a film called The Viral Illusion.com that sheds light on this. Also, I'm going to excerpt and get to an article called Raw Milk at the Crossroads Again from Nourishing Traditions from April 24th. And here's a little bit of it. According to the USDA press conference of March 25th this year, national laboratories had confirmed the presence of HPAI, Highly Pathogenic Avian Influenza, through testing, but it does not reveal the type of test used to detect this so-called viral illness. This article is by Shalek Fallon Morel. The first lie, researchers have found HPAI virus in the milk of six cows. Officials have not found any viruses in the milk or any other secretions of the six cows, sick cows. The CDC has yet to reply to repeated requests for proof of finding the isolated HPAI virus in any fluid of any sick chicken or other animal, nor have health and agriculture agencies in Canada, Japan, the UK and U.S. provided any proof of an isolated avian influenza virus. As for the studies you can find in a PubMed search claiming isolation in quotes of a virus, not one of them has, shows the true isolation of any virus from fluids of any animal, bird or human. The truth is that viruses serve as a whipping boy for environmental toxins and in the confinement animal system, there are lots of them, hydrogen sulfide, sulfur, carbon dioxide, methane, ammonia from excrement, for example. Then there are toxins in the feed such as arsenic added to chicken feed and mycotoxins and the list goes on. By blaming nonexistent viruses, agricultural officials-
Thank you very much for your comments.
Kami Corvin, your microphone is now available.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, if the board agrees, I have two statements. One is from me and one is from a neighbor who couldn't make it due to a medical issue. Will that be all right?
Sure, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you, sir. My name is Kami Clementson Corvin. I've lived in Castle Mobile Estates on the tracks by 38th and Capitola. I'm a 64-year-old retired senior citizen and my family has been in Santa Cruz for over 100 years. I live in a nonprofit low-income mobile home and there are approximately 24 homes that are on the tracks with almost 50% being senior citizens, mostly single, and one-third making up a diversity of the Hispanic population. This morning, I'd like to address the human factor of the RTC Section 10. It's quite obvious that no one is listening to us or addressing this issue of the folks who live on the tracks and the alleged RTC boundary and the encroachment that they are claiming. Our lives will be upheld, I'm sorry, uprooted with this plan and many of us will be displaced and our enjoyment of life and living will change as we know it. How does the county and the RTC plan on addressing this? I'll go into more this afternoon and unfortunately you'll probably get some wrath from me on that, but please address this and we want to know if you're listening. So my next statement is going to be from Christine who lives in Castle Mobile Estate and I start, I quote, "My name is Christine. I live in Castle Mobile Home Park. I've already explained how moving forward with the rail would affect my life and low-income homeowners here. I am not sure you're even hearing us or even care, but I am going to explain it again. My phone, my home will have to be moved four inches for the rail along with other residents being moved. Once again, that means our homes get cut down the middle and we will have to get new plumbing and put back together and hope it doesn't leak. While that's being done, where am I going to live with my pets? Who is going to pay for this moving and the home and my hotel? No one is talking to us. The only communications that we have is what we need to do and move by June of 2025 by the RTC."
Thank you.
Again, who is paying for this?
Jane Brockelbank, your microphone is now available.
Good morning, Supervisors. There are two of us on this one computer. After I speak, please allow Michael Lewis to speak after me. Regarding the failed CSA 9E assessment, we live in a mobile home park but do not own the property, so individually we were not allowed to vote. We would have voted yes, even though the extra tax would have been passed through to us in our monthly space rent. We were very disappointed it did not pass. We want you and Public Works to know this. Regarding Agenda Item 17, the rail trail, we see that staff has returned to this board to basically pressure you to change your minds and vote differently than you did on March 26th when you certified the EIR but did not approve the ultimate trail configuration. Has staff offered any further reasoning to change your minds today and your votes? With one exception, the answer is a resounding no. In fact, since March 26th, everyone has learned new information from the RTC consultants performing the zero emission passenger train study that makes the March 26th vote all the more imperative and wise, that is to not approve the ultimate trail configuration at this time. Therefore, please do vote to withdraw the apparently ambiguous Resolution 782024 of March 26th, which included approval of the ultimate trail configuration, and do not vote to accept the replacement resolution that still contains approval of the ultimate trail configuration. I think when the findings and overriding considerations were accepted and approved in March 26th, it was just the description of those findings. It was not that number four hidden in fine print saying, "We approve the ultimate trail configuration." Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll give two minutes to the other persons with you as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Michael Lewis. I live in Ly volk. In addition to Jean's concerns about the rail trail segments 10 and 11 results from last, from March 26th, I'm most concerned about the lack of transparency on the part of these proceedings that has resulted in considerable misunderstanding and misinformation, both by the Board of Supervisors and to the, the general public. I'm particularly concerned that the minutes for the March 26th meeting were removed from the online calendar and are no longer available to the public. This smacks of sharp practice. It gives the impression that the county is withholding this information for some reason that has not been revealed. It gives the impression that there is something to hide and something that the county doesn't want us to know. So the minutes should reflect what actually happened at that meeting and should remain available even if they're going to be revised at this meeting. So I, I direct at this point, the Board of Supervisors, please place close attention to these resolutions because there is a conflict between what was said at the March 26th meeting in terms of the goals and desires of the Board of Supervisors that is not reflected in the March 26th resolution and is also not reflected in this resolution before you to replace it. Please do not vote to accept either, to make a decision about the proposed project, whether the ultimate trail or the optional interim trail. Thank you.
Ray Hayes, your microphone is now available.
Thanks very much. It's good to see you. Thank you, all of you Supervisors for your service to our county. I am hoping that draw your attention to Letter N, Letter N in your packet from Chris Berry, the Fish and Wildlife Commission Chair for Fish and Wildlife Advisory Commission for the county. That letter requests that you all, or encourages you to write a letter regarding the Bureau of Land Management's update to its California Special Status Species List. If that list isn't updated, the Bureau of Land Management at Chetone Coasteries will not protect state-listed species on that property. They are, they are forbidden to protect state-listed species unless those species appear on that list. The way that species appear on that list is by the BLM updating its Special Status Species List, which they're required to do every five years in consultation with our State Wildlife Agency. They have not done that. In the last update, five years ago, they did not consult with our State Wildlife Agency. And so the state-listed species at Chetone Coasteries weren't included. They're not there now. If we don't include them, species like the Santa Cruz Mountains Black Salamander will become more rare and then the people of our county will be burdened with more regulatory pressure. So it's in our interest to ask BLM to add those species. I hope you urge them to do so. Thank you very much.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right. Thank you all for your comments today. I'll bring it back to the board to see if there's any comments or questions as it relates to the consent agenda and maybe I'll start with Supervisor Coning.
Thank you, Chair. On Item 31, a letter to the CPUC to reconsider the position, or its position on broadband, broadband deployment technologies within Santa Cruz County. I just want to thank the Information Services Department for this letter. I think the CPUC has insisted on fiber and aerial fiber throughout our mountainous regions, which is susceptible to wildfire. And so this letter is asking that they consider advanced wireless technologies as an alternative. I think this just demonstrates that we need to be flexible with evolving technologies and that ultimately our region does have- and that ultimately our region does have some specific geographical challenges that need alternative approaches. On items thirty six to thirty eight, I want to thank Ron Prince, Camille Summers, Stephanie Ald for serving on the Emergency Medical Care Commission, Commission on Disabilities and In Home Supportive Services Advisory Commission, respectively. As always, we depend on knowledgeable and committed individuals to make our commissions run. So thank you all. On item sixty seven, I'm excited to see the award of the contract for the Children's Crisis Center project to Bogart Construction. This is a construction company that's done a great job on building out our Santa Cruz Community Health Project, Yentes and Mid Penn Project at fifteen hundred Capitola Road. And I'm sure they'll do a great job with the Children's Crisis Center. Excited to see that break ground. Finally, just wanted to thank the Community Development and Infrastructure Department for item seventy submitting Transportation Development Act claims to the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission. We talk a lot about future bike trails we're going to build in this community, but I'm excited to see just the focus, asking for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to maintain existing bike lanes. Here are lots of complaints from constituents about how just they could be cleaner and I'd see some attention focused there. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Friend.
Thank you, Chair. I'd also like to share appreciation for our Information Services Department on the outreach to the CPUC per the board's request. I think that we have a transformational amount of money coming in through state and federal sources, in particular federal sources, but through the state. How the state is defining where that money can go to reach some of our rural residences really too narrow and so the ability that we can get the CPUC to broaden that definition is very important in some respects to actually be agnostic on the delivery system, but just ensuring that people actually have access to broadband in particular in our rural mountain areas would be useful. So I appreciate that the letter that they did. A lot of appreciation for our Parks Team on both Willow Brook and Hidden Beach. These are two long going projects and the Hidden Beach in particular took a lot of, a lot of work with the Coastal Conservancy and other organizations as well as a lot of community outreach to now soon have a restroom. And as somebody who would bring my, at that time, three and four year old son down there and then would have the inevitable discussion about that he had to go to the restroom. It would be nice to actually have a place for that to happen. And so now moving forward, at least we'll have that for future generations for your kid. Also, I'd like to thank Public Works. There's a lot of work here on the winter storm work and a lot of, a lot of follow up associated with that, everything from the rail on beach drive to a number of other projects that they did. This is just a reminder as we build through it, not just in the FEMA reimbursements, but you go through a storm event or you go through the CZ fire event, there's many years of the rebuild process associated with that. But, but Matt, your team, all the Public Works team, the fact that you keep fighting to make sure that this is restored is very important. So I just want to make sure your team gets acknowledged on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also would like to address item number thirty one for the Information Services Department for bringing this item of broadband letter to the CPUC. It's really very critical for the underserved rural areas that we have. And I understand the importance of combining wireless technologies with fiber and deploying the internet, but I would like to ask our ISD Director, Tammy Weigel, who's here, a brief explanation to the public of why both are important, if I could.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. And I'd just like to say I really appreciate all the support that we've gotten from the board as we try to provide broadband for all within the county of Santa Cruz. So B really is a once in a lifetime opportunity for funding for, to be able to provide broadband for every single citizen in the United States. We will not see this again in our lifetime and that message has come pretty clear from Washington and the state. The CPUC has stated that fiber is preferred and while they will consider other technologies, we are concerned that that consideration is very narrow. We know we have areas in our rural and our mountain areas. And also too, one area that people don't consider that we found out during our assessment is mobile home parks. That's another area where it's very difficult to get fiber into. Fiber is very expensive to pull. In our estimation that we did with CTC for us to be able to provide fiber to all the underserved and non-served area of our county, it's going to be half a billion dollars. So we really want to see consideration from the CPUC for hybrid technologies. Hybrid technologies such as fixed wireless has been very, very successful in our county. We have seen this through projects that have been done by SurfNet and by CruzIO that have provided broadband to a significant amount of citizens within the county at a lower cost than it would have cost to provoke fiber to there. We basically, similar letter has also been sent by our congressional representatives to the CPUC. This approach also has the support of Congressman Panetta and he has mentioned that in two town halls that he has held within our county. And so we really want to have the CPUC consider hybrid technology that we feel will be able to provide the most citizens within Santa Cruz County access to reliable and high speed broadband. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that explanation and a couple more items, number forty one, not for you, Ms. Wife, thank you. But I did want to thank Senator John Laird for support of an introduction of Senate Bill eleven eighty eight for authoring a bill to establish the minimum standards for small water systems like the Big Basin Water Company, which we're going to hear about more today. It's critical that the so-called mistakes of what we're experiencing aren't experienced of other agencies throughout California. On item forty two, the request for the state review of the Big Basin Water Case. Thanks to our Water Advisory Commission for making this request to the board. We're going to seek a thorough review of the gaps and lessons learned in the management of the Big Basin Water System over the past several years. And this is going to be an opportunity for us to see if there are any legislative and or other resources that need to be established to help the state agencies better manage these systems so we don't have to face this kind of a situation that we're going to hear more about later today or this morning. I really appreciate the effort there in approving this request to the state review. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. Supervisor Hernandez, do you have any comments?
I'll keep it brief, just on item thirty one, I'll thank ISD and also thank ISD for being part of that congressional panel on broadband, town hall they had on broadband two weeks ago, two weeks ago. And just on the, some of the public comment, I want to throw my appreciation to all the nurses out there in this coming Nurses Week and as well as the home healthcare providers. That's it.
Okay, Supervisor Friend, another comment you want to make?
Yeah, I apologize. I meant to comment on item forty four, which is in regards to CSA number four and Paw Ro Dunes, which is really a crown jewel and a special area within the entire county, not just our district, but Charlie and Carol, your work has been really wonderful on this outreach, both to the county and internally. This is an important both public safety and life safety issue, I think, for all Paw Ro Dunes. I appreciate your leadership on this and looking forward to seeing how this comes back in June. So appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't have anything else to add to the comments that have been said, but I share the sentiments that have been expressed by the board members here today. And so with that, there's no further questions or comments. I'd like to see if there's a motion to move the consent agenda.
I'll move consent agenda second.
So a motion by Supervisor Hernandez, seconded by Supervisor Koenig. And with that, we'll have a roll call vote on the consent.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson? And Cummings?
Aye, that passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to our regular agenda and I just want to highlight that we have a pretty packed agenda today. And so ideally what we're going to try to do is get through some of the items up till through fifteen and then we will take a lunch break where we'll go into closed session and then we have a time certain item at one thirty and at which point we'll hear items sixteen, which is way at the core, and then followed by seventeen, which is the rail trail item. And so with that, we'll move on to our first regular agenda item, which is a presentation of awards to the Santa Cruz County Fire Department Firefighters of the Year. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Armstrong.
All right, thank you very much. I actually brought friends with me this time. Good morning, Chair Cummings, Supervisors, Mr. Palacios. Thank you very much for having me here today and for taking the couple of minutes to honor our couple of twenty twenty three Santa Cruz County Firefighters of the Year. I'm Nate Armstrong. I'm the unit chief for CAL FIRE here in Santa Cruz County and part of the privilege of that role is also serving as the fire chief for Santa Cruz County Fire. For the last fifteen years, every year we hold an annual nomination process through our, our leadership within county fire to really select two individuals, one from the career ranks of CAL FIRE and then one from our paid call ranks of the Santa Cruz County volunteer companies that really epitomize the best of what we're, what we look for as far as duty to service, cooperation, professionalism and so forth. The, the interesting thing through that process is quite frequently, we get almost unanimous nominations of the, of the couple of folks and this year was no different, which just further highlights that these are the folks that their peers and leaders really chose as the best representatives of Santa Cruz County Fire. So without a whole lot of further ado, I'd like to start with Engineer Eric Silva. Engineer Eric Silva is our volunteer firefighter of the year for twenty twenty three. Engineer Silva was born and raised in Santa Cruz County in the Paw Ro Valley area and graduated from Watsonville High School. He still resides in South County today. Eric began his fire service career with Santa Cruz County Fire after graduating the Basic Fire Academy that is put on by the local fire departments in two thousand nineteen. He then began volunteering with Santa Cruz County Fire Coralitos Company forty one. And then as a, as a brand new volunteer, sadly, our Coralitos Company sees a lot of turnover o- over the years and Eric really took it on very early to really engage that that group and become very active. So he was one of the most active volunteers early on and then eventually became a paid firefighter with CAL FIRE in twenty twenty. When he was hired by CAL FIRE, he continued to serve the Coralitos area out of the Coralitos Station. It's kind of hard to tell sometimes because he worked so much as a volunteer as well. Was he working for CAL FIRE or was he working as a volunteer that day? But really has been engaged in that Coralitos community. In twenty twenty two, Eric promoted to engineer with Santa Cruz County Fire and then also later on that year also promoted to engineer for CAL FIRE. So he's just been going in tandem all along. Eric has worked extremely hard to recruit new members to Company forty one. He's assisted in placing our new fire apparatus into service there over the last couple of years, has mentored and trained numerous newer volunteers and really worked on getting those folks to promote within the ranks of county fire and has really worked hard on engaging in community outreach and got Company forty one quite involved in the last couple of years in things like the Coralitos Community Tree Lighting, the Trunker Treat and the South County National Night Out. And I'm told that while he's an engineer with county fire today, I believe he's eligible for captain and will, I'm sure have no doubt meeting that. And he would be the first captain of our Coralitos Company in a good decade or so. So without much further, I'd like to present Engineer Eric Silva as our twenty twenty three Santa Cruz County Fire Volunteer Firefighter of the Year. I won't make them give speeches because they probably won't want to. For our twenty twenty three Career Firefighter of the Year, I'd like to present Captain Scott Williams. Captain Scott Williams was also born and raised in Santa Cruz County, graduated from SoCal High. I'm sure there's no rivalry there. But Captain Williams began his fire service career also by graduating the local volunteer fire academy that's, that's put on in Santa Cruz County. He began volunteering with Branson Forty Fire District in two thousand twelve, excuse me, and in two thousand thirteen was hired by CAL FIRE as a seasonal firefighter in our Humboldt Del Norte Unit. So he worked in Humboldt for a couple of years before coming back home to Santa Cruz County in two thousand fifteen. He continued to work here as a firefighter for us in Santa Cruz County until he promoted to engineer in two thousand eighteen. And then in twenty twenty, on not the greatest day in Santa Cruz County history, Captain Williams became a captain in our Big Creek Station, which is on the north coast on Swanton, on August sixteenth, twenty twenty. So for about the next thirty days, I think he had probably the longest first day as a fire captain in our organization. He's remained stationed there at our Big Creek Station for the last few years and just does a phenomenal job for us. That Big Creek Station supports our Davenport Volunteer Company, excuse me. And just due to a kind of low population and low involvement, that Davenport Company hasn't always been our most active volunteer company and relies quite a bit on our paid staff and Scott has been no exception to that. He's really done a great job propping that, that volunteer company up, assisting with their trainings and so forth, keeping the, the, the fire station and its apparatus in tip top shape and also placing a couple of new fire apparatus into play, into service lately. Captain Williams has also taken upon himself to become a CPR and EMS Skills Proctor and taking care of signing off those items for both our paid and our volunteer staff throughout Santa Cruz County. So I would like to present with that Captain Scott Williams as our Career twenty twenty three Firefighter of the Year. I won't take up a whole lot more of your time. I know you have a busy agenda. Just thank you so much for, not only for this year, but for the continued support of the Santa Cruz County Fire Department. It's really an awesome opportunity to bring forward great individuals like this and we just appreciate the ongoing support. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to see before you all take off if there's any comments from board members.
You know, we've never needed you more than we have these last few years and now it's a preventative effort as well as a response effort that we have to deal with. And thank you for your leadership and every one of you in here and every one of you that's a member of the departments that are involved, the volunteers. I, I just don't know where this county would be without you. We've, we've really faced some really serious situations here as we all know, but without you, I just can't imagine what it would be. So thank you very much and for your leadership and everybody in this room and everybody in your departments, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez.
I'd also like to express my appreciation for you guys. You know, not only did we face fires, but we also have storms and you guys were out there day and night in South County. And so I wanted to show my appreciation for that, but also, you know, congratulate both of you for all your gracious hard work and effort. Thank you.
One thing I just wanted to note was, but Chief Armstrong had said that it was basically unanimous selection and what does that say? There's no kind of greater compliment than to have your own colleagues that are sitting here today think so highly of all of you in such a, in such a way. And, you know, I felt very privileged to be down at the Coralitos Station a lot and I know that my colleagues spend a lot of time in their respective stations and the amount of professionalism and the care that you bring to this community is really unmatched. And this is one of our favorite days to have you recognized. I know that you hate being recognized, you just feel like you're doing your job, but take this in and a recognition that, that this community really does love and appreciate the work that you do for us. So congratulations.
Yeah, I'll just add my deep appreciation to both of you for, you know, who are being honored today, but also everyone here in the room. You know, in particular, your dedication, not just to fighting fires, but also to bringing new people into the fold through our volunteer companies. I mean, that is so essential. I know that's a real challenge to recruit people in today's modern work environment where, you know, we don't have as much time to sit around and give back to our community. And I think that through your leadership, you're really demonstrating the, the value and the pride in that and being able to cultivate the next generation of firefighters who are going to keep this community safe. Thank you.
And I'll just end by kind of reiterate my appreciation for all the work that you do and just the respect that we all have for you all and, and your line of work. It's definitely not an easy job and especially when we are faced with disasters and emergencies, knowing that we have people in our community who are well respected, who are hardworking, who are going to be there to do their best to keep our community safe. It's just something that I know that we all appreciate here on the board and as well in our community at large. And so definitely deserving of the awards that you're receiving today and I hope that you continue to cultivate this leadership within your department and within our community. So thank you very much. Thank you all again very much. Have a good day. Okay, so even though this isn't an action item, I think I do have to open up to the community if there's any members of the public who'd like to comment on this item. So if you'd like to, you can please step forward.
I do, thank you, Becky Steinbruner. Company forty one is responsible for responding to wildland fires in my- Company 41 is responsible for responding to wildland fires in my neighborhood, and they have done an exemplary job in the past. It was Company 41 volunteers that went in and did the hardest work for the longest amount of time. Those were all volunteers. So I really commend the volunteers and um, especially um, Mr. Silva for encouraging more volunteers to join. It is not an easy job. It's a huge time commitment for the trainings and to show up. So um, I'll, I'll meet him out in the hall and shake his hand, but thank you. Come, County Fire is a great organization, and uh, we really do need to provide more incentives for more volunteers. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any member of the public like to speak to us on this item who's here in person? Seeing none, is there anyone online who'd like to comment on this?
Yes, Chair, we do have a caller. Caller user one, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett, I'd also like to commend the volunteers, and it's critical for you firefighters to be in optimal health and that working conditions promote your wellbeing. I have in front of me a letter from Susan Foster, MSW, who is an honorary firefighter for San Diego Fire Department and advisor to the Radiation Research Trust. In this letter, she refers to the International Agency for Research on Cancer, classifying um, radio frequency radiation as a possible carcinogen. And here's what she wrote about firefighters. "I organized a brain study of firefighters, men who are considered to be the strongest of the strong among us in California in 2004. They had been exposed to a cell tower beaming across their working sleeping quarter for five years. The study was conducted by Gunnar Huser, MD, PhD, and expert in the field of neurotoxicity. Each of the men who had their brain scanned showed a hyperexcitability of neurons or brain cells. This is considered to be a precursor to early cell death and potentially early onset Parkinson's, ALS, and Alzheimer's. Now, eight years later, two of the men have had psychotic breaks with reality, and all are suffering from memory impairment. All the men tested in 2004 had tremors and stand still in their twenties."
Thank you, Garrett.
Let me tell you-
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay. Well, that will go ahead and move on to our next item on our agenda, uh, which is item number eight. Consider adoption of resolution pursuant to Government Code Section 7522 dot 56, exempting the hire of an extra help retired annuitant from the 180-day waiting period as critical staffing support. Um, this is an item that's been brought forward by the DA's office, and so welcome, Eric Seab, Chief Deputy Administrator of the District Attorney's Office.
Good morning, Chair and other members of the board. Thanks for having me this morning. Um, I'm here to request your assistance in approving a resolution that uh, helps exempt the 180-day waiting period prescribed by PEPRA for one of our retired uh, legal secretaries who retired at the end of last year. Um, we desperately need uh, support in our uh, support staffing right now. Um, I've currently got one experienced legal secretary who's currently out on an extended medical leave. Uh, unfortunately, we were also advised in February of the passing of one of our uh, dear team members uh, due to an unforeseen medical condition. I've also got two staff members that are still going halfway through their formative probationary training period. I'm also lost a receptionist uh, who luckily for her was able to accept a, a promotion in the sheriff's office, but that leaves us with a huge hole is that our reception uh, function is sort of the face of our office. Um, in fact, most of those other support staff um, that are struggling now are also helping cover rotations through that position, as well as some of my middle managers, some of our executive managers, including myself. In fact, by the time I'm done with this, I'll probably have 40 hours under my belt at that front counter. Um, so it's really critical for us. Our core mission is public safety. Um, you know, I mean, I feel like we're juggling uh, flaming chainsaws. Um, and if we make a mistake, unfortunately, given the urgency of what we do, um, somebody could get out of jail, and we're really trying to avoid that. Ms. Dalton is a retired annuitant that uh, retired at the end of December. She has approximately seven years of experience with her office. She's extremely skilled, highly experienced. She also had several years in the sheriff's office in the records division, so she's extremely familiar with um, a lot of the various uh, criminal justice search engines for criminal records. Uh, so she's critical for our position. Um, we approached her. She's willing to come back on a part-time basis and help out with the backlog of cases. Uh, our plan is not to use her full time uh, for the, for the extra help uh, allowed hours. Um, I mean, we just want to basically also have her on the bench for when I have situations like this come up so that I have uh, somebody available to help fill in for a week or two or a month at a time to kind of help uh, ease the uh, workload uh, issues. Um, so with your approval, we'd like to submit a resolution to waive the 180-day waiting period. Um, I'll, my presentation's short. I just need help.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions or comments before we open it to the public? Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to us on this item? If so, please step forward. Seeing no one here in the room, um, is there any member of the public online who would like to speak to us on this item?
Yes, Chair, we have a caller. Him, your microphone is now available.
Hello, thank you very much for hearing me speak today. I'm fully supportive of this gentleman in waiving this 180-day period. I uh, I know what he's up against, and um, from my perspective in dealing with my mother in Reno, Nevada, when I mentioned these things to you, um, I could see that the, the court systems across our country are sort of in decay. I was a little shocked because this involves with trying to take care of my mother who's in a memory care unit. So these kinds of things, they, they impact everybody, and they impact healthcare and whatnot too as well. So um, I'm fully supportive of this individual. So I just wanted to let, let you know, I, I think uh, what he's doing is very, very important for public safety. It's imperative. So that's how I stand on the issue. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, well, with that, I'll bring it back to the board. Comments and motion? I'll move the recommended actions. Second, okay, so a motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor Hernandez. I guess I'll just say that, yeah, we're more than happy to help you out during this situation, understand how challenging it can be these days to, to keep people on. And so it makes complete sense that we're moving forward in this way. So glad we could be of help. And if there's no further comments, I'll go ahead and see if we can call, roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
McPherson? And Cummings?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank the board for your continued support.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we have item number nine. As the Board of Directors of the Davenport County Sanitation District, hold a public hearing. Proving concept and ordinance amending District Code Title III, Chapter III dot zero eight, Article III, Section three dot zero eight dot one six zero through three dot zero eight dot one eight zero, Water Service Charges and an Ordinance Amending District Code Title IV, Chapter four point oh eight, Article III, Sections four point oh eight point one six zero through four point oh eight point one eight zero Sewer Service Charges and take related actions. And today we will have Carolyn Burke, Assistant Director of Public Works, and Matt Machado, Director of CDI, um, to provide us with the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. Um, I want to start by reintroducing Carolyn Burke. Some uh, some of the best news we've had in a very long time was the ability to rehire Carolyn. She's now our Assistant Director of Special Services. She took over the, the role for Kent Edler when he left um, late last year, so we're very excited to have her back. And uh, she's hit the ground running, as you would expect. She's been with us now two weeks, and today's our first opportunity to get here in front of you, so I just want to reintroduce you to her. And she will help me. Well, together today, we've got quite a few items in front of you, so we're going to get comfy and uh, dig right into this first one, so.
Yep, absolutely.
So the item before you is a public hearing on uh, our FY 2425 Davenport County Sanitation District Water Sewer Service Charges. Uh, on March 12th, your board set today as the public hearing date to consider the attached ordinance establishing the changes to the sewer service charges for the Davenport County Sanitation District. Uh, these changes would be effective July 1st if approved. Uh, the water service charge that's proposed uh, for, for the water system is a 9.6% overall increase. Uh, the main contributor to this increase is, is to fund our ability to match grant funds. We have about three projects valued a little over a million, $4 million, and so this rate increase will fund the match to implement these much-needed uh, projects, so we're excited about that. On the sewer side, uh, we're proposing a 14% overall decrease. Um, and, and the reason this is, is that during the 22 winter storms, we had large flows uh, which filled our ponds, causing us to have to haul uh, water off-site. This was a large cost. And so for the FY 2324 sewer charge increase, we had to implement this rate increase to uh, to pay for that, that hauling of water. Uh, now that, that, that those costs have been paid off, uh, we can reduce the sewer service charge. I will conclude with that residential users who pay both sewer and water service charges will see a slight decrease in their net uh, water sewer annual charge of about $16 per month. The uh, recommended actions today are to hold a public hearing, and upon its conclusion, consider approval and concept of an ordinance amending District Code Title III, Chapter three point zero eight, Article III, Sections three point zero eight point one six zero through three point zero eight point one eight zero, Water Service Charges and an Ordinance Amending District Code Title IV, Chapter four point zero eight, Article III, Sections four point zero eight point one six oh through four point zero eight point one eight zero, Sewer Service Charges for the Davenport County Sanitation District. Secondly, to direct the clerk of the board to place the ordinance on the May 14th, 24, agenda for final adoption. Thirdly, to direct the clerk of the board to publish the notice of proposed ordinance summaries in a newspaper of general circulation at least five days prior to the scheduled second reading and final adoption, no later than May 9th, 2024, pursuant to Government Code Section 25124. Fourth, to set Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, 9:00 AM or thereafter as the date and time for a public hearing on the sewer service charge reports. And finally, to direct the clerk of the board to publish the notice of public hearing once a week for two weeks before the hearing and a newspaper of general circulation. Staff is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from board members at this time? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing and see if there's any member of the public who'd like to speak on this item.
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. I am aware that there is a water recycling facility at uh, Davenport and uh, spoke with, I believe it was Ms. Trujillo, and learned that there is, that that recycled water is not being used for agricultural irrigation because the cost of the hookup for the farmers is too expensive. I would like to ask that hopefully this grant that is being applied for, for which these funds will help match uh, includes hookup for irrigation purposes of the recycled water so that it can be put to good use. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is there any member of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item?
We have no callers online, Chair.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action on this item. It's, again, I just want to thank staff for their work on this. Um, I know last year you were able going to outreach in the community, and I do find it's kind of interesting for some folks to see a net decrease in their water rates this year, so I think people will be happy with that. Um, and, and the fact that we're using these funds to kind of leverage more funds for the community is going to be something that I think people will appreciate as well. So just want to thank you again for your work on this, and with that, if there's no other questions or comments from the board, um, if somebody would want to move this item. I'll move this item uh, with items A through H. I'll second the recommended actions. Okay, so a motion by Supervisor Hernandez, second by Supervisor Friend to move the staff recommendation, and I'll ask the clerk to please call and roll.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
McPherson? And Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Thank you all again, and with that, we'll move on to our next item. As the Board of Directors of the Freedom County Sanitation District, hold a public hearing and approving concept and ordinance amending District Code Title III, Article III, Chapter three point oh eight, Sewer Service Charges and take related actions. And with that, we will continue to turn it right back over to Carolyn Burke, Assistant Director of Public Works, and Matt Machado, Director of CDI and Deputy CAO.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. Uh, so the item before you is a public hearing for FY 2425 Freedom County Sanitation District. On March 12th, your board set today as the public hearing date to consider the attached ordinance uh, establishing the changes as proposed. The proposed service charges for FY 2425 reflect an overall increase of 8.4%. Uh, the largest contributor to this rate increase is the need for equipment replacement at the district's pump station. Uh, another significant factor affecting this increase is uh, is a rate increase, for the rate increase is a 3% increase in sewer treatment costs. Uh, this water is treated by the city of Watsonville's Treatment System, and they've uh, they've been making some improvements, and so those costs are carried through to our community. Uh, with that basic description, the recommended actions are to hold a public hearing. Um, and upon its conclusion, consider approval and concept. The ordinance is as described. Direct the clerk of the board to place the ordinance on May 14th agenda for final adoption. Direct the clerk of the board to publish the notice of proposed ordinance summaries in newspaper general circulation at least five days prior to the scheduled second reading and final adoption, no later than May 9th, 2024. Uh, fourth, to set Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, at 9:00 AM or thereafter as the date and time for a public hearing on the service charge reports. And finally, to direct the clerk of the board to publish the notice of public hearing once a week for two weeks before the hearing and newspaper of general circulation, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from board members at this time? Okay, seeing none, are there any members of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any members of the public online would like to speak to us on this item?
We have no speakers online, Chair.
Okay, with that, if there's no further questions or comments, we'll bring it back to the board to take action on this item.
I'll move this item 11 with uh, Sections A through C.
I'll second the recommended actions. I think it's item 10, just to be clear. It is.
Yeah, item 10, right?
Item 10. Right, just to move on to item 10, staff, I'm going to add eight actions. So motion by Supervisor Hernandez, second by Supervisor Friend, that'll ask us to call uh, the roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
McPherson? And Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to item number 11. Hold a public hearing to consider resolution establishing 202425 Sewer Service Charges for CSA 5, Canyon Dell Soul, adopt resolution setting a public hearing on June 4th, 2024 for the service charges report and take related actions, and we'll turn it back over to Carolyn Burke, Assistant Director of Public Works, and Matt Machado, Director of CDI and Deputy CAO.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. The item before you is a public hearing on the FY 2425 Sewer Service Charges for CSA number five. CSA number five Canyon Dell Soul is a development with 97 townhomes located above the Sand Dollar Beach. Uh, on March 12th, the board set today as the public hearing date to consider these uh, charges and increases. The proposed service charges for FY 2425 fiscally reflect an overall increase of 20%. Uh, the driver for this increase is due to a failed retaining wall on the, on the wastewater treatment site. And so it's necessary to uh, to make those uh, to make that funding occur. Uh, the recommended actions today are to conduct a public hearing to hear objections and protests to proposed 2425 sewer service charges for County Service Area 5. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, consider adopting resolution confirming sewer service charge rates. Uh, third, to adopt resolution setting Tuesday, June 4th at 9:00 AM or thereafter as the date and time for a public hearing on the service charge report. And finally, to direct the clerk of the board to publish the notice of public hearing once a week for two weeks prior to the hearing and a newspaper of general circulation. Staff's available to answer any questions.
For that presentation, are there any questions from board members? Just a, just a comment, because uh, this was an issue, an item that initially had community concern. You did an outstanding job in your outreach. I felt uh, your department did um, and worked with our office, communicated with the office very well throughout this entire process. And so I just wanted to appreciate uh, the team on the outreach on this item, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from supervisors? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. So any member of the public who would like to speak to us on item number 11? Seeing none here in chambers, is there anybody online who'd like to speak to us on this? Seeing none here in chambers, is there anybody online who'd like to speak to us on this item?
We have no callers online, Chair.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the board for action on this item. I'll move the recommended actions.
Second.
So a motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor Hernandez to move the staff recommendation. With that, I'll turn to the clerk for roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend? Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson? And Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously. And I just want to bring up, because I know that there was a language change to item number 12 in the title. Just wanted to make sure that we get that correct for the record.
Chair, there shouldn't have been a language change after publication. Are you seeing something in particular?
If I remember correctly, this morning, the title of the item had been adjusted.
I see, I see what you're referring to. So that will be included in the rec, that will be included. You don't need to read that if you're concerned.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so next item is item number 12. Hold public hearing to consider sewer service charges for CSA seven. Zone one and two, continue the public hearing to June 4th, 2024, and take related actions. And I'll turn it over to Matt Machado, Director of CDI, Deputy CAO for presentation on this item.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. This one's much more involved. This can take a bit more, has more detail and is going to require a bit of your patience. So thank you for that. The item before you is a public hearing for our 2425 proposed sewer charges and inclusion of our Big Basin Sewer Area in CSA number seven. County Service Area seven is a benefit assessment district in Boulder Creek that provides sewer services. A portion of this CSA includes the Fallen Leaf Neighborhood that was receiving sewer services from the Big Basin Water Company, which sustained heavy damage during the CZU wildfire and was no longer able to provide services. The Department, our Department of Community Development Infrastructure is proposing to take over the sewer services previously provided by Big Basin Water Company and creating a new zone within CSA seven and annexing the Cal Fire Jamison Creek Fire Station into the same zone. I'll describe each zone. There are two zones in CSA seven, or that's how we're proposing it. Zone one is the Boulder Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility. This zone one, we are proposing a sewer service charge increase. For the FY 2425, our proposal is a 10% increase. The driving factor of this increase is to provide matching funds for a critical project as an equalization tank. And additionally, it provides revenue to cover some outstanding balances left over after the repairs and upgrades from the CZU fire. Our plant did sustain significant damage. We did receive some FEMA funding, some insurance proceeds. But this rate increase will round that out to fund those repairs and upgrades. The second zone, the one that we proposed to create today based upon input from the public, is our Big Basin Wastewater Treatment Plant. The Big Basin Wastewater Treatment Facility was damaged in the CZU fire and remained inoperable until August 17th of '23. And then in November of '23, the Superior Court of State of California for the County of Santa Cruz appointed Silver and Wright LLP as the court's receiver for the Big Basin System pursuant to the request of the California Regional Water Quality Control Board, our Central Coast Region. And we've worked together to put this package together. Let me get my notes here. The zone two is actually a mix of assessments. And I'd like to describe that because it'll be slightly complicated as we go through the public hearing. We do have about 29 parcels in this district. 17 of those are currently vacant but buildable. And so we're proposing a standby charge for those 17 parcels. Those parcels did receive a ballot, a mail-in ballot. And today, we plan to count those ballots and determine if a simple majority supports the standby charge. The second component of the zone two formation is the 12 parcels that are currently connected to the sewer system. And so we mailed them a notice describing the proposed rates to provide that service. And we would count any protest that they would share today. It does take majority protest for that portion to fail. So it's a slightly complicated process. Today's public hearing will provide the opportunity for any member of the public, including any property owner within CSA seven, to address the board on the formation of the zone two and the proposed sewer service charges for FY 2425. CDI, Carolyn and I, will tabulate and certify the ballots for zone two today during this hearing. If a majority of the ballots that have been received from property owners are not in favor of the assessment for a standby charge for the maintenance and operation of the Big Basin Water Company wastewater plant, the board will not be permitted to proceed with the formation of zone two. Otherwise, the board will be authorized to consider adoption of the attached resolutions authorizing and levying an assessment for a standby charge for CSA seven zone two for this given fiscal year. So the recommended actions today are first to open the public hearing and hear objections or protests, if any, to the proposed CSA number seven establishing zones one and two. Then to direct staff to open, tabulate and certify the benefit assessment, the standby charge ballots, followed by closing the public hearing, then accepting the certification of the vote results and direct the Deputy CAO Director, Community Development Infrastructure, to retain the ballots for at least six months following the certification. And then if there are no majority written protests to CSA zone, CSA seven zone one proposed sewer service charges, then to adopt the resolution confirming adopted increases in sewer service charges for zone one and adopt the resolution setting Tuesday, June 4th at 9:00 AM or thereafter as the date and time for a public hearing on the service charge reports. And then to direct the clerk of the board to publish the notice of public hearing once a week for two weeks before the hearing and newspaper of general circulation. Next in the recommended actions is if the result of the balloting shows no majority protest for CSA seven zone two benefit assessment, the standby charge, and there is no majority written protest for the creation of the zones and proposed service, sewer service charges for zone two, then to also adopt the resolutions authorizing creation of zones, adopting assessment charges for CSA seven zone two and confirming adopted increases in service charges zone two. Adopt the resolution setting Tuesday, June 4th at 9:00 AM or thereafter as the date and time for a public hearing and the service charge reports. And then lastly, to direct the clerk of the board to publish the notice of public hearing once a week for two weeks before the hearing in newspaper general circulation. I will conclude to let the board know that we have two guests on the Zoom call today. First is Nick Jabber. He is our receiver for the system, so the current owner of the system. And then secondly, Jennifer Epp from the State Water Board. They are both on the Zoom call today to weigh in as needed. So with that, I turn it to you and staff's available to answer questions. After you open the public hearing, we hear any protests, please turn it back to me and we'll continue on with the process.
Sounds good. Are there any questions from board members?
I'd like to make a statement if I could. I am very pleased that this item is coming before the board. It's been, as you can see, a very complicated issue to face or for us to address with Public Works. ORR three and our Water Division have been working diligently on this proposal to assume management operations of the Big Basin Water Treatment Plant. The court-appointed receiver, Nick Jabber, who's on the call here today, he's been phenomenal. And for Big Basin Water, as well as the Central Coast Water Board staff, Jennifer Epp is also here. And we're very supportive and appreciative of the county's efforts to bring this plant into CSA seven. I specifically want to thank our CDI Director, Matt Machado, and Beatrice Baranco, as well as Dave Reed, the Director of ORR three, and Sierra Ryan, our County Resources Manager, for their efforts. I'm hopeful we can take the next step today toward county management of this. And I look forward to hearing the result from the property owner votes today. This has been a long haul and it's very much needed. It's just absolutely essential. So thank you, each and every one of you, for this process that we've been going through for several months now. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Okay, if there's no other comments from board members, I guess what we'll do is open the public hearing and hear objections or protests, if any, to the proposed county, Santa Cruz County Service Area number seven, establishing zones and 202425 sewer service charges for zone one and zone two. And so welcome members to communicate, to come up and speak if there's objections or protests.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I do not live within this service district. But I am aware of the actions and I'm happy to see it moving forward on behalf of providing relief for these people. I want to request that the county is really going to do lessons learned after action analysis, really, to find out how it got here. How did this happen? Because this can provide very good information for moving forward with similar systems in the county. Regarding the issue before you now, I didn't hear if this is going to be a Prop 218 weighted vote that would come about. That's important to know. And also that those ballots are not confidential. They are open to public review. I would like to know how many ballots of those vacant but buildable parcels who got burned out and have not yet been able to build, how many of those ballots were returned? Who knows where some of those people are now? And yet they need to be able to get their ballot and weigh in on this. I think that I saw that the charges will be quite high. I somehow remember $3,000. But I didn't hear what the standby amount would be. If Director Machado could please provide those sums in general, just for public information, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers online who'd like to speak to us? Looks like we have one more person here in person.
Hi, my name is Julie Weest and I'm one of those property owners in one of the ballot. I filled out my ballot, I mailed it in, and I just want to tell or just say how much I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. There's no page you can take out of a book or a map that would lead you to where we are today. This has kind of been all uncharted and it's been painful, you know, going through the process for everybody. We know, there's a lot about how we as property owners know how we got here. And so that already exists. And it isn't, there was supervisor's responsibility in a sense. It's just, it's a collection of how we got here. So I feel it's been very fair. It's been the voting process. We, as a neighborhood association, added on top of that communication to all of the property owners and people that are affected by this. So I really do think it's been, you know, open, fair. And I just want to thank everyone who's been involved from beginning to end. It's been years. It took us years to get here. And it's Bruce and JM, you guys have just been awesome and thank you. So let's get on with that tallying. I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone online who'd like to speak to us on this item?
Yes, Chair, we have a speaker. Jennifer, your microphone is now available.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thanks. This is Jennifer Epp from the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. And I just wanted to provide a quick thanks to the county. As the speakers have mentioned, this has been a very long process with many agencies having to work together to try to figure out a solution for these homeowners. And really wanted to thank county staff for their hard work and professionalism that they put into this. Everything had to be done to come to you today in a very short timeline. And they managed to pull it off. And my appreciation goes from both the leadership level all the way down to the staff level. You know, the good thing for this community, as much as this has been not a fun process, is that we feel very confident that they will be in good hands with the county staff. You know, my team oversees, you know, 230 wastewater systems along our central coast. And the ones that are managed by the county are in good shape. They do a good job. They are proactive. They do what needs to be done. And so we really feel that this system, as much as it's been a long haul, will be much better off than they were before. It'll be a reliable system that is not only, you know, keeps up with the compliance and the permit, but thinks about upcoming maintenance needs and is proactive and gets the rates and the things that they need in order to do the job successfully. So a big thanks to everyone and look forward to hopefully a successful outcome with the ballots as well.
We have no further speakers.
Okay, with that, I do have a question about regarding process.
Actually, Chair, hand just went up.
Okay.
Nicholas, your microphone is now available.
Good morning. My name is Nicholas Jabber and I represent the court receiver. I just wanted to take a brief moment to extend our gratitude to the county for the just fantastic working relationship we've had. Supervisor McPherson has just been unabashed and just totally supportive of finding a way to work with our team to really effectuate the only remaining option for this community, which is, you know, the county takeover. The community members have been responsive and, you know, just engaged. We've appreciated it at every step. And so with that, I just again want to say thank you to the county, to Matt Machado, Beatrice, Baranco, Dave Reed, Sierra Ryan especially. And finally, just inform the board that assuming this vote goes through, the next step is to effectively finalize the formal transfer agreement with the county and to seek the court's approval of that agreement. Given the nature of the receivership action, the court is the ultimate decider of, you know, what happens with the wastewater treatment plan. I cannot speak for the court, but I do think the court will be satisfied. I hope the court will be satisfied and we expect the court to be satisfied with this option. And then finally, the CPUC also needs to render its approval. That advice letter application has already been submitted. So with that brief survey of the remaining process, thank you all very much for your time and consideration of this matter.
Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to ask a question about process. We do have a time certain 10:45 item. And given that the staff need to tabulate the votes, and even though there may not be that many, if it will make sense for us to have staff go tabulate the votes, and then we continue this item until after we hear the time certain item.
Yes, you can do that.
Okay, so why don't we, there's any objection from board members? What we'll do is we'll have staff go tabulate the votes and then we'll move on to our time certain 10:45 item, which is the Flood Control and Water Conservation District Meeting.
And then recall this item immediately after the zone five.
Correct. Yes. Great. All right, so we'll find out the results of that in a little bit. But while the votes are being tabulated, we'll move on to our time certain item. This is the Board of Supervisors shall recess in order to permit the Board of Directors, the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District Zone Five, to convene and carry out a regularly scheduled meeting. I also have a question with regards to process. Who's the chair for that? Is it still Supervisor McPherson or? It's Supervisor Koenig. All right. And then we'll turn it over to Supervisor Koenig to lead us on that item.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Cummings. I will call to order the meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Directors, Flood Control and Water Conservation District Zone Five. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Director Koenig?
Here.
Friend?
Here.
Cummings?
Yep.
Hernandez?
Here.
McPherson?
Alboni?
Here.
Brown?
All right, we have a quorum. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent or regular agendas?
No changes today.
All right, thank you. Do we have any oral communications from the public? Any public comment related to the business of the Zone Five Flood Control and Water Conservation District? related to the business of the Zone Five Flood Control and Water Conservation District?
None today.
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. I I've always asked that the boundaries of the different flood control district meetings be defined and I haven't seen that yet, but the information is available for other members of the public who are curious like me, what area this really involves. On the Department Public Works website, staff very kindly at Department of Public Works helped me find that. And I think it would be a very simple thing for Public Works to do to include a link to that map site on all of these agendas that so that the members of the public can see. My question was, does this involve APTAS? Does this involve, you know, where where is it? So many thanks to the excellent help from the lady at Public Works who helped me find that information on the website. And I request that simple links to that site be put on all agenda agendas for the different flood control district meetings agendas. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment here in chambers. Is there anyone online?
We do have one caller online. Nicholas, your microphone is now available.
Hello, Nicholas Jaber speaking.
Go ahead, Nicholas.
I apologize. Was I asked a particular question or am I just being given an opportunity to speak?
This is an opportunity to speak on items, not on the agenda, but related to the Zone Five Flood Control District.
Oh, excuse me. I did not mean to have my hand raised. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other public comment, I will proceed with the consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions from board members on the consent agenda? Seeing none, any public comment on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. I read the minutes for the January 30th, 2024 meeting and saw that your board had appropriated a Prop 218 drainage stormwater fee study by consultants Schaefer and Wheeler Consulting. So I'm curious about when that will happen, if it did happen, and what will that involve? That's all for the consent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no other comments here in chambers. Anyone online?
We have no callers online.
All right, I'll return it to the board for action. I'll move consent.
Second.
Motion by Director Friend, second by Director Hernandez, all those. Roll call vote, please.
Director Conig.
Hi.
Friend.
Hi.
Cummings.
Hi.
Hernandez.
Yes.
McPherson.
Alboni.
Aye.
All right, consent agenda passes unanimously by those present. We'll proceed with the regular agenda. Item seven is to adopt list of on-call consultants for environmental planning and support service for drainage facility maintenance projects and take related actions. Go ahead, District Engineer.
Thank you, Chair and Directors. The item before you is to adopt a list of on-call environmental consultants through an RFQ process. Our PSDMD, our Ojai Storm Drain Maintenance District, adopted an on-call environmental planning consultant list in 22 for drainage facility maintenance and repair, flood risk reduction and enhancement restoration projects. The Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District Zone Five is requesting the adoption of the same list for its needs, which is similar needs. So that the recommended action on this item is to approve adoption of existing on-call lists of environmental consultants to provide environmental planning and support services for various drainage facility maintenance projects and to authorize staff to issue purchase orders and award contracts as needed with the on-call consultants. Staff can answer your questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from directors? All right, seeing none. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll return it to the board for action. I'll move the recommended actions.
Second.
Right. Motion by Director Friend, second by Director Hernandez for the recommended actions. Roll call vote, please.
Director Conig.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson.
Alboni.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Proceed with item eight to consider approval of the proposed 2024-25 Zone Five and Zone Five Expansion Construction Budgets. District Engineer.
Thank you, Chair and Directors. The item before you is our proposed budget and is part of and in advance of the annual County of Santa Cruz budget hearings, which are starting on May 21st this year. Zone Five staff customarily bring Zone Five operations and Zone Five construction expansion budgets to the board for consideration and action. Our our Zone Five budget is really broken into two budget units. The first one is based upon our annual assessments, parcel assessments. And the second one is based upon our our development fees that we collect through through new development. The new development budget is really geared towards general engineering, public service and permit processing and plan review. And then the annual assessment budget is really focused on operations and maintenance and both budgets have a significant capital projects reserve, which we plan to use as part of our overall strategy to implement the new CIP, which is a part of the master plan that your board adopted recently and which will include considerable outreach, Prop 218 ballot process. And once we go through those processes, as part of the implementation, we will be proposing to use some of these capital reserves to implement that CIP that is in process for final adoption. And so that's how the budget is structured this year. The details are in the board letter with supporting documentation as attachments. The recommended action today is to consider approval of the proposed 2024-25 Zone Five and Zone Five Expansion Construction Budgets and staffs here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from board members? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. I read through this and I want to know where members of the public can find the water quality reporting for the MPDES permitting that that's going to be decreased by $5,000, but still be at $60,000 a year spent. So where can we find these, the results of these sampling for water quality? I also wonder why the the sandbar vegetation control at Barjetto Bridge is there and why others like the Porter Street Bridge areas, some businesses there. Owners have talked with me. They're very concerned about fallen branches and things that they feel are that area is not being mitigated for floodwaters and they're worried about the stabilization of the banks next to their businesses. So I'd like some clarification about that. Finally, I'll just say that I I have a little concern about what I see as spending all of the unappropriated funds. So it looks like it would just spend everything and going into a winter, if I'm understanding this properly, there would be not a lot of money left for reserves. So emergencies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Steinbruner. All right, seeing no other people wishing to speak here in chambers. Is there anyone online?
We have no callers online.
All right, then I'll return it to the board for action. I'll move the recommended actions.
Second.
I have a motion by Director Friend, second by Director Hernandez for the recommended actions. We have further discussion.
Just one quick question. I know Ms. Steinbruner has asked a number of questions on these items. Just hoping that staff can get back to and show those.
We will catch up offline with her and absolutely work her, work with her to answer in those questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, roll call vote, please.
Director Conig.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson.
Alboni.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That concludes our Zone Five meeting and I'll hand it back over to Supervisor Cummings, Chair of our Board Supervisors.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Conig. Okay, so this brings us back to item number 12. The staff had an opportunity to tabulate the votes and so I'll turn it back over to staff to provide the results of the election on this item.
Carolyn Burke, Assistant Public Works Director, CDI. So we do have the totals for the Boulder Creek CSA 7 Zone Two ballot tabulation. And there were 14 total ballots cast. There were 12 yeses, 86%, and two no, 14%. So the the formation passes.
Great.
Just got to say again, thank you to a wide number of people, to our receiver, the courts, our staff here, the state, everybody's been involved in this. It's been a laborious process, but we've gotten through it and it's very much welcome. It's going to be great for that area. Thank you.
Great. Congratulations Supervisor McPherson. Okay, so with that, we're going to close the public hearing and then I guess the there needs to be action on the rest of the items that are on the board's agenda. So since we've had public comment, then I guess we just need board action on the rest of the staff recommendations before us. I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor McPherson, second by Supervisor Friend to move the remaining staff recommendations. And with that, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on this item.
Supervisor Conig.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Hernandez. McPherson.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
That passes with Supervisor Conig, Friend, Cummings and McPherson voting in favor and Supervisor Hernandez absent. Okay, so with that, we're cruising right along. That takes us to our next item, item number 13, which is hold continued public hearing to consider certification of the vote results for County Service Area CSA Number Nine E Streetscape Maintenance and take related actions. And this is our wonderful Community Development Infrastructure staff who's been with us for the last few items. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair and Supervisors. The item before you is a public hearing for benefit assessment rate increase for CSA 9E. Ballots were made mailed out to the effective property owners for this 9E, the streetscape maintenance. The tabulated results confirm the majority of the property owners within the service area disagree with the increase in the assessment rates. So the certification today is turned out to be 62% no and almost 38% yes. Unfortunately, this this fails. The recommended action today is to accept the certification of the vote results for CSA 9E and direct the Deputy CAO, Director of Community Development Infrastructure, or designated to retain the ballots for at least six months following the certification. And lastly, to adopt a resolution, confirm and previously established benefit assessment for streetscape maintenance within CSA 9E for the 2425 fiscal year and each year following. And staff's available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from board members at this time?
Supervisor Conig. Thank you, Chair. First of all, just say I was some disappointed. This would have provided much-needed revenues to offer improved level of service for sidewalk and streetscape maintenance throughout the Live Oak and SoCal area. And the fact that this has not passed mean that we will continue to struggle to, you know, make difficult choices between whether to cut street trees, mow medians or repair dangerous sidewalks. My question is, you know, the I think we could have done this better. You know, first of all, the timing got pushed a little bit. I think originally when we talked about putting this out to a vote, it was more in the September, October timeframe. It got pushed all the way to December 5th during the holidays. And that just made it more difficult to communicate with the folks voting on this. And the second is that the information provided to the people who are voting was, let's say, not particularly compelling, right? People don't vote for new taxes. They vote for the services that would be provided. And I think that we could have done a better job of explaining why this increased assessment was badly needed and what services it would have provided. And I've seen a lot more effort put into protest elections than this, you know, Prop 218 election. I'm just curious. I mean, is there any reason we had to put the information out in a particular format, file, you know, black and white, very dense information without, you know, any pictures or anything like that? I mean, do we, are there certain restrictions around this kind of election? Yeah, yeah, no. Good point, Supervisor, and definitely lessons learned here. There is not guidance to not provide some of that more glossy material. We certainly could have done everything you just said. And unfortunately, we, I think we just felt like there was good community support that the services spoke for themselves. I mean, we could see that, we could see the trouble we were having. We had a lot of community input and we felt like a lot of the work had already been done in terms of the need and and the messaging. Clearly, we were wrong with such a majority protest on this one. I think I actually think that the driver on this was a weighted vote. I think the real driver was was the commercial voters. And if you look at the results specifically, residential homeowners probably did support it. It was just the commercial home business owners did not support it. And with the weighted vote, they carried the day. And I don't know that we recognized that opposition early enough. Once we did, it was almost too late. And so it's very unfortunate. And we'll just keep doing our best with the budget we have. Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I think, you know, the the engineer's report that ultimately dictated the fees ended up weighting these fees a lot more towards the commercial properties. So they saw much larger increase, more on the NX or so of their existing fees, whereas residents were seeing, you know, maybe a doubling from three to to $6. And when you look at the results, you're, I mean, you're right, your analysis is correct that, you know, official total ballots returned, it was about 45% yes. But then when you weighted them for the higher fees that commercial properties were paying, that dropped down to 38% so. And again, the timing did not help us here because if we had, you know, at any other time, might have been easier to get in touch with commercial property owners and explain, you know, the the reasons for this proposed increased assessment. But during particularly busy holiday season, that proved challenging. So I will say going forward, I think, you know, ultimately, we're going to have to prioritize safety, you know, particularly some of the visibility issues that forfeit weeds and in the medians pose. And so I hope that we'll prioritize that and, you know, they're the most pressing issues. Thank you.
And any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and see if there's any, we'll open the public hearing and see if there's any member of the public who would like to speak to us on this item. This is item number 13. Seeing no one here in public, is there anyone online who'd like to speak to us up to this item?
Yes, Chair, we do have a caller. Linda, your microphone is now available.
Hello. My name is Linda Willsuzen and I would like to just say I do agree with Supervisor Conig's comment that we could have done this better. I know a lot of people didn't even know what this was about and didn't vote. So I think it it's important to say that this this did lose in this vote, but it was only because I think it's because a lot of people didn't know what they were being asked to do. I think the materials were obscure and I do appreciate talking with the public work staff about a fact sheet or some more information about this, but it was never sent out. There wasn't time at that point. And I'm I was concerned about the lack of leadership from the county in presenting this. A lot of people are concerned about these issues in in the Live Oak area. And again, it's, I'm disappointed, you know, like like you guys are also saying. And I wonder if the cost of doing the analysis for the fee, which I understand was around $30,000 and it's the fund is only about $40,000 a year. I wonder if that could be covered by some other source. So it doesn't mean that it's coming out of our already really meager streetscape fund over the next few years. So thanks for the opportunity to comment.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board and just see if there's any response from staff to the comments that were just made previously.
Sure. So the the cost that we incurred for this process will be spread over multiple years so that it doesn't, you know, significantly impact our annual budget. It will have impact spread over multiple years. It'll have less impact and we will continue to provide, you know, as
It'll have less impact and we will continue to provide, you know, as Supervisor Koenig mentioned, safety needs and weed abatement in the spring. And it's going to be a meager budget, but we have a plan going forward.
All right. But that was are there any other comments or emotion on this item?
I'll move the recommended actions.
Second. Okay, so a motion by Supervisor Koenig, seconded by Supervisor Friend to move the staff recommendations on item number thirteen. And with that, I'll turn to the cloak for rolls. I'll vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson? And Cummings?
Aye. That item passes unanimously. Bring us to our last item of the morning, which is consider presentation. Oh, first, before we move on, just want to thank our staff from CDI for their help with guiding us through those previous five or six items. And with that, we'll move on to the next item, the last one of them this morning. It's consider presentation on the North Coast Facilities Management Plan and take related actions. And this item is being brought to us by Robert Tinmore, Park Planner for Parks Open Space and Cultural Services. And we also have a Director of Parks, Jeff Gaffney, with us today.
Thank you Chair Cummings and fellow board members. I'm turning it over to Rob Tinmore, our Park Planner for. Jeff, good morning Chair Cummings, members of the board. We're here today to present the North Coast Facilities Management Plan, which is the first regional planning effort to address issues on the North Coast. This project was graciously funded by a grant from California State Parks and the State Coastal Conservancy through the advocacy of Mike Eaton and former Supervisor Coonery. I'd also like to thank Park Planner Mariana Calibri Ergo and Michael Hettenhausen, former Park Planner, for their leadership and support on this project. Placeworks was the consultant on the project. Today, I'll provide an introduction to the region and the process in which the plan was developed, present the vision and goals for the plan, discuss the community engagement process, provide an overview of the final plan and project lists that were developed, and conclude with the discussion of next steps. As this photo of Waddell Beach demonstrates, the North Coast of Santa Cruz County is a place of remarkable scenic beauty and recreational opportunities. The North Coast, as defined in this plan, stretches from the Santa Cruz city limits to the San Mateo Santa Cruz County line, just south of Onunuebo State Park, and stretches from the Pacific Ocean to one mile inland. As this image shows, the open spaces on the North Coast are owned by multiple federal, state, and local agencies and nonprofits. This complicates management and prevents coordinated planning. In addition, since two thousand and five, over twenty-two thousand acres of public access land have been added to the North Coast area, yet visitor-serving facilities, infrastructure, and enforcement capacity has not kept pace. The situation was dramatically exacerbated during the COVID nineteen pandemic, when the North Coast beaches were some of the only open open spaces in the region, which led to a significant increase in visitation, and that continues to this day. So the need for a coordinated planning effort was further highlighted by the future opening of two major properties and projects. The Chutoni Coast Dairies National Monument, owned by BLM, shown as dark green in the middle of the map, and the North Coast Rail Trail, owned by the RTC, which runs seven and a half miles along the Santa Cruz Branch Rail Line from Wilder Ranch to Davenport. There are a number of existing challenges on the North Coast that this plan aims to address, including an abundance of informal and unpaved parking areas on the shoulder of Highway one that create dangerous traffic conditions. A lack of sufficient trash receptacles and restrooms results in litter and waste in many locations along the coast. Beach access paths on the North Coast are often steep and rocky, and visitors are often unaware of hazardous ocean conditions, which has resulted in drowning incidents. Many beaches are often remote, which complicates emergency and law enforcement response and leads to large parties and unpermitted camping. With these opportunities and challenges in mind, the county formed a working group of all the agencies and nonprofits that manage publicly accessible land on the North Coast, as well as regulatory agencies, enforcement staff, elected officials, and resident groups. One of the first tasks was to delineate the disparate trailheads, properties, beaches, and facilities into nine distinct zones, based on geographical groupings of amenities and recreation areas. Then we analyzed existing facilities within these zones to determine gaps in services like permanent restrooms or formal parking areas. This information was then layered onto an analysis of all the various agencies' proposed projects on the North Coast to see where gaps in amenities existed that weren't currently addressed by agencies in their planning documents. Given the collaborative nature of this process between different agencies and groups, it was important to create a unifying vision and goals to guide the project. For the North Coast Facilities Management Plan, the vision and goals were developed by reviewing existing planning documents for North Coast properties and agencies and identifying common goals and themes relevant to a majority of the agencies. The draft vision and goals were vetted through meetings with the working group and the public. Shared goals consist of an agreement to achieve regional planning and partnerships, public safety, vegetation management, public access and regional connections, plant and animal habitat conservation and restoration, stewardship maintenance facilities, and preservation of historical, cultural, and archaeological resources. Community engagement was a critical part of this project, and since the area serves as a recreation destination, it was important that we hear from both North Coast residents and visitors. The working group conducted conducted two rounds of engagement, the first in fall of two thousand and twenty-two, which consisted of stakeholder interviews, an online survey, and pop-up events on the North Coast. The second was held in fall of two thousand and twenty-three for the public to provide input on the draft plan. Again, the team collected feedback via an online survey, pop-up events on the North Coast, and a public meeting in Davenport with an online attendance option. To help ensure equity in the outreach process, county staff and county park friends conducted focused outreach to the low-income Spanish-speaking residents of the North Coast. Despite living and working in the area, we learned that most members of this group were often unaware of or did not use the recreational opportunities nearby. And notably, members of this group said that this was the first time they had been asked to provide input on a planning process. So as we move forward to implement projects on this on this plan, there is a need to continue to engage with this community. The final plan culminated in a coordinated list of proposed projects by each agency on the North Coast, as well as a list of potential projects that would address major issues identified in this plan. The projects are organized by the zones noted previously in this presentation. In order to create an objective ranking of project priority, the working group established criteria for each project, such as the project's funding status, if it had public support, whether it supported public safety or climate goals, et cetera. Each project was assigned points by the working group. The projects were then ranked based on point value. And the table on the screen is one example of how the projects ranked, based on the lead agency identifying the project as high priority, being public support for the project, and the project addressing public safety issues. Of note on the high priority list is the infrastructure needed near Waranella Road for BLM to open Chutoni Coast Dairies National Monument to the public, demonstrating the need for these projects to be completed. In addition, three potential county-led projects are on the high priority list. The Cement Plant Road Multi-Use Path, Greyhound Rock Overnight Accommodations, and Parking at Sharkfin Cove. This is a page from the plan showing Zone Two, Greyhound Rock, and highlighting county parks' proposed overnight accommodation project, which would create low-cost overnight accommodations on the coast as part of an environmental education center to ensure equitable access to the coast, particularly for low-income students. This page shows Zone Four, Davenport, where the proposed Cement Plant Road Multi-Use Path would link the northern terminus of the North Coast Rail Trail Project and the northern trailhead at Chutoni Coast Dairies with a bicycle pedestrian pathway along Cement Plant Road or the rail right-of-way. This would provide an important, safe, and separated bike and pedestrian link between these two major projects and facilities. Just down coast off the screen is a potential parking project at Sharkfin Cove that would address some of the traffic, safety, and resource conservation issues at this particular location. Now that the plan has been completed through what many of us in the working group considered a pretty notable inter-agency collaborative effort, it is critical for continued success on the North Coast, the way we continue to meet, coordinate, and foster relationships and dialogue amongst the working group. To that end, we've identified the following important next steps. The first is partner agencies will take the plan to their governing bodies for acceptance or adoption, just like we are here today. The RTC is expected to accept the plan on May second. The North Coast Rail Trail Construction Contract was recently awarded, with groundbreaking scheduled this summer and an opening approximately two years later, marking a critical milestone on a major project in this region. Agencies will continue to pursue shared maintenance agreements, like that between the county and the RTC for maintenance of the North Coast Rail Trail, that maximize the benefits to the region with limited funding and staffing. The working group will pursue funding to implement priority projects. But perhaps most importantly, the working group will continue quarterly meetings to preserve the partnerships and collaboration that were developed over the last two years and to ensure that we address issues and implement projects in a collective capacity. That concludes my presentation. We're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm just going to see if there's any questions or comments from board members at this point in time Supervisor McPherson.
Kind of just like the issue that I just we we addressed on Big Basin. This takes time and a lot of cooperative effort. And I wanted to thank the Parks Department and Jeff Gaffney, the District Three Office two years ago with Supervisor Coonery and the steadfast, continuous effort by Supervisor Cummings on establishing this plan with our state and federal partners. It really involved a great deal of problem solving and public outreach that I can appreciate. But it resulted in a great recommendation in the projects. Just want to thank everybody involved in the cooperative effort and the outreach that you had. This is going to be a real, real nice addition for the general public and especially that North Coast region for the people that are there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Can you share my comments until after we hear from members of the public? So I'd like to open up and see if there's any member of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item who's here in person today. Please step forward.
Thank you Becky Steinbruner. I attended some of those public meetings and they were very well attended. It was really nice to see. I take issue with the high priority project of the county implementing the multi-use trail on Cement Plant Road. That was a condition of approval for Barry Swenson to build the Aptos Village project and get a new connector for Parade Street to enter into that project. The CPUC, in order to give them that approval, required two upgrade private road crossings be closed. One was at the Bayview Hotel in Aptos Village, and that's been done. The second was Waranella Road up in Davenport. And part of that deal was that Swenson was supposed to improve Cement Plant Road because the Waranella Crossing, as Cal Fire said from the Big Creek Station, and PG&E, who accesses that, said that's their safest route is going over that Waranella Crossing. And to improve Cement Plant Road would be necessary if that crossing were closed. And Swenson was supposed to do that. Why is the county now being expected to do that? This is wrong. And Swenson, the county needs to hold Swenson financially accountable to accomplish this piece that was a condition of their approval and a piece of the CPUC approval of the opening of Parade Street, which is now open to the Aptos Village project. I would like an explanation, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here in person who would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing none, I'll see if there's anybody online who'd like to speak to us on this item.
Yes Chair, we have callers. Brian, your microphone is now available.
Yeah, hi, this is Brian Peoples with Trail Now. We're a local organization advocating to build the trail in a kindly, cost-effective, and eco-friendly manner. We actually worked with the farmers and to get the North Coast Trail a viable solution, which was to railbank. And we wanted to say that that project has taken over a decade because of the complexity and the refusal of politicians to do the right thing, which was to railbank and build the trail along the railroad tracks. Now you're destroying farmland and it's wrong. Secondly, we're hopeful that you build the bathrooms in the parking lots before you build the trail so that the farmers are are not inundated by poor practices of the public. Again, so it's nice to see that the project's finally coming along. It again, because it's been delayed for a decade. The cost is doubled pretty much, and it just shows a great example of why we've only built one point two miles of the coastal trail in a decade, because we allow politics to prevent us doing the right thing for the environment, for taxpayers, and to open up the coastal trail. So I'm hopeful they'll hopeful that you use the North Coast Trail and the delays we've seen and the imminent domain activity that had to be done as we progress and move forward with the other sections of the trail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Marty, your microphone is now available.
Carolyn Garrett.
Marty DeMare, North Coast resident and commenter as a member of Friends of the North Coast. We endorse the comments submitted to the by the Davenport North Coast Association. The comments consisted of thoughtful observations and well-reasoned guidance intended to increase the effectiveness of the plan. The final plan before you shows little evidence that the comments were considered or incorporated. With the Bureau of Land Management now forecasting over three hundred thousand visitors to Chutoni Coast Dairies, this plan had a chance to manage and avoid the problems that over visitation has brought to Big Sur and Mere Woods. Two years ago, this project began with the exclusion of the public at the kickoff meeting. The Placeworks proposal promised a website and monthly email blasts. Neither of those happened, and DNCA representatives were constrained from sharing work product with the community. Now, without announcement, the final plan is before you. No opportunity for public review has been offered. Please continue this item until your next meeting so that members of the public can review and offer input. Thank you.
Caller user one, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett, I got cut off. I don't know why. The idea of continuing the item to allow time for public review seems to me critical. I think I would like to see you do that. I also always appreciate the researched educational comments of Becky Steinbruner. A key question there is why is the county taking over the cost that Barry Swenson is responsible for the cement plant area? I would like that answered. I see often that the county is taking over costs that big developer and corporate interests are incurring. I guess the county becomes quite socialistic, providing for these corporate interests. I think that the corporate interests need to be paying what the cost they're incurring and they're responsible for. Another question I have is my understanding is the cement plant area, because of the toxins around that plant, seems like it's quite a contaminated area to put a trail there. And I would like to know what proof there is of a trail that's not going through like a toxic wayside. Thank you.
We have no further speakers Chair.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the board and maybe Parks, if there's any questions that were brought up by staff or by the community that you may want to answer right now. I know there was some mention of website, which I believe there's a website available with the various projects, but maybe give me an opportunity to respond.
Yeah, absolutely. So we we conducted, as I mentioned in the presentation, we conducted two rounds of outreach that consisted, I think we contacted about four hundred individuals with each round of outreach. During round one, we actually had stakeholder interviews, one of which was with Friends of the North Coast, so they had an opportunity to voice their concerns and comments during that stakeholder interview process. They did submit comments on the draft plan. The draft plan was available for public review for about approximately five weeks, I believe. We did get a number of comments on that. While we could not specifically note every single comment in the plan, they are included in the in one of the appendices to the plan, which is up on the on the Parks website. And I'll just note that many of the concerns shared by Friends of the North Coast are common to many residents on the North Coast. And those were those were noted in the implementation section as items that the working group needs to continue working on. So many of them are not something that we can just address in this plan. They they require continued coordination for management of the North Coast properties. And so we plan to do that as part of this quarterly. And so we plan to do that as part of this quarterly meeting process. The comment about Barry Swenson being on the hook for constructing Cement Plant Road, that is the first I've heard of that. So I mean, if that's, you know, if there's accurate information there, that's something we should certainly look into. So we'll plan to talk to CDI staff to look into that a little bit more.
It's like we have the director from CDI who's approached the podium to speak on this, so we'll turn it over to Matt Machado.
Great, thank you. Good morning again. And so just to answer that question, that Cement Plant Road improvement was actually mitigation for a proposed closure of the Warrenella Crossing. The Warrenella Crossing was not closed. They found another mitigation way. I believe they removed the track so that it's almost the crossing got taken out of the road so that the road could continue to be open, so there was no need for mitigation. And so that's why that arrangement was modified, actually. And so it actually worked out well for our community because the community was really opposed to closing the Warrenella access to Highway One. And so we felt like it was a win, even though we had to give up the expected mitigation on Cement Plant Road improvements, but it was all done appropriately and with county approval. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that clarification. And then I guess if there's any other statements that you'd like to make on the comments that were made.
Great, I understand.
Well, I'll just, I just want to thank you all for all of your hard work on this project. It's been a long time coming. I think many of us who visit the North Coast know that, you know, for some of the parking lots that are up there, you almost have to have a four-by-four truck because of all the, you know, divots and ruts that if you have a smaller car, you might not, wouldn't say you might not make it out, but it makes it challenging to navigate those parking lots. And we've heard a lot of concerns and complaints around safety, the need for more bathrooms, the need for more trash, and with increased visitation, you know, it's just something that, you know, as being the protectors of our environment, we really need to make sure that we're doing our best to mitigate those negative impacts. And, you know, the fact that we were able to bring so many state and local agencies together, community groups, it just really goes to show what can come out of a collective collaborative process. And so I just want to thank you all for your work on this, and then also just want to give a few shout-outs. Just want to give a special thanks to Mike Eden from the Davenport North Coast Association who working with Supervisor Cooney's office, who was able to help secure funding from the Coastal Conservancy and State Parks to help fund this project. Big thanks to former Supervisor Ryan Cooney, Andy Schifrin, and Rachel Dan from that office who really helped spearhead and move this project along. And then, you know, I really do think it's important to call out who we were able to work with in terms of the stakeholder group. So huge thanks to the Bureau of Land Management, California Department of Transportation, California State Parks, County of Santa Cruz, Land Trust of Santa Cruz County, Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission, Trust for Public Lands, California State Coastal Conservancy, Office of Congressman Jimmy Panetta, the Office of Representative Anna Shu, Office of the State Senator John Laird, Office of Assembly Member Mark Stone, Office of Assembly Member Gail Pellerin, my office, the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Department, California Coastal Commission, California Highway Patrol, Davenport North Coast Association, Simpervirance Fund, Almond Woodson Land Trust, and the Resource Conservation District of Santa Cruz County. It was all these agencies coming together and working collaboratively together that's brought us to where we are today. And I really think that, but with our collective efforts, we're going to really be able to bring forward some needed improvements to the North Coast, which will allow for greater public access to some of the most amazing features that we have in our county. And so with that, I don't have any further comments, but I do want to make sure that folks know that, you know, this isn't the last time people will be able to provide input. As all these projects come in, there'll be opportunities for people to continue to provide input on these projects. But this, but making the decision today and not delaying will actually allow us to start moving forward with securing funding for some of the major safety and parking and access improvements on the North Coast. And so with that, I can't make a motion, but if somebody would be willing to move the item, we can continue moving forward today.
I'll move the recommended actions.
Second, all right, so we have a motion by Supervisor Friend, seconded by Supervisor Koenig, to move the staff recommendation. And with that, I'll turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Hi.
Brent?
Hi.
Hernandez?
Hi.
McPherson?
Hi.
And Cummings?
Hi. That passes unanimously. And with that, it looks like we've been able to make it through all of our morning items. I'll just see what the board's feelings are. It's 11:34, we can move straight into closed session and lunch, and then we can meet at 1:30, or we can take a little half-hour break and meet at noon. Close session? Okay. With that, we will move into our closed session. Before we go into closed session, I'm just going to ask the county council if we're going to have anything to report out on today's closed session.
No.
Okay. With that, that'll close our regularly scheduled morning session for the Board of Supervisors. We'll move into closed session, and then we will be back at 1:30 for a time certain item, which is related to our core program, followed by the segments 10 and 11 rail trail discussion. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
of 2024. I don't need to call roll, do I? Jason? Okay. So with that, we will move on to our time certain item, number 16, Consider Presentation of the Collective of Results and Evidence-Based Core Investment Program on Request for Proposal Development and Prioritization for the Next Core Funding Cycle of Fiscal Years 2025 to 2028 and Take Related Actions. And with that, I will turn it over to HSD staff for the presentation on this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, country board members, and to those in chambers here and those online watching, I'm Randy Morris, I'm the Director of the Human Services Department, and I'm joined by Kimberly Peterson, the Deputy Director of our department. And before we pull up a formal PowerPoint for the presentation, I just want to remind your board and mostly for the community watching, this is a shared investment with our partners at the City of Santa Cruz. And what's in front of you today is a conversation that's been in motion for many, many years, where there's just shy of $5 million of County General Fund and just over $1 million of City General Fund, which is a bucket of $6 million that is being put in front of you today to consider releasing an RFP for the procurement of that dollars to go live January of 2026. I just want to take a few moments to level set and remind everyone of the journey that got us to this moment today. And the first is that a year ago, in April of 2023, we were in front of your board, and then followed that afternoon with the city council seeking approval of a timeline, which your board and the council approved, which moved this procurement process up six months earlier to create more space for the elected officials in the community to have a conversation. And so when the procurement decisions were made, there was more time to transition if there's any changes in contract. But also, and as will be highlighted today, more opportunities for you as our elected officials and the city council, as the two elected bodies who oversee this money, to have input in what is funded. And those are changes from the last cycle. So this timeline was approved by your board April of 2023. We then came back to you in December of 2023 as part of that approved timeline to share with you a conceptual framework for how to put this money out to the community, this next round of procurement, given there is so little money and so much need in the community. And that framework was approved by your board and the city council, which essentially took what's called the core conditions of well-being, of which there are eight, and it focused on four of those eight. And the reason for that is we did a pretty detailed analysis to look at where County General Fund was focused in the core conditions, and we were under-invested in the areas that we lifted up to you, that we recommended you focus the investment, given where our money is throughout the county. Those four conditions that were approved by your board and the council are lifelong learning and education, thriving families, healthy environments, and affordable housing and shelter. Which brings me to the last update, which is last month, I was sitting here with Dr. Ratner, the Director of our Housing for Health Division, when we presented our six-month update to your board. And please, for reference, the Housing for Health Division and the strategic plan that it administers under your board's approval did not exist when community programs exist and on transition to this program called CORE. We saw the moment in front of us with declining state and federal revenues and the crisis in front of us around preventing homelessness and addressing the shelter crisis in this community. We brought forward to your board in March a recommendation that you support us returning today with a couple of options, given your board approved focusing on affordable housing and shelter, for a couple of different ways to consider how to use the CORE F P to use the General Fund to purchase services with community-based service providers. So that all led to us being in front of you today, which when we get through the formal PowerPoint, I'll sort of have a slide that shows where we are. I do want to end with the following in my introductory comments. It really strikes me as somebody who's been here as the Director for four years, and I know this program has a legacy of 40 years, and I'm probably the fifth or sixth Human Services Director who's been asked to manage the former community programs and CORE. My budget that your board approves every year, the CORE line item within the budget is approximately 2% of the Human Services budget. And if you add the healthcare agency, the CORE money available for competitive procurement is about 1% of the amount of money Health and Human Services put into the community to deliver services. Which raises a question for me as a new member of this community, why is there so much controversy? And I think the answer to that question, which I want to recognize is complicated, is it almost the only light item in a county human and health service budget that is 100% your money under your policy control? Almost everything else we bring to you is a federal or state program with federal-state mandates. And it's no wonder that, given the work of our community-based organizations, what they see, what we see, this is so complicated to have so little money to address so many needs. So I want to recognize that, but I do want to put in perspective, it is a very small percent of the safety net, but a very meaningful amount of money because it's all under your control. So with that said, if the clerk of the board could lift up the PowerPoint, we'll walk through the presentation. So as stated, we are here today, and we will be, Kimberly and I, with the city manager's office, and the City of Santa Cruz will be in front of their council this afternoon. And the agenda is brief. I'm going to walk through that timeline that your board and the city council approved just to ground this discussion. And then going to turn it over to Kimberly, who is going to go through the RFP details. And essentially, this is us applying the lessons learned that we heard back from you as elected officials and from community-based organizations and other stakeholders. And we were going to outline for you the adjustments to this RFP based on those lessons learned. And then I will close it out with walking through the recommended actions in front of you for consideration today. Okay, so this is the timeline that's in front of you. And remember, this is what you approved as a timeline to move this process up six months and also to create more opportunities, which are listed as 1, 2, 3, so it's easy to see where we are seeking direction from you so that you have more opportunities to give us feedback on what your priorities are. In many regards, this is us trying to find a hybrid or a needle thread between a procurement, which is an open best application wins process, which some appreciated and some felt elected officials had more say. So creating these moments in time for you to give us feedback on your priorities was a way to sort of balance the two. So today, I will close with what the specific recommended actions are, but it's basically asking you to approve the release of the RFP. We'll go through that in more detail soon. If approved, and then by the council this afternoon, applications from our community-based service providers would be due by, we'd release on June 3, and soon after, the application would be due as detailed in the RFP. New, this round, never done before, based on feedback, is we have a new public hearing before we come to you with the recommended awards that we propose be in the fall. We're going to target September, perhaps October. I think the materials say no later than October. That is a new moment where we will bring to the public and to you a summary of what the proposals are, the spread, how much money is being asked for. And that gives one more opportunity for you to give us feedback and direction on what your priorities are before we come back with recommended awards, which is listed here as winter 2024. But I want to be clear, we are endeavoring to do this by late November, December, so these decisions are made by your board before there's two new board members and the city council, which also has some seats up for election. And then this would give ample time to transition to new contracts starting in July 1 of 2025 and to go through any transitions. And this is a change from three years ago when we were in front of the board, right at the end of the fiscal year, which created a lot of pressure, and that was primarily due to the Omicron variant, which pushed everything back up against the wall, and the pressure was too much for all of us. So with that said, I am now going to turn it over to Kimberly, and she is going to walk through a summary of what is in the RFP.
Thank you. So as Randy mentioned, over the course of the lessons learned and community engagement process, we received a lot of feedback on what should be in the next RFP. And in December, we received additional feedback from you as board members on things that you would also like to see in the RFP. And so you can see highlights here of how we incorporated that feedback. We have a simplified application that is more aligned with what the structure of the scope of work would be if a grant is awarded. We maintained a tiered funding structure, but we restricted large organizations defined as those with $7.5 million in revenue or more from applying for the small tier. And this was in response to feedback that the small organizations with less capacity should not have to compete with large organizations for small grants. We also have a simplified conflict of interest form for the review panels. This should make it easier to have more demographically and racially diverse panels. And we have also included a detailed scoring rubric in the RFP materials. It's the rubric that would be used to review the applications. In response to the request to give more scoring weight to CORE proposals that can leverage their funding, we have made five bonus points available for medium and large-size applications that demonstrate the ability to leverage. And we've included a handful of questions on the application that were requested by some board members, such as was a grant writer used? Is the program being proposed new or existing? And we asked the size of the agency budget and program budget. We also plan to issue an electronic intent to apply survey, asking potential applicants for what core condition they will apply and what level of funding. The survey will be non-binding nor mandatory, but it will help us prepare for the review panels. And then in response to board member requests to create flexibility in the structure for unanticipated needs, we recommend setting aside 15% of the RFP funding for elected officials to have available to address unanticipated priorities at the time of recommended awards or to fund agencies that were not recommended for an award. Then for staff discretion, we have recommended reducing staff discretion from 10% to 5%. And what that does is when we recommend awards, we want to be sure that we maximize all the available CORE funding. However, we never know how the puzzle pieces of the different proposals may fit together, so we sometimes need to trim around the edges to make sure that we fully use the funding and can fund the recommended awardees as close to their full budget as possible. And then there are a number of things that we continued. As I mentioned, we maintained a tiered funding structure of tiers one, two, and three, representing large, medium, and small-size grants. Large grants would be up to $500,000, medium grants up to $150,000, and small grants would be available up to $25,000. We did not include a targeted impact grant this round, and that's because of this structure that we have this time, where we've already narrowed it down to a smaller number of core conditions, supporting more narrowed collective impact on certain areas. One exception to the tier structure is that for the healthy environments CORE condition, we have just small and medium-sized grants available. And the reason that we did this is because most of the existing CORE services are within lifelong learning, thriving families, and stable, affordable housing. There's actually no grants in the healthy environments category, and there was only one or two submitted last round. And so we felt that by having a large, a large-size grant in that category, or even more than one large-size grant, that it would pool too much from the historic priority services that have been served through CORE. We also maintained a 25% cap on funding so that any, the most that any one agency can apply for is 25% of the total CORE RFP funding available. And then regarding past performance, we are highlighting that any organization that's not eligible to contract with the county, including any organization that it's lost its ability to contract with us, would not be eligible for an award. We have maintained and clarified data collection requirements so we can report on outcomes. And then we've also kept And then we've also kept that all services provided through core funding must be to Santa Cruz County residents. So overall, we we really tried to incorporate as much of the feedback and requests that we heard over the course of the lessons learned, community engagement in various public meetings. Though after careful consideration and research, there was just one bit of feedback that we are not able to recommend and did not include. And that was the board member review of applications. And the reason that we didn't recommend this is because it's not standard county practice for RFPs for that to happen. It's also not not best practice for state and local government procurements. As part of our RFP processes, we have panelists who are recruited and trained on the scoring rubric. They sign conflict of interest forms. They keep the information that they're reviewing confidential. And it's generally designed for a fair and equitable review process. The proposals are not available to competing agencies. And part of this process is to reduce outside influence on the review and recommendation process. During the last round, we received a hundred and twenty seven applications. And if the board members would have access to review the applications, then in essence, these all the applications would be made public, opening the process to outside influence and making it in some ways threatening the integrity of what we traditionally do for a RFP process. And then lastly, as as the board, you have the ability to approve or override any of the recommendations that come to you at the close of the of the process. And I'll pass it back to Randy.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly. And I'm going to close out with just walking through what the five recommended actions are in front of you with a little bit of focus on two of them, just because even though they're all in the materials, I want to make sure you hear our thinking and also the community can hear and make public comment, hearing our reasoning behind. So one is the standard accept and file the materials. It's not asking you to agree or disagree on this, this sort of formal process we ask of you. Second is to direct us to release the RFP. Now, I want to say in the actual vote in front of you, it's and include any additional direction. The reason for that is so that if you give us additional direction and it's voted to approve, we will incorporate that and then release the RFP versus coming back with the RFP for you to, you know, rubber stamp what you've already directed us to do. Also, as already approved in your timeline, to direct us to report back by October twenty four, we will endeavor to get here late September, early October, but by no later than the end of October. And then the two I want to take a moment to speak a little bit more about is consider options for shelter and homeless prevention. That is one of the four core conditions you've already approved for us to focus on. I'm going to walk through the options, which you approved at the March hearing for us to bring to you today. And then finally carve outs, and I'll take a minute to explain what that is and what's the recommended action. So this slide is looking at shelter and homeless prevention. As I said in my introductory comments, the human service department did not have what is now the Housing for Health Division. We did not have a board-approved strategic plan to prevent and end homelessness, which your board just recently approved for a second iteration of a strategic plan. And given this is one of the core conditions and we are trying to focus on collective impact, how to most deeply and specifically target our investments of general fund, we felt it was our responsibility to look at the timing of this. And I want to highlight that we brought forward to your board for consideration and for public comment, three options. And we, in the materials, recommend option one. That's why it's in bold here, and I want to explain to you why, but also explain the other two. So recommendation number one, which we are asking you to consider in the action to to support staff recommendation, option one, one point five million of the core money be carved out. There's four core conditions. That's one fourth of the money. We could use more of it for every core condition, but we felt that was a sweet spot. And to break it up in two ways, one million dollars towards shelter and half a million dollars to a prevention intervention in South County specifically. And I want to explain why this is our first and our recommendation. Why one million dollars in shelter? We now have three plus years of experience running the Housing for Health Division. We, in that time, have been very successful in securing a high volume of federal and state grants. And there is one thing the federal government and state government are not paying for, and that is emergency shelter. We have really no revenue stream available to us other than local money to leverage, make us more competitive, to try and effectuate what your board approved three years ago in strategic plan, which is to develop three navigation centers countywide, one in North County, one in Mid County, one in South County, without a more effective shelter system. Even though we wish we did not have unsheltered in our community, we have a crisis that is growing. We will never have an ecosystem that can address how to deal with this crisis. That as I look at the future, I want to highlight the graph to the right of this slide, which was brought to your board at the March hearing when Housing for Health was in front of you with me and Robert. This is the funding we have looking at the next four years. We have a big bucket of money right now to help us deal with shelter, and this is predominantly the fourteen million dollar earmark that State Senator John Laird earmarked for the city of Santa Cruz to partner with the county of Santa Cruz. And that money is running out in its term in the city. When you look at all the rest of the money, it's all one-time grants predominantly not focused on shelter. And as we are trying to stand up the three navigation centers and shelters in this community with a state facing a deficit, a governor who is continuing to perpetuate a narrative that he's paid for enough of everything. I don't see him paying for more. And we have a historic moment, and I don't want to overdramatize this, but I feel like it's my responsibility to share this with you as a board. If we don't take advantage of the opportunity to grab the general fund available to us here and through Measure K, which is a different action, and we need to put the two together, we do not have enough base funding. It will not be the entire funding for an effective shelter system across this county. But it is enough base funding to make us more competitive and to tell the CBOs and to begin to plan to have a sustainable shelter system in this community. Absent that, I don't see a future. We are going to have another opportunity with general fund through the Measure K and through Core. So we felt it was our responsibility to share this. And a half a million dollars dedicated on a prevention intervention in South County. We'd not feel it was appropriate, given the data that we have in front of us. And I know the point in time count, which is the mandated system we have to use to one day every year, look at the people experiencing homeless and who are sheltered. Twenty nine percent decrease in the city of Santa Cruz unsheltered population in the point in time count a year ago, a fifteen percent increase in Watsonville. If you bump that up against the statewide data and point in time counts, for the first time ever, there was a profound increase in the Latin X population across the state of California becoming homeless. And if you look from a school district perspective, the number of families and children in school who are homeless in our county, the Paharo Valley Unified School District has the largest unhoused or precariously housed population. So we felt as a matter of the equity statement that we had to find a way to also focus on South County to have a more of a prevention intervention. To do so, it would include a balance of legal services, case management, some flexible funds, which would include short-term rental assistance, targeting South County and better tracking. And if approved, this one point five million dollars would move to the Housing for Health Division of HSD to cool it in the many funding streams that the Housing for Health Division has secured to help us have more targeted collective impact on shelter services and prevention services. Right now, there's a bit of fragmented system in both areas, and we would like to use this money to sort of collect and coordinate. And of course, we would be back in front of your board for any request for money to be procured in the future, but then we could plan there and not have it be in the core RFP. Option number two is to maintain the one million dollars of shelter focus, but to leave five hundred thousand of dol- five hundred thousand dollars in the core RFP process to be competitively applied for for up to five hundred thousand dollars of money in that core condition. And the final option is just to keep it as is, which is to leave all the money in the core RFP and let the CBOs apply. We understand that might lead leave a larger pot for people to compete for, but we do have concerns that does not effectuate the goal of collective impact by moving this money into the Housing for Health Division, where that strategic plan is being effectuated, hence our recommendation. And the final slide is to speak about the final recommended action, and that is a carve-out. So what is a carve-out? The picture of the pie here is it's a little bit of an oxymoron to have a RFP, which is a competitive procurement where you're saying, hey, agencies apply, best applications win. But last round, your board directed staff to carve out one item from competitive procurement, and that was because at the same time we were issuing the core RFP, our local nonprofit area agency on aging under seniors council was issuing their RFP. And it was known that this community cared deeply about home-delivered meals for older adults. So we were directed to carve that out from Core and to instead wait and see who the AAA selected to be their provider of home-delivered meals and then to give a percentage of core money to them. We did not recommend that because we believe this is your decision. And as soon as we as staff started looking at what programs were the programs deserving of not having to compete, we felt very clear we are getting out of our lane, and this is your decision to make. And every program we run has varying degrees of importance in this community, and that's why we wanted to put it back on you. Some of you have told me, make me make the hard decisions. So here we are. But I recognize this is an option you have. I want to end by saying the way we built out this timeline under your recommendation and approval for this timeline, today is not the only day when you have to make a choice about a carve-out. We also will be back in front of you in September, October, where we'll share with you what applications have come in. You can give us direction for a carve-out then. And finally, as your board asked of us, and as if you approve today, there is a fifteen percent set aside flexible fund for you to focus on emerging priorities then or direct that money to go to pay for something that was not recommended for awards. So we've tried to build all these opportunities in here for you to carve out. But one of the recommended actions today is for you to direct us to today, consider carving out something from procurement, which I'm sure CBOs, if that was the decision today, would know they didn't have to turn in the application. But this is a difficult decision, so we want to leave that for you. So with that said, that closes our formal presentation, and we are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. All right, I guess I'll open up to board members to see if there's any questions before we open up to the general public. And so I guess we'll start with supervisor cutting.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. In option one, the recommendation to reserve five hundred thousand dollars for South County Prevention Services. I mean, you make a very clear argument that we're seeing homelessness increase in South County, whereas we've actually managed to get something of a handle on it in North County. But is there any reason to specifically say that that half a million dollars is only for prevention in South County? I mean, ultimately, maybe the weight of it ends up going towards South County, but certainly there's people in all parts of the county that could benefit from prevention services, no?
Um, of course. I I I'm not running for political office, but I feel like I'm about to. I think this is tricky because we're in a scarcity model where we don't have enough money. Ideally, we're going to have a much more robust prevention system throughout the entire county. But if I may lean into what I believe is my responsibility. I got here four years ago, and my experience was almost all resources, services, energy discussions were North County. I was shocked, and I'm sitting next to the former mayor of Watsonville and my supervisor CO is the former city manager of Watsonville. I was shocked to hear how historic the inequities were as a new member of this community. And I think when you think about the passage of your equity statement that we worked on, and I was a part of that indirectly, this is a very difficult moment to have the equity discussion, which is we have a historic overinvestment in North County. And I think that has a dotted through line to the reason why there is a decrease in the number of homeless people in North County and a historic underinvestment in South County. We had five million dollars, four, three million dollars, yes. But I think when we have a half a million dollars, if we spread that so thin, I worry it will not have an impact. And I think when you see the data that came in front of us, from anecdote to actual data, the crisis is growing. We talked to our own staff in human services that a percent are in our North County offices and a percent are in our South County offices. The percent in our South County offices never saw people unsheltered in the community. They're everywhere now. So the crisis is profound, and we felt this was an equity decision. This is the county's money, and we're lifting it up for you for consideration. I think it's that we don't have enough money and it's a chance to walk the equity talk, to be frank.
All right. Thank you for the explanation. The other question is that this, you know, if we do choose to make a one and a half million dollar carve-out for, you know, stable, affordable housing and shelter programs, that doesn't preclude other applicants to core funds from, you know, for that category. Is that right? I mean, for example, additional safe parking programs could still be, they certainly still apply for other core funds, right, for the remainder?
Okay, so let me make sure I understand your question, and if I do, please confirm for me. I actually think it might need to be additional direction. We are recommending one point five million be carved out, moved to the Housing for Health Division to be procured through that process. And that would leave the remaining for the other three core conditions in the core RFP. If you were to issue additional direction to allow, to approve this recommendation and then allow the procurement to include additional applications, I think, I don't think that's the way we intended it. But I would like to also add two things. One is I believe, and I want to defer to our CAO, I believe it's in June during budget hearings, will be in front of you about Measure K, which is another bucket of through the tax initiative, general fund money, which has been publicly made shared that up to a million dollars, and it's up to the board. If it's more, that would be available. And then finally, we have been pretty effective about funding through other state and federal grants, other things as well. So if that's answering your question, it was carving out one point five million to pull out of Core, leave the rest of the money for the other three core conditions. But I do want to name there's other funding sources, state and federal grants and Measure K to consider for other shelter and other type programs. And I think that's the maze we would want to weave together with everyone.
All right. Thanks for the clarification.
Supervisor Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. I have some brief comments, although I'm interested in hearing the community feedback on this. I think that I don't believe you are overstating the moment that's being offered through the state investment and our requirement locally to meet that through a carve-out. I think that we have a very unique opportunity right now to maximize these impacts. We also have a way to get us a little bit out of the state processes where you're managing fifty, I mean, this is not hyperbole, but fifty different grants, staff time being focused more on compliance than actually service delivery. This is, this would be a million and a half toward direct service delivery in something that's been identified not just by this board, but by the community more broadly as as one of the top responsibilities. I think that we have an absolute responsibility to do it. I also like to say that, I mean, unequivocally, we've underinvested in literally everything in South County. I don't think that anybody could argue differently. And I think that the board has, especially over the last five years, worked very earnestly to remedy a lot of that, whether it's work down in the river, work down in the hospital, work down on the new South County Government Center to this. This is all part and parcel with that. And I think that that, you know, five hundred thousand is a pretty minimal initial investment to to show that commitment to the changes in South County. The second part is I'm supportive of, I've been consistently supportive and vocal of this idea of of whatever the percentage is that's recommended here, the fifteen percent set aside. And the reason is, as somebody who has been through this process for twelve years and seen the various iterations, no matter how perfect a process is, there's always some things that happen at the end that I think that there would be a preference of flexibility at the very end. And this allows for, from the beginning of the RFP to the time of awards, there could be an emerging need. We had a few years ago, for example, there was a recommendation for no funding for women's health programs at a time when it seemed like that should be one of the top things that we should be focused on. But that was something from the beginning of the procurement to the end, and it would have been nice to have had that set aside. It would have made sense, for example. So I think that's a small amount of money to set aside that would really help either augment programs that that maybe didn't receive the full funding they needed, fund programs that were worthy that that didn't receive funding and allow us on the emerging needs. So I'm fully supportive of the fifteen percent. I'm fully supportive of that set aside. And I do believe that you've done a lot of work to address the questions or comments that came in from the last procurement process. A lot of outreach to see to community-based organizations, a community-based outreach and a lot of outreach to board members to help address it. And so I think that what you're bringing forward today is a direct reflection of that. So I appreciate the transparency in your process, and I'm supportive of what we have before us today. Thank you.
Supervisor McPherson, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for bringing this clear process to us and to second. And the second, the recommendations for the, for carrying that out. We continue to learn through our conversations with providers, and we have modified our approach to meet the community needs as best we can and demonstrated in the recommendation to use a portion of the core funding for affordable housing, which is a pressing point here and everywhere else as well. And we have long needed a stable source of funding, which was mentioned for shelters. But I do also support the 15% carve out for the board to help plug gaps to address unmet needs as they come up. And, but I do want to caution against us making more carve outs. I think that would be a mistake, other than the two just mentioned, for sheltering and board discretion. I'm concerned that if we have more carve outs, it's going to erode the integrity of this process, that I think we have improved greatly. You have improved greatly, and I think it's going to allow us to give more critical services to the people that need it in Santa Cruz County. So I appreciate the process that you've heard what our concerns were and others. And I think that this is a very good presentation, and I support the avenue that you're taking in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hernandez.
Few questions and a comment. I wanted to find out, you know, that little flow chart that you have on that step two. When they review the applications, who is it exactly that we, well, not exactly, in general? Who is it that reviews the applications? Is it CBOs? Is it staff or committee?
It's a, it's a combination of individuals that typically includes staff from the county and local jurisdictions, as well as could include experts in the categories that people are applying for and community volunteers, leaders in the community. The, it may involve people who are parts of CBOs. However, employees of CBOs who are applying for funding couldn't participate on the panels because that would be a conflict of interest. But the intent is that it's a, it's a variety of people from different backgrounds through that, throughout all the areas of the county, and people who have some expertise in the types of services that are being applied for.
And Supervisor Hernandez, if I may share two other points. We also are very careful to keep small in numbers, occasional regional support, because we want it to be predominantly local. But we do bring some subject matter experts that bring sort of an objective lens, but maybe know a particular area very well. And the second is, I do want to recognize the voice of South County CBOs, and I'm not going to say names, but this happened at Jalisco and Watsonville, where after the last RFP, we were advised that we did not have enough representation from South County. And we were pushed to please look at why, because Kimberly, who is the former mayor of Watsonville, worked very hard to get more South County representation. And I want to lift up that the Conflict of Interest policy has written, actually unintentionally ruled out more South County representation. And that is why we changed the Conflict of Interest, because we have to have a process that includes regional representation, representing the full county. Unintended consequence, we only caught it after the fact, and it was a South County CBO that said that was a problem, and we've tried to address it here. So I hope that's on point, but I wanted to specifically name that, given the district you represent.
Both of you hit the hammer right on the nail, what I was referring to with the comment about the CBOs that are applicants and then South County representation. The other question I had is, I sat for nine years on the Social Services Committee for the city. And there, they actually did change like more of a core structure as well, or bigger allotments. But as a, one year I didn't sit on that committee, but the council got to see the, the proposals that went in. Will we at some point, after the awards are given out, be able to see the proposals?
So typically, after the contracts are completed, then the proposals would be, could be public. That's typically what would happen. We, I will say, we don't traditionally like publish them, but they would be, they would be public.
And may I say Supervisor Hernandez, before my time, I do want to recognize, and I'm mindful Supervisor McPherson and Friend were here, the former process called Community Programs was not an RFP. It was not a formal RFP. And there was sort of a kind of a light application process that was more heavily reviewed by elected officials with budget hearings, with presentations from CBOs. And that process, at least two generations ago of this board, and the Santa Cruz City Council, which also had its own process, came together and said, please do a formal RFP. When the formal RFP was shifted, that's when it shifted to the current process. I can't speak to the city of Watsonville, but I'm guessing that they might have had a, it's not a formal RFP. It's kind of a looser RFP because it's local general fund. When you have federal and state dollars that are required to be RFP'd, you have to follow RFP processes, and then you have to have it sealed from elected influence. But I think when it's an RFP, we're recommending following the RFP process. I think it could revert to the former process, but that's not an RFP. So that's the balance we're trying to strike.
So I'm referring to, on the flow chart, I think it's step three or step four. Once it's awarded, granted, or whatever, is it possible to then view the proposals and scores afterwards? After all is said and done, not during the process, but after the process?
Right. The answer is yes. Yes. Yeah, after the awards, everything's public.
Okay.
So it's a simple answer, yes.
Thank you. And I have a couple of questions before we move on. I guess I just want to start as it relates to the 1.5 million dollars and how that's going to be allocated. I'm just trying to better understand. So if we, I guess if we, you know, decide that that's going to go to the COC of the Housing for Health Policy Board, are they going to be making the ultimate decision on how that money gets spent? Or is the decision on how that money is going to be spent based on and what's before us? So in terms of the fact that, you know, it sounds like it's getting called out under option one, the 750,000 for three low barrier navigation centers, meaning chad firstly distributed throughout the county. Is it, with that ultimate decision on which navigation centers those would be, would that decision be made by the Housing for Health Policy Board? Or is that something we're kind of making a decision on today? And the reason why I ask is because as it relates to the funding going to the Housing for Health Policy Board and even sitting on it, the only thing that has come to mind during the course of this conversation is that there are other jurisdictions, like if this is core funding, which City of Santa Cruz and the county are putting funding into, there are other jurisdictions and other groups that sit on that board that don't put funding into this process. And so from my perspective, it kind of seems like ultimately, we're also starting to give people who are not paying into this process, you know, some control over the funding that we're allocating from our jurisdictions into supporting these services. And so I'm just wondering if you can speak to that, because it may be that, yes, these are the things we want to fund, but that ultimate decision comes down to the board and not so much sending that authority over to the Housing for Health Policy Division.
I think I understand the question. Let me try to parse out the moving parts. So part one is if your board approves this, and then we go to the city council, who has a million dollars of their general fund, 250,000 that would go toward shelters. So I'll get to that. To cut to the end of the story, the board and the city council can always undo and overdue, depending on other things. For example, if the state and federal government puts out billions of dollars to pay for emergency shelter, we might need to come back and say, we don't need that. We need to shift. Barring that, which is unlikely, if your board approves this today, you would be saying of the core money, 750,000 of county's contribution would move over to be procured by Housing for Health and HSD, equally distributed across the county, 250,000 for North County, 250,000 for the mid-county and Supervisor Conix District, the behavioral health bridge program that we're building up, 250,000 for South County, the South County Navigation Center that we're working on with Monterey County and South County. The City of Santa Cruz is, in this proposal, this is approved by the city manager, they would be putting 250,000 of their money, of their 1 million, which makes it a full million. That means their 250 would contribute to North County only, so 500,000 would be focused on North County. And that's because the city of Watsonville doesn't put any money in. That would go to the COC for discussion. You, and I believe Supervisor Conig are on the COC. Ultimately, when the money gets put out, it would have to come back to this full board. But if this through line continues, those would be invested in the CBOs who are delivering those services. Right now, that would be Housing Matters in North County. It's currently in discussion. It was made public at City Council of Watsonville, CAB, Community Action Board, South County, and a to be determined vendor in mid-county for the behavioral health bridge program. Those monies would be general fund-based money for those three navigation centers, with the City of Santa Cruz investing extra money in North County. And then this is getting very detailed, but they also have the armory. So the 500,000 would be shared in the Armory Shelter and the Housing Matter Shelter. So that is the way it's written in the board materials. We didn't go in that much detail. And then it would move out of the core procurement. People would not be applying for that, and we would work that discussion in the COC and then ultimately have to come back to this board to approve the contracts being effectuated. And remember, this is for July of 2025. So we'd be back in front of your board, at which point you'd have an option to rethink it if there's different funding. But we would move forward with that trajectory if approved today. Is this answering your question?
I think it does. I think I still have some concerns over it, because ultimately, it sounds like the COC would then make the decision, not our board, or...
Well, okay, let me try to be more succinct. If you approve this today, your board is making the decision to have your money invest 250 South, 250 Mid, 250 North. We would be following your direction, period. It's just that then that money would be integrated, and this is collective impact. It would be integrated in all those other funding streams that we have under Housing for Health to sort of build up and sustain North, Mid, and South County shelter services. But we need that base money. That's our proposal, because we are not competitive when we apply, and we get asked how much local money you're putting in, and we barely have any. And we need it for some base funding. When you look at that trend chart that shows we're losing federal and state revenues, so that's the balance. But it would be directly, because you are approving today, that investment. COC wouldn't go change that investment. They would just execute it in line with other funding streams they have to pay for the full complement of services at those three navigation centers. But we would follow your direction, given today.
And I think that helps clarify this. The next question I have on that is that earlier this year, the county entered into an MOU with the City of Santa Cruz for winter shelter. And I don't see that. I'm just curious where that's falling out, because while the armory is very important, I think that one of the things that we identified and we voted on unanimously to support moving forward to City of Santa Cruz was having that there's, and with the city of Watsonville, was it were MOUs around emergency and winter shelter and disaster shelters. And so I'm just wondering where the carve out would be for that, because if that's not funded, it'd be good to know how that, those are going to be funded as well.
We, we did talk that through, and you're correct, I didn't name that specifically. And I don't know if we did in the materials. This has been discussed with Carlos, our COO. Measure K would be the funding source, that million dollars. And it is correct that the City of Santa Cruz and the City of Watsonville invested in that, and it was a three-way MOU to have North and South County severe weather shelters. We, in all transparency, did not see Core as the best place, given how limited this money is, to have it be severe weather shelters. And we thought Measure K was the better source. So that would be the source. And I believe we're going to be back in front of you in June to talk about that level of detail for how to purpose the Measure K funding.
Okay, thanks. And then a couple of other questions. Just wondering, in the previous round of funding, how are we tracking the performance of organizations that received funding last time? And then also, is there going to be any indication in the application of who received funding? And also, when we receive information, who received funding last time, what their outcomes were, and kind of what they're applying for this time? Because I can see, you know, part of, when I see past performance, it's not necessarily about as an organization, you know, being able to contract with us and have they lost their ability? It's how they, you know, we've given them money in the past. How well have they been able to execute and use those funds who they've served? And if we're going to consider funding them again, are they applying for the same things? It's a new program. So I'm just wondering how that's going to be worked out.
So we are tracking the outcomes from all of the current programs. We have annually, well, so last year was the first full year, but available on our website, we actually have the annual report. It includes a summary of all the outcomes across all programs, as well as the individual reports from each individual program funded, including outcomes who has served, broken down by demographics, success stories. It's available, and we are tracking it, and we will continue to do so. When we come back with the recommended awards, well, first, to answer your question, there is not currently a question on the application about whether they're currently receiving core funding. What we, I think what we did in one of the prior report outs, you have access to, we could provide a list of everybody who's currently receiving funding, and then you would see the list of people recommended for funding. I think that, and it would probably align closely with the final round of, well, you would have the second year reports on how they've performed over the prior year. What I get you're speaking to, though, is a bit of how would we, could we look at how they performed in this round of Core in relation to what they're proposing next round? And one of the challenges that we discussed in relation to Core and looking at past performance in that way is that Core is not, there's not a request for one specific service. Perhaps if the, if you guys support the housing recommendation, that will be something different. But otherwise, we're not procuring one specific service, like, for example, outreach services. It's not one specific service that we could compare everybody on how they all did outreach. It's a whole variety of services. And so to compare them against one another for outcomes would be a challenge. And then similarly, with each round of Core, people might be proposing a different, another whole different type of service. And so to feasibly judge how, to make that comparison, it just, it would be a challenge, which is why we have said we would look at, are they eligible for, for funding from the county? And maybe we could provide the information that you're asking. You would have who's getting it now and who's being recommended in the future. Am I answering your question?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's really important to have that information, just so that we know kind of who's, who are the new organizations that haven't gotten funding in the past? Were past organizations that are, you know, being considered for funding for this round? And then also just, you know, based on their application, did they actually do what they said that we're going to do with the money that they received from the county? I think people in the community really want to understand how our tax dollars are getting spent. Are they being spent effectively? Are these organizations being effective at what they're doing? And so I think that's just really important. And it's not to compare one organization to another, because sometimes that's not possible. But you can compare whether an organization, and they said, we're going to take this funding, and we're going to do X, Y, and Z. Did they actually do it? Because it could be that they didn't, and it'd be good to understand, well, then what did you do with this money? And why should we give you more?
Yeah.
So that's kind of where I'm coming at, that question. And then I'll, I just have one more comment before we open up to the public. I do have some concerns with the fact that board members don't have access to applications after the scoring has happened. I feel as if, you know, having participated with community programs previously, and those applications were public, we got to read the applications, we got to understand why the staff were making their recommendations. It was really helpful when we had to, you know, cut funding for one program and not fund a certain program. And I know in the last process, there was a point where it was said at a meeting that one of the, you know, there were certain programs that they didn't have good applications, and that was part of the reason why they didn't receive funding. And at the time, when I was on the city council, I asked, well, can I see the applications? And I was told no. So the problem that comes up there is that even though this process has tried to shield, I guess, people from having access to those applications, we still get organizations in the community who come and lobby us if they, if it looks like their funding is in jeopardy. And when I can't see the application of an organization and the other organizations that are applying for those same funds, I can't see the scoring, and I can't say to them, hey, here's maybe why you didn't get the funding this time. Then it puts me in a position where I'm making an uninformed decision. And I think that as the final decision-making body, at least being able to have access to the scores, to the applications, when the, when the process has kind of gone through, and we're then at a point where we have to make a final decision, it's just helpful for us to know why a certain score was given. And, you know, if we have to change course, then maybe deviate from what the scoring folks recommended, which happened last time, then we at least have information as to why that's happening. Or if we have an organization, we're not going to fund moving forward that we historically funded in the past, it helps us understand why as well. So I'll leave my comments there. And at this time, we'll open up to the community to see if there's any members of the public who would like to speak to us on item number 16, which is Consider Presentation on the Collective Results and Evidence-Based Investment Program, Request for Proposal Development and Prioritization for the Next Core Funding Cycle Fiscal Year 2025-28, and Take Related Actions. Go ahead, you'll have to...
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Maria Cadenas. I'm the Executive Director of Ventures. And we have, and personally had the privilege of being at the Core steering committee from its inception. And we have, and personally had the privilege of being at the Core steering committee from its inception through. And I have seen firsthand the diligence and effort made to create an equitable innovating partnership to update and create both transparency and changing our community through this process. Change is never easy and yet to achieve it, new results, we must be brave enough to try. This past Core cycle was the first time Ventures received funding through the process. And it was the first time Ventures would have been able to qualify for county funding. Your funding made it possible to fund a nationally recognized leading model to promote health, education and belonging in our county through Semillitas. Creating college savings accounts for every single newborn in the county. We leveraged your investment through national, local and state partnerships, which we didn't know we would be able to leverage. We are now serving over 7,000 families with only two and a half staff. In addition, your funding secured a for ALAS program that providing a stable funding for families, which came unexpectedly very valuable during the Paharo floods. Where the families and participating were able to have emergency funding at credit built out so they can travel and navigate that emergency much, much better. We leveraged that funding and secured 3.4 million dollars in college, a four-year job force funding that will provide a million dollars for a coaching and financial capability for the region. None of this would have been possible without you risking a change in how the funding was being secured and awarded. Again, these are new programs, so just challenging what could be done here in Santa Cruz County. I ask you to consider adopting the recommendations of the staff, but also as you look at your carve-outs, to not forget about economic security in changing times in this county. So we don't lose the ground game. Thank you.
Good afternoon supervisors. My name is Cristal Gonzalez and I serve as the Semitas Director at Ventures. I wanted to express my gratitude for our ongoing partnership as one of the Core-funded partners. Your support has been integral to the success of Semitas program. With the Core funds provided, we have been able to initiate a transformative effort. Opening college savings account for all babies born to Santa Cruz County families with an initial deposit of $50. As of now, over 7,400 babies from Santa Cruz County families have a Semitas College Savings Account. And we have invested over $800,000 towards these accounts. This has been possible only with 2.5 FTE. The impact of Semitas is extensive. Through surveys conducted with Semitas families, we have observed a significant increase in college expectations and aspirations each year. Notably, approximately 70% of Semitas parents, many of whom do not hold a college education themselves, anticipate their children attaining at least a master's degree. Semitas serves families across Santa Cruz County with approximately 50% residing in Watsonville and 30% in Santa Cruz. Most of these families are eligible for Medi-Cal through collaborative efforts with our partners and thanks to funding through Core. These families can have up to $500 in their child's account by the time they're five. We have successfully leveraged Core funds to garner additional support from partners. Contributions are made to these accounts upon completion of milestones such as annual dental visits, immunizations, wellness checks, financial literacy workshops and positive parenting classes. Additionally, our collaboration with the state's college savings account program, CalKids, further amplifies our outreach efforts. Again, I just wanted to extend my gratitude for your continued partnership and support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors and Community Members. My name is Adriana and I serve as the Director of Familias Con Mas and ALAS Adventures. Today I'm honored to share some of the impact achievements of Ventures through our ALAS program made possible by Core. Thanks to this support, our ALAS program has been instrumental in serving 60 and duplicate families, primary those with household income below $65,000. From Watsonville, Freedom, Santa Cruz, SoCal, Davenport and Capitola. We address the needs of unbanked rural low wage earner communities of color. Ensuring equitable access to essential resources and opportunities through monthly workshops, 375 one-on-one financial coaching sessions and stipends, emphasizing that intergenerational impact all families serve had children under 18. Leveraging funding, we collaborated with Monarch to serve an additional 50 women survivors of violence. Our partnership with the UC Santa Cruz Fund Center has further enhanced our efforts leading to research on the impact of the families. We are eager and anticipate sharing the findings with you in early 2025. We are proud to announce that we will commence two new cohorts, totally 30 participants in July of this year. Many of our participants have started an emergency savings account for them and their families. A testament of the program's effectiveness and we urge you to continue to support economic stability. Our one remarkable example of our impact is Juana, a mother of two who finally was able to go see a doctor, an eye doctor, and prepare for the hours reduced during the storms of 2023. Her journey from uncertainty to empower serves as a beacon of hope and inspiration to all of us. Please continue to support economic stability as, as this is a major need in our families. Thank you for your attention and dedication to creating a brighter future for all residents of Santa Cruz County.
Good afternoon Chair and Supervisors. I'm Helen Newen Story. I'm the Assistant Director of the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County. CABUSMAN, the county's designated anti-poverty community action agency for almost 60 years. Serving over 12,000 diverse low-income individuals a year through a range of services, including youth and adult employment and mentoring services, homelessness prevention and intervention services, immigration legal services and advocacy, the Davenport Resource Service Center, and special projects including emergency preparedness, response and recovery services, along with multilingual public health outreach services and we're a current or grantee for many of these services. In reviewing the three proposed Core options that staff has identified, CABU urges your support for option number one. Given the persistent housing crisis countywide and escalating homelessness in South County, we understand the critical need for shelter countywide and prevention-focused efforts, particularly in hard-hit South County. This need has been highlighted, as we talked about a little bit earlier, in the recent point in Time Count, as well as the Urban Institute study that cited in the staff report. CABU conducts biennial community action plans, which are community-engaged assessments of needs and assets for communities to help address poverty. In our 2024-25 CAP plan, 50% of low-income participants made less than $20,000 a year and 20% made less than $5,000 a year. The top needs identified included housing insecurity as well as employment and food insecurity, physical and mental health needs. So while we understand that option one represents a shift in the funding framework, we support this prioritization and shift due to the absolute need in the community as well as the 15% shift. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before you speak, is there any other member of the public who's here with us present in chambers who'd like to speak to us on this item? If so, please line up. And once we're through, our last person will move on to the online participants. So go ahead.
Good afternoon supervisors. My name is Ray Cancino, CEO of Community Bridges. At the beginning of this process, the whole goal of this was to be upstream and competitive. So today's recommendations, I want to commend the staff for listening to some of the feedback that was provided at the last round by including a scoring rubric in advance for all aspects of the application process. And we also hope to guide them and to ensure that their ongoing needs to be more objective in the scoring amongst the subcommittees. Because even if you have this rubrics, the reality is that when separate people are grading, my 70% might be your 85. And there's still an opportune and a realistic situation in which some applications might be scored negatively versus others collectively. In addition to that, I think that there's a couple of other ethos that are counterintuitive to these primary focus areas. Number one is limiting how much someone could apply for, depending on size or the, depending on the total amount, is counterintuitive to being competitive. So an organization simply marked out and not able to apply just because of their size, that has a lot of advantages, including economies of scale, ability to report out on these outcomes, and ability to basically provide the highest and best use, which is against best public policy. I think in additional to that, we have to be responsible of, of understanding and support the staff's recommendations concerning, obviously, shelter and the need for that. But as Maslow's hierarchy and need, you first have to feed people before you can shelter them as part of the prioritization. And in doing so, I want to make sure that we're not, uh, losing the 40,000 plus senior meals that we're providing across community. Not even including the additional senior meals that Grey Bears, as well as other providers like Second Harvest would also be ultimately potentially competing for. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky Steinbrenner. I share your concern supervisor Cummings that these, these applications are not available to the board members, especially when they ask for them. And I support you in your, your concern that you need to be informed decision-makers. So thank you for pressing on that. And I agree with you on that. I have a lot of concern about this panel of experts and even though they, they may have a signed in a no conflict of interest, those things always happen. And so I think making this a more transparent process is going to be better. And making them available, the applications available to board members upon their request is important. Secondly, I'm compelled to just make all of these people know that the Lions Club International is a terrific resource for anything vision-related. It is worldwide. Lions Clubs are everywhere. There are four in this county. And we will provide free eye testing, free glasses, free guide dogs, free eye surgeries. It is there for the asking and you only have to go online and find the most local Lions Club and we will help you. Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll be our last in-person speaker in this afternoon.
Welcome. Thank you so much. I wasn't planning on speaking here, but it's very timely because I wasn't able to be here over a year ago when our Core Grant was stripped from our organization. I'm from the Harm Reduction Coalition of Santa Cruz County. I'm here to inform you that we're bruised, we're wounded, but we're still standing. We had a fantastic vaccine equity clinic in Watsonville on Monday with over 35 COVID vaccines were distributed. Thanks to partnerships with MOUD that we've signed with HBHP. And I'm also here to remind Supervisors McPherson, Supervisor Friend, who have been on the board since 2013, that we are not a duplicative service. We are a service that your county program in 2013, the Service Services Program, fully intended to partner with a nonprofit to do mobile outreach countywide. They were operating with street outreach support. The street outreach supporters folded due to the death of Emily Auger. We simply replaced what was already supposed to be in line with the county program. So we will look forward to moving forward in the future. We will be reapplying for a Core Grant when the grant, RFPs are out. Expect to see us, expect to hear from us. We have a lot of support and we are thrilled to still be standing.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll turn it to the clerk, see if there's any online commenters on this item.
Yes, Chair, we have speakers. Beth, your microphone's now available.
Thank you. I thank you Board of Supervisors and also thank you to staff for being so careful to attempt to create a very fair process that utilizes county funds in a wise way when there's so many confounding factors. My name is Reverend Beth Love. I'm with Eat For The Earth. And we have been very grateful to be recipients of Core Funding in this current year, this current cycle. And the Core Funding that we have had has gone to a program called Salud En Tu Plato. When we offer it to Spanish speakers, which is most of the rounds, Community RX for English speakers. And we are experiencing much better outcomes than we had predicted in almost all of our measures. Including, it's a very short program. It's two-week program. We do biometric testing at the beginning and the end. We give people a lot of information and education and support to eat a whole food, plant-based, healthy diet for the two weeks of the program. And 95% of our people have improvements on at least one biomarker by the end of that short time. We have seen reductions of an average of 14% total cholesterol, 22% LDL cholesterol, and 60% of participants who come in with diabetes have normal glucose again at the end of two weeks. This is a really successful program. We are doing very well with it. We have, we have great faith that we can continue operating this and making it better and better over time. So I am very concerned that health is not one of the four quirks and core conditions that is being targeted this time around. Thank you very much for your consideration to somehow include health as a very important, basic need in our community and for considering continuing to fund successful, effective health and nutrition programs. Thank you.
Tanya, your microphone's now available.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time, members of the board. My name is Tanya Redino and I am a relatively new executive director at Senior Legal Services. I hope you each know that Senior Legal Services is not new. We've been around for almost 50 years, providing critical, free legal services in Santa Cruz County. We are fighting homelessness and nursing home abuse and isolation, keeping people free from physical and financial abuse. And I really want to ask for your continued support for our organization. I agree that South County is an underserved location and we have had an office in Watsonville the entire time we've existed. We currently have that fully staffed with the paralegal in Watsonville. We want to continue providing our services there and in Santa Cruz. I really want to mention that, of course, that the critical services that we provide would are often, would bear to the county themselves if we're not providing them ourself. If we're not able to maintain people in their homes, those costs of homelessness are definitely borne by the county. I know that most people are well aware that it's much cheaper to keep people housed in existing housing than putting the money out for rehousing and providing the homelessness services. I want to make sure that each of you are aware that our organization has been a part of a thriving eviction defense collaborative for the past two years. And that coming up in June, that funding is directly at risk. For the past two years, we have been offering a high-level skilled triage at any of Community Bridges' five family resource centers across the nation. And after that triage, people are sent either to Tenant Sanctuary or to Comfit Resolution Center or to our office for legal representation. And we really want to see that existing as a general fund so that that can be, come out of the general fund. And it's a consistent source of income to continue fighting homelessness through eviction defense. So thank you for hearing that.
Clay, your microphone's now available.
Thanks, Clay Kemp, Executive Director of the Seniors Council. And I want to commend the board and staff for listening to some of the concerns that have been raised in the past year and trying to make adjustments to better serve the community, which of course is what this is all about. And I think it's important that we continue to talk about goals and results and maybe less about process. And hopefully that will continue to move in a positive direction in the coming year. A couple other suggestions besides what's on here. I think it's critically important that board members see the entire list of applications and the applicant amounts, not just the agencies that are being awarded, so that unintended consequences can potentially be avoided. Had that happened in the previous cycle, I don't think childcare would have been defunded countywide. I don't think nursing home protection would have been defunded, but those are the results that we've ended up with. And to that end, I think it is important to possibly even increase the amount of funds that are set aside for the board to make corrections as needed. These funds, it might not be a huge amount to each organization or in, in terms of the county overall budget for human services. But it's absolutely the lifeblood for some organizations. And to that end, I think we need to look at what those agencies bring to the community in addition to the funds provided to the county. So match needs to be heavily weighed. And then lastly, just a couple of points about the carve-outs, why that happened previously. And one of the places we can continue to partner on is looking at where there's potential duplication of services. And it's for that reason that senior meals were carved out in our last cycle because we didn't want to have two programs existing. We didn't want one program funded by the AAA, which is my organization, and another by the county. That wouldn't serve anyone. So let's continue to partner where we may.
DeAndre, your. DeAndre, your microphone is now available.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you. Uh, DeAndre James, the Executive Director of the Community Health Trust of Paharo Valley. And as an organization who has not received core funding nor have applied for core funding, uh, but we have been heavily invested in the equity statement and we're part of that process. And so, uh, I, I think this is a step towards continuing to, uh, lean into that equity state. And the more we lean into the equity statement and the more we lean into the transparency, I think the better we get. My hope is that we get to the point where we're talking about, um, as Cummings mentioned, the results that we're getting for the investment that we're putting in and we're talking about, um, how we drive those different ways. But I also want to caution that I think this money should be focused on those core. But also we need to think about what are we doing on the other because core mean all of those are of value. And so, not that we're putting those by the wayside, but we need to talk about, hey, we might not use this funding for these ones, but here's what we're going to do in that because impact is impact. And so, we need to continue to leave into those equity statements, continue to talk about impact and be more transparent in how we're going about that. I think that'll vote us all as a county. So, thanks for hearing me out. And, uh, I, I agree with where we're going and I think it's the right steps. Thanks.
Serge, your microphone is now available.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Serge Tagno stepping up Santa Cruz. Um, I, uh, want to follow up on some, on the question from Chair Cummings about, uh, the history and the output of applicants. I, I'm confused by, by the, as I, as I'm looking at this process, there is trying to have a very good structure and a good rubric and good scoring and conflict of interest and being really careful about pretty much an application process that's about making promises. But without having any piece of what the history and how people have come through on past promises, um, I think we're missing something on making sure that we're providing for the best programs that we can. Um, and I, I also think that this is, I, and I completely understand the staff perspective that Nicole was talking about. It's really hard to score things against other different contracts. But when our contracts don't have some sort of grading system, whether somebody actually, what they did um, in relation to what their promises were, not just what their outputs were, because there's always good outputs, but actually compared to every one of the promises and expectations from the contract. If we're not looking at that systemically, uh, I'm not sure how we're choosing the best programs moving forward. So, my, my suggestion would be in some way, we figure out some way to move forward with that. Thanks for your time.
Tony, your microphone is now available.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Tony Nunez. I'm the Marketing Communications Manager for Community Bridges. And I just want to echo what a lot of, uh, folks have said here today. Um, that at the core of the core process was to strengthen the social safety net and the service providers, which continue to do that. And ultimately, uh, strengthening families and children and seniors within our community. And I feel that this process has continued to miss that, um, ultimate goal and has been more focused on, uh, nonprofits and has been more focused on the service providers instead of the impact of which there has been and within the communities, especially in disadvantaged communities in Watsonville, Live Oak, in, um, in the Beach Flats, um, and in the San Lorenzo Valley, where there are a few, um, resources for folks, to be able to sign up to some of the services that run through the County of Santa Cruz and to the state of California. Um, we still don't know the impact that the reduction of services for some nonprofits or that the allocations of funds had on our community from the last round. And I think that, um, in order for this board to continue to make, um, progress within this core funding allocations and continue to make progress in, um, eliminating poverty, we need to know how exactly, um, the members of our community that were receiving services, uh, before, uh, the last, um, round of allocations have been impacted and how, um, you know, where, where those gaps are continuing to pop up within our community. And so, I really implore the County of Santa Cruz staff to have that data, uh, ready, um, before making, uh, before coming forward with the, uh, to the Board of Supervisors for a final decision on this round of funding, founding, uh, funding allocation. It's, uh, would be detrimental to be able to make a decision or rush a decision on such a big, uh, decision without that data. Thank you.
Nora, your microphone is now available.
Hi, my name is Nora and the first thing that comes to my mind is why is the core budget only six million dollars? Please help us understand why it is such a small fraction of the entire budget and what can you do to increase the budget? Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to see if staff has any comments on what was brought up during, um, public comment, and then I'll bring it back to the board for action deliberation.
Um, you read my mind. I didn't know if it was my role to, there's one thing I wanted to make comment on. Um, because we, HSD, said this last time when we were in front of you in December and we specifically recognized to the caller that we are not recommending, um, the health core condition to be funded. Um, I want to make two comments. One is that was in large part in consultation with the health agency that they have had a large number of health grants that they are putting out. So, there's a lot of services coming through health in that space. But second, and this is to the caller and for your board to be aware, we have intentionally, um, communicated and collaborated with the health agency and we, pending your board and city council approval today, do plan to broadly message to the health safety net that you can apply for these core conditions of well-being. For example, under healthy families, healthy, there is many avenues for health providers to apply for funds in this structure, even though the specific condition of health camp, um, outcomes is not an identified one. So, just want to make sure what we said that last time and I'll repeat that this time, given the caller from the community is concerned that health providers can't apply and we'll make sure they're aware.
And then I thought it might be worth just noting that, um, the last caller said that it would be good to know what was the impact of organizations who weren't funded last round. And, uh, what we shared at the time that we completed the last RFP and did those awards was that for many organizations, core funding is just a portion of funding. And so, um, one of, and so at that time, it was hard to describe how a certain small percentage of a budget would have, um, would have impacts beyond just that piece of funding. Um, but one of the things that is available on our website currently and that we've continued to ask in this next RFP is specifically what are the outcomes and what are the impacts from the core funding? And so, that is, that is available, um, for all of the existing programs that are funded and we'll continue to ask for that information.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, Supervisor Hernandez.
You know, first I want to thank you guys, both, uh, Kimberly Peterson and Randy Morris for the presentation. Um, I was favorable of, of this, uh, of this recommendation. And after your level of detail, I think that I'm even more in favor of, of this staff recommendation. The only caveat is, uh, well, first of all, I would like to make the motion to accept items one through four with pushing number one as the staff recommendation. Um, but just to make sure that we do get that additional information, the board gets that additional information. I'd like to add that we're able to get the, um, access to the proposals, the scoring rubric and the scoring after it's all, after it's done, before our final meeting, uh, somewhere in between that process. Uh, because we're the ones that are the face and we're the ones that get approached and, you know, lobbied. So, if we could do that somewhere between that step three and four before it's awarded, um, I'd like to add that to it.
I just want to clarify if I could, Supervisor Hernandez. Um, in terms of making the, uh, applications and the scoring and all that available after the process, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. Do you mean after the board has already made the award? Uh, and the process is concluded? It's clearly a public record at that point. There's once the board has made the decision. Or do you mean before the mayor board has made his decision?
Well, I guess awarded is after we vote for it, right?
So, that would be. After the board has made its decision, then it would be public. Yeah, it's clearly a public record at that point.
Okay. It's easily accessible to us, all three.
Supervisor Hernandez, point of clarification, then, um, you said one to four, but there's five recommended actions to just.
Yeah, one to five, sorry. I didn't put my glasses on when I said.
That's okay. Then I'll second the recommended actions. And, and also just say that, um, as somebody who's been through this process for twelve years along with my colleagues, Supervisor McPherson, it was nice to, to see that there was, uh, uh, such positive feedback from the community-based organizations about the modifications that are made during process and, and, um, and something I had said a few months ago when I had this process. I think that longer term, this board moving forwards, they're going to have to make a decision about whether we want to be dedicating, you know, seven million dollars in staff time to six million dollars of allocations. I mean, ultimately, if the point is collective impact, I think we need to have the most simple, direct process for funding community programs and not have, uh, hours and hours and hours of time, staff time and community time spent on debating process. Um, so I think that it was good to move from community programs to this because then there was a level of transparency and it wasn't just an assumed funding model. But now we're in a world where, um, there's a lot of time and a lot of energy spent on things that are, that are clearly valuable. But I think that similar to, here we are trying to get away from the state process where they just put a bunch of mandates and reporting and time on us. Uh, and we're really coming down a slippery slope of doing that to ourselves. So, the degree that, that I think this board, future board should consider, uh, the future of core in a way that just is much more about direct service delivery and much less about, um, these kinds of conversations. But I'm seconding the recommended actions. Thank you.
Any other comments from board members at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll just make a couple of final comments. I just want to appreciate the work that staff has done and the engagement with the community. Um, the fact that we're seeing, you know, new organizations receive funding, um, but having gone through this, having gone through the community programs model and now coming back to, to this RFP model and given the, um, my experience with being approached by community groups who are losing their funding and then them asking me for, for us to maintain their funding and why their funding is getting cut and not having access to scores and applications during a time prior to which I'm supposed to make a decision on this funding. I just don't feel comfortable moving forward at this point in time with supporting the recommended action. Um, as it's been mentioned, this is a much different process in terms of an RFP process. Um, maybe if there were friendly recommendations or a friendly amendment would be, um, acceptable to have this be considered an informal RFP process, which provides much more flexibility, rounder ability to have those applications. I'd feel much more comfortable with that. But the fact that, you know, we're supposed, this is supposed to be an evidence-based approach. And as someone who makes the final decision, not being able to have information I need to be able to make an informed decision, I think is kind of counterintuitive to what we're proposing here today. So, I don't know if, uh, friendly amendment would be acceptable to have this be considered an RFP process and allow for board members to have access to the application and the scores prior to the final decision. That would be something that's amenable, but I'll, I'll put that on the floor just in case that's something that might be acceptable.
And I appreciate that. It strikes me that that's a, a pretty large change for a friendly amendment. And if I may, um, considering the process we've been through to create this process and then the feedback on the process to just modify it, um, uh, like that. So, I would, I mean, I'm not the maker of the motion, but at least the secondor, I wouldn't consider that a friendly amendment. But I think my, what I was saying, I was giving you space as the board moves forward to consider whether this is the process we should be allocating this money at, at all, is I think a valid time to revisit for a future board as to, uh, the best way to allocate, uh, this one percent of, of money, but is, you know, ninety-nine percent of staff time considerations.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I think, um, we've had enough conversation on this item. And again, we'll continue to see how this process, um, plays out and we'll continue to see how we can refine the process and make it better over time. But with that, uh, given that we have another very large item before us, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Supervisor Koenig.
Hi.
Friend.
Hi.
Hernandez.
Yes.
McPherson.
Hi.
And Cummings.
No. So, that's passes with Supervisor McPherson, Hernandez, Friend and Koenig voting in favor and Supervisor Cummings voting against. Okay, well, at this point in time, we're going to move on to the last item on our agenda, um, which is going to be. And before we get to that item, I actually would like to turn it over to Supervisor Friend.
Yeah, just like to, um, I need to announce that I need to recuse myself from this item. The FPPC has issued, um, an opinion that I have a direct financial conflict because my home is within a few hundred feet of the rail line and it requires recusal from this item. So, um, I'll be stepping out for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last item on our agenda, this is item number seventeen. Uh, the recommendation is withdraw Resolution seven eight dash two oh two four, hold public hearing to adopt sequel findings and statements of overriding consideration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve the project permits and the agreement with Caltrans for the coastal rail trail segments ten and eleven project and the ultimate trail configuration and take related actions. And with that, I will turn it over to Robert Tidmore, Park Planner Four, Matt Machado, Director of CDI, Deputy CAO, and Rebecca Hurley, Deputy Director of POSCS.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Chair Cummings, Members of the Board. Uh, also joined here today by Kate Elliott, Director of Environmental Planning Compliance, uh, from Harrison Associates, uh, who led the environmental consulting for the project. She's joining us here via Zoom, is available to answer questions. And then Grace Blakesley, Senior Transportation Planner at the RTC, is here to represent the RTC and answer questions. Uh, here's the outline for today's presentation. First, I'll provide a recap of the actions taken by the board on March twenty-sixth. I'll discuss withdrawal of a conflicting resolution approved by the board on March twenty-sixth. Then I'll provide additional information in response to the board's direction. I'll then summarize the April eighteenth RTC meeting, review information about the grant extension process and discuss permitting. Then I'll conclude with a review of the project benefits and the recommended actions. Now for a summary of the March twenty-sixth board meeting. The board conducted a public hearing and as part of that hearing certified the EIR and adopted findings, a statement of overriding considerations and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The board did not approve the remainder of the recommended actions, which included project approval, permit approval, approval of the baseline agreement with Caltrans and a direction to staff to seek funding from the RTC. The board also provided additional direction to staff, which I will address in future slides. Now for the withdrawal of the conflicting resolution. The resolution approved at the March twenty-sixth meeting to adopt findings, a statement of overriding considerations and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program contained a language stating that the board approved the project in the ultimate trail configuration shown below in yellow highlight on the screen. This conflicts with the actions taken by the board on that day to not approve the project. Therefore, to resolve any potential ambiguity in the record, staff recommends that the board withdraw approval of Resolution number seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-four. Staff also recommends that the board take action on the withdrawal of this resolution via motion prior to opening of the public hearing and taking action on the additional recommended actions in this agenda item, including approving a replacement resolution adopting the findings. This will provide the clearest administrative record of the project approvals.
I guess I'll bring it back to the board. So, and are we going to open it up for public comment and then bring it back and have the rest of the items be heard or we just?
You need to do this first, right?
Yes.
Sorry, you could do it other way. You could hear the entire staff presentation, then take public comment, then bring it back to the board and make that your first item of business.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, or you could just go ahead and, and do that right now.
Yeah, I think my preference would be to have the whole presentation opened up for, the boards have questions, comments, open up to members of the public and then we can separate the motions and we can take action on this first motion when it comes back and then the rest of the items afterwards. So, that way we have one public comment period and we don't have to open it up twice.
Great. Thank you. Okay, to replace the withdrawn resolution, the recommended actions are as follows. Conduct a public hearing as part of this agenda item for the adoption of findings, statement of overriding consideration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the coastal rail trail segments ten, eleven project. And then to adopt a resolution, adopting the findings, statement of overriding consideration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the ultimate trail configuration and optional interim trail for the coastal rail trail segments ten, eleven project. Now, moving on to, uh, responses to the board's direction on March twenty-sixth. So, the board provided the following additional direction to staff on March twenty-sixth. I'll address these one at a time in the following slides. The first was to investigate options to reduce the trail size at Escalona Gulch to preserve more trees and reduce severe environmental impacts. Provide resolution to the ongoing discussions with Roaring Camp regarding various. Provide resolution to the ongoing discussions with Roaring Camp regarding various options to reduce costs. Provide resolution to working with the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission or RTC on value engineering the design to reduce costs and request that the RTC provide a written analysis regarding the impacts to the $68 million Measure D Actual Transportation Program Fund associated with funding requests from both the county and the city of Santa Cruz to finish the North County segments of the trail. So regarding the reducing impacts at Escalona Gulch, the the project team explored reducing the width of the ultimate trail from 12 feet to 10 feet through this area. This did not reduce tree removals due to the steep slope in the area and the fact that the removed trees are all in close proximity to the proposed improvements. The project team also analyzed reducing the width of the interim trail from 16 feet to 12 feet. This resulted in three fewer tree removals in this area. But critically, neither trail width reduction decreased impacts to monarch habitat to less than significant and unavoidable. And then moving on to cost reductions with Roaring Camp. Since March 26, following the direction from the board, RTC and county staff have had ongoing discussions with Roaring Camp to reduce project costs. At our most recent meeting last Thursday, we reached agreement on the following three points. The first is that Roaring Camp agreed to do the work necessary to regrade the corridor and realign the existing tracks to make room for the ultimate trail in segment 10. Second is Roaring Camp's ability to reconstruct a drainage crossing just west of 38th Avenue is still being explored. And the third is we are working through the details of the track and signal relocation at the roadway crossings to determine how much of that work Roaring Camp would be able to do. RTC and Roaring Camp expect to have an MOU ready for the June 6 RTC meeting, which will outline these terms and state that Roaring Camp will cover the costs of this work. As I noted on March 26, we expect this agreement to reduce project costs by about $7 to $9 million. Now regarding the cost reduction with the RTC. In response to the board's additional direction, the RTC will be leading a cost reduction exercise known as a value analysis beginning on May 6. This exercise will involve all of the rail trail projects currently under development, segments eight and nine, segments 10, 11, segment 12, as well as the zero emission passenger rail and trail project that the RTC is leading. This will include the city of Santa Cruz, county and RTC staff and design consultants, and the exercise will be led by a third-party engineer and cost estimator hired by the RTC. The cost savings are unknown at this point, but the goal is to look at the corridor holistically to reduce overall costs. And the final board direction was for the RTC to provide analysis of this project's impacts on the Measure D funding. RTC staff presented this information during the April 18 special meeting, and their analysis showed that fully funding segments eight, nine and 10, 11 would leave about $15 million remaining and that there is insufficient Measure D funding to cover all expected costs. Similar to the staff recommendation on March 26, the RTC recommended pursuing additional funding sources and cost reduction strategies, some of which I just highlighted. Now for a summary of the April 18 RTC meeting. At the meeting, the commissioners voted 8-2 to approve all staff recommendations. I've highlighted the ones most critical for the board's consideration on the screen, and they are that the commissioners voted to affirm affirm support for the ultimate trail configuration. Commissioners directed staff to negotiate an agreement with Roaring Camp for track relocation, the details of which I described previously. And the commissioners voted to commit to fully funding the project with a mix of federal, state and local funding. The commissioners also directed staff to identify the steps necessary to transfer the ATP grant to the RTC should that become desirable and beneficial. And I'd just like to note that all of those recommended actions county staff recommend against this transfer is it would it would reflect negatively on our county's ability to deliver projects and follow through on grant commitments. Now for information on the grant approval process. As stated on March 26, this project requires a baseline agreement with Caltrans to accept funding. The baseline agreement secures the $67.6 million ATP grant and states the county is responsible to secure additional funding. It is this last piece, which understandably concerns several members of the board at the last meeting, and the board directed staff to provide more concrete information on steps that would be taken to reduce costs, which, as I presented previously, we have made important progress on. Staff expects to be able to reduce costs by $7 to $9 million. Further, the RTC voted to commit to fully funding the project on April 18, reducing risk for the county's budget. County and RTC staff understands the board's desire to reduce costs and secure additional funding for this project, and we intend to do so. RTC staff are submitting an earmark request to Congressman Jimmy Panetta for the project today, using information from the county's ATP grant application. So the grant schedule for this project requires that we go to the CTC on June 27 for an allocation request. However, due to delays, we'll need to request an extension. Since the publishing of the staff report, I was able to discuss our extension requests with CTC staff and ask whether it aligns with their interpretation of the ATP grant guidelines, which state that there must be an unforeseen and extraordinary circumstance beyond the control of the responsible agency. The response I received is different from the information provided in my staff report. In general, CTC staff conveyed that there is solid support for this project at the CTC and they do not want to see it fail. Therefore, CTC staff stated that they would expect to recommend approval of the extension request due to the strong local support for the project. However, the extension request would still be up to the discretion of the CTC commissioners to approve. Overall, this is great news because it means our extension request on June 27 is likely to be approved. Project permitting was discussed in detail on March 26, so I'll cover it quickly now. Order approval is requested on two permits today. The first is a riparian exception permit, the findings for which are included as attachment four in the staff report. The second is a biotic approval and adopting the CEQA findings effect are required for approval of this permit. Now I'd like to take just a few minutes to highlight some of the project benefits. Many of these slides and graphics were taken directly from the successful grant application that county staff put together. As many of you know, transportation is 70% of our county's greenhouse gas emissions with 51.2% of total emissions coming from personal vehicles. To change that, it's necessary for us to build the infrastructure for people to get out of their cars and walk or bike. This project is critical to meeting a goal outlined in the CAP, and that is the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, which is to have 15% of trips made by walking, biking or public transportation. This project in particular is so important because it will directly impact a lot of people. 26,000 people live within a 10-minute walk of the project and 46,000, almost a fifth of the population, lives within a mile. This is a densely populated part of the county with many amenities in close proximity to residences. The project alignment shown in purple and black on the graphic on the screen directly connects to and benefits low-income areas of the community, which are shown here in red with their median household incomes in white. The project also directly connects to existing and proposed affordable housing. It improves access to 10 schools, one college, 18 parks, five commercial corridors, and connects to four libraries, two community centers and four senior centers. The project will address sidewalk gaps on parallel routes, including the 1.4-mile gap on McGregor Avenue, where there are no sidewalks and no safe routes for pedestrians between Sea Cliff and Aptos and New Brighton State Beach in Capitola. Finally, this project is truly transformational, and I think this graphic of a regional, connected, safe bike network in mid-county demonstrates how this project will achieve a significant mode shift from vehicle trips to walking and biking. The SoCal buffered bike lanes project that CDI is developing, shown in yellow at the top of the graphic, will create a northern protected bike route and two new bicycle and pedestrian over crossings of Highway 1, one at Shantek Clear and the other at Mar Vista, are under development and will connect to the segments 10, 11 project, forming a loop of critical walking and biking infrastructure in the heart of this densely populated area. Now for a summary of the recommended actions today. Covered the first three already. The fourth one is to approve the coastal rail trail segments 10, 11 project in the ultimate trail configuration with the inclusion of design option B as an optional alignment pending direction from the California Coastal Commission. Number five is to approve a riparian exception and issue a biotic approval for the coastal rail trail segments 10, 11 project in the ultimate trail configuration, including design option B based on the attached CEQA findings, statement of overriding considerations and riparian exception conditions. Number six, to approve the baseline agreement between the county of Santa Cruz and California Department of Transportation for coastal rail trail segments 10, 11 project in the ultimate trail configuration. And finally, to authorize the Deputy CAO, Director of Community Development and Infrastructure, to execute the baseline agreement with Caltrans on behalf of the county. This concludes staff presentation and staff consultants are available to provide additional information and answer questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation and I'll open it up to the board to see if there's any questions at this time before we open it up to the public. Supervisor McPherson.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation, the update, and thank you to our staff across multiple departments that we've seen and the Regional Transportation Commission for working together on this item, especially during the last few weeks where we sought to have some questions answered regarding the financial outlook for this and future projects. First of all, I think it should be pointed out clearly that the RTC interim director, who was previously the executive director of the CTC, affirmed that we would not put the $68 million active transportation grant from the CTC in danger while we reviewed some of the mixed messages that we were receiving on financing the rail trail agreements. I appreciate the answers we received after postponing some of the items on March 26, and I feel more comfortable now with the facts at hand as presented here, also at the RTC meeting of April 18. Some concerns do remain unanswered though, such as financing for the rail trail in South County, and which in turn has raised some equity equity concerns that we have, will need to be addressed in the future. We'll need between $400 and $500 million to build out the South County rail trail systems from 13 to 20. And to qualify for such federal and state grants, we're going to need to provide a 10 to 20% of matching grants of the local match. That means we need to reserve between $40 and $100 million to in local funds to match the outside grants for a continuous rail trail that serves all of the county, not just from segments eight through 12, but through that benefit the North County and Mid County, but also to get to the South County. People have said that the November 2016 Measure D would not have passed without a two with that two-thirds approval if every category in the transportation network had not been addressed. And as a member of that county campaign committee in 2016, I agree. But I think we should remember that the highest percentage of measures that were in that started in order, local roads, Highway 1 improvements, increasing bus metro offerings, Barracuse, Barracuse operations and rail. The same was true of the 2016 library bond that passed earlier that year. We addressed issues that affected all segments of Santa Cruz County. But as a member of both of those community, I, here's a caveat. I strongly recommend that we do not take from one voter-approved segment of the 2016 Measure D project category and give more to another without a subsequent countywide vote. With that said, Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion to approve the staff recommended actions that are before us on this item today at the appropriate time.
Supervisor Hernandez.
Just a matter of process, can I get clarification if we're going to do one before the other or both at the same time?
We're gonna, we're gonna separate the two motions. The first motion is going to be withdraw the the first resolution and then we'll come back and make the other recommendations. Any further questions? Okay, Supervisor Koenig.
Chair, I just a couple of questions here. First is, I understand we're submitting because of the tight timing, we'll submit the appropriation or allocation request at the same time that we submit an extension request and see, which ultimately needs to be withdrawn at the June CTC meeting. How long is the extension request that we're submitting to the CTC?
So the answer to your first question is yes, that's correct. We've, well, they were due yesterday to Caltrans. So we submitted both an extension request and an allocation request, and we'll be pulling whichever one doesn't ultimately make it onto the agenda. So with the timely use of funds guidelines in the in the ATP program, you're only allowed to request a single allocation extension. So we're going to request the full amount of the extension, which is 20 months, which I don't think we have any danger of coming into, but there's no reason not to request the full amount, given that we can only request a single extension.
Got it. So then my next question is when, when would we submit the next allocation request?
As soon as we have all of our ducks in a row. So as I mentioned last time, we need to finish CEQA approval, which hopefully will happen today. We need to finish NEPA and then we need to have the appropriate timelines through getting the baseline agreement approved with Caltrans that take about three months.
Got it. Okay, and then we learned at our last regular RTC meeting at the beginning of this month that the Capitola trestle will need to, basically cannot be renovated to support a train, will need to be knocked down ultimately for a new structure that can support both train and trail. If at some point in the interim, you know, we realize, you know, let's just say 2028, the vote for sales tax in order to fund passenger train fails, which certainly could happen when Measure D in 2016 were supported, many multi, you know, multimodal expenditure plan barely passed by one percentage point. So let's just say that happened and at some point we said, you know what, this trestle is just sitting here. We're never going to use it for a train. We want to convert it in the meantime for an interim trail. What would be the process of converting the Capitola trestle for bike and pedestrian trail?
Um, well, the first process would be you'd have to railbank the corridor in order to remove the tracks on the trestle. And that would have to happen at the RTC.
Can I pause you there for a second? I've heard that there's the potential for like the rail operator to embargo the line and that we could potentially do it through that method.
I may look to RTC staff to help clarify that point because I'm not not spread on those particulars.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Grace Blakeslee, RTC staff. And we have looked into options for embargoing the line. We'd need to have that conversation with the Service Transportation Board. And largely, we think that the discussion will evolve around the length of time in which the embargo would take place.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Grace. So let's set that aside and assume that we have the authority to remove the tracks. Then the first thing that we need to happen, if there is federal money involved in the conversion of the trestle, we need to go through the National Environmental Policy Act clearance for the for the for the conversion of the trestle from a train bridge to a trail bridge. We already have CEQA clearance for that as we've done through this project. So if we're not using federal funding, where we have environmental clearance for that conversion, then I believe the cost estimates for that conversion, but there's there's two pieces. One, the trestle itself needs to be repaired because there's some some major structural deficiencies that would have to happen either way. I believe that that estimate is about $3.5 million and there'd be have to be another $3.5 million spent on the actual conversion of the structure.
Okay.
And then obviously the the design and engineering of that of that conversion.
Right.
Yep.
All right, thanks. I'll make a couple of comments, which might might save us a little bit of time. I mean, I've done what I can to inject some common sense into this discussion and to highlight the costs and sacrifices that will be necessary if we, when we pursue the ultimate trail. The question the Supervisor McPherson I posed at the March 26 meeting resulted in, I think, the clearest picture yet of what it will take to deliver a trail alongside the rail. You know, including notably at our last RTC meeting, that of the four scenarios RTC staff presented for the rest of the trail budget, none of the budget, none of them budgeted any money for South County segments and the two and two of them showed the trail project being $20 million to $50 million in the red just to get to Aptos. So I sure hope we win some additional grant money. There's one hell of a project undertake when our county is in such a perilous financial position and we can't contribute any county money ourselves to make sure that we have enough money to deliver it. Our staff report today said there is currently no county funding for this project. But at the end of the day, this is the Regional Transportation Commission's project. And with the vote, the last Regional Transportation Commission meeting to ensure that they will back up the county and provide all needed funds, I cannot and will not stand in the way.
Supervisor, Supervisor Hernandez, get some comments.
You know, I want to thank Commissioners Manu Koenig and Bruce McPherson for, you know, being being bold in making sure that we answer their questions that they had. I think it it paints a clearer picture of what we got before us. And like Supervisor Koenig said, we do have a big endeavor in front of us. And so I just wanted to thank them for that.
All right, I'll make a couple of brief comments and we'll open up. I just want to see first a show of hands for folks who would like to speak to us during public comment on this item that are here today. Okay, there's quite a few. And then I guess I'd like to ask the clerk to see how many people are online.
Sorry about that. Folks are raising their hand at this time. One moment, please. Give them a second.
We're hovering around 13 to 15.
Okay. So we're going to start with two minutes each for public comment for people who are in person. And then we'll see what the time is looking like at that point in time when we finish in person and go online. We might shift to one minute online so we can keep things moving because we've been here a pretty long time today. And so I just want to respect the fact that it's getting late and, and it sounds like we're, we have a pathway forward. So for the individual who's here first, I'd like to let you go ahead with your two minutes. And then while folks are kind of standing up and moving around, if you can kind of keep your voices down so we can hear everybody as they speak, be very much appreciated. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Chairman Cummings and members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Howie Schneider. I live in Aptos. I'm a former member of the Commission on Disabilities. And so I speak as a disabled person and also just a constituent. So I'm here in support, obviously, of the approval for the rail segments 10 and 11. And I ask you, please don't vote to stop this important progress in our county. You know, sections 10 and 11 will link the north and the south. So, you know, Supervisor McPherson, I think that having this link is really important to people in the South County to be able to get to jobs, to have affordable housing, medical care and recreation. You know, to think that there's going to be a missing piece of this whole trail, rail trail reminds me of the kind of stories we read about where communities build a bridge to nowhere, you know? That doesn't make any sense to me. It would be very ironic. I know some of you have acted in direct opposition to what county voters have voted in favor of. And, you know, Supervisor Conig, to paraphrase something you said when you were running for office, that you don't oppose the rail trail. And I think it's real, you know, you said if you did, you would have stopped it then. So I really hope that you don't stop it now. It's really essential. You know, I, you've asked county to come back with answers to your questions. I think they've answered it. And I think it's just really important that you take a stand now in favor of the rail trail. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Mike Rotkin, member of the Regional Transportation Commission and Transit Board and a local citizen. First of all, thank you both, Manu Conig and Bruce McPherson for your position. I'm happy that you've clarified that your vote back in March was not to kill this whole thing, but to ask hard questions. And I think that's a respectable position that I, I respect and we have a reason to do so. I'm not going to repeat all the arguments I made at that meeting. You've heard them from me. I think you know what my views are on this. I just wanted to point out one thing. At, at that meeting, a member of the public got up and said, you know, wow, the trees, there's going to be so many trees cut down. The report says it's almost 1,000, but boy, that doesn't talk about the little trees. It only talks about the big ones. And so I actually went back and carefully read the EIR. I'm not an expert in this area. I want to be really clear about that. But as I read the EIR, there's something like between 60 and 70 actual heritage native trees that are going to be lost, not thousands or a thousand or 900. I could be wrong because I say I'm not an expert here, but that's what the ER says to me. Because they, they didn't just look at the big trees and ignore that, you know, the four inch trees and the eight inch trees. So using the standard of the city of Santa Cruz, which I know a little bit about the Heritage Tree Ordinance, it's, it's still a lot of trees being lost. We need to replace them and it's a serious issue. I don't take it lightly that, that it's going to have consequences in a period of 10, 15, 20 years while the foliage is growing back in, the wildlife's coming back. It's going to be difficult. It's, we shouldn't like underestimate what that's going to be about. But if we're talking about 60 to 70 trees, not 900 trees, there's a difference there. And so looking at that part of the EIR is important. In the end, again, thank you for your support for this. I take you at your word and appreciate your vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Hi, my name is June Koa.
Cast up for one sec. I was going to ask it rather than clapping if people wanted to kind of jazz hands to let us know that it will help us continue to move along. Yeah. So.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for hearing all these people today. Everybody has a different opinion and we appreciate being heard. I just want to say that the majority of those who vote in Santa Cruz County have repeatedly approved the rail and trail. Yet there's a very small, very vocal group of obstructionists who continue to promote their own agenda through campaigns of misinformation and scare tactics like the second Measure D Greenway, which was again voted down. When will you stop gambling with the future of light rail and trail transit in Santa Cruz and fulfill the will of the people? I know it's a rhetorical question. I would love an answer, but it's just something to think about. Thank you very much.
John Danforth, I want to focus on a choice that I think is still before this board between the interim proposal and the ultimate proposal. Is that correct? That that's still a choice?
We can have that question followed up by staff after this.
Okay. I think it is. And I want to talk about why the ultimate choice is a bad choice. And I have a lot of respect for the people in this room who've been on this issue for a lot longer than I have. But here's why it's a bad choice. It promises, certainly threatens irreparable considerable harm that is not in the interim plan and that relies on the weakest part of the environmental impact report that this board has already approved. What is that weakest part? The weakest part is the part that says we can conflate the impacts of the two of the ultimate trail and add them to the impacts of the interim trail as though they're occurring right away. They're not occurring right away. They will only occur if we move from the interim to ultimate. We may not have to wipe out hundreds of trees. We may not have to evict 30 families across the park from me who live in, who live currently apparently in encroachments on the right of way. We may not ever have to do that. In any event, we don't have to do that for probably decades. Why suffer that pain now? I urge the board to think carefully about the interim plan. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Elizabeth. I'm a resident of Santa Cruz and I work in affordable housing development, car free by choice. So that means the metro is how I get around from place to place. And you know, our metro system is really great, especially with the changes that have come about with Reimagine Metro, but would really just implore you all. And from what I'm hearing, it seems like we are going to be moving forward with this. No longer put up roadblocks in the name of cost efficiencies or things of that sort. Cause like, as I said, I work in affordable housing development and you know, the longer you wait to move any projects forward, the more cost overruns you're going to see. That's basically a given on anything, whether it be housing, transportation. So really just implore you all to keep moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. So my name is Brenda Garcia. I am a local to Capitola and this is my first time meeting Big Dog Manu. I know you're like my only representative, I think. So nice to meet you. I'm here to represent Gen Z Latinos in Santa Cruz County and also disabled folks. I'm also car free by choice. And so I would really implore y'all to move forward and approve building this rail and working on more public transportation. And I also helped unionize my job and I led it to a strike threat. And I really resonate with the language around obstructionist because what I found is that people will weaponize consensus. A small group of people will weaponize consensus to not move forward. And so like y'all pursued these jobs because you want to create positive change, right? So I don't understand why you would try to obstruct or not move forward. Also don't weaponize equity, not prevent this rail from being built again, like we kind of see through the weaponization of equity and all of that. So yeah, we just implore y'all to be bold and move forward with approving this because clearly the voters have already told y'all that they want it. Lastly, I also wanted to share that for my community, if they say no, let's remember that we have the power. We can take actions. We can occupy buildings. If we want to build transportation, we can make a change here. We don't need a couple of people to say yes or no. And so again, if y'all want to get together and do something to build more affordable transportation, let me know because we're not going to get anything by voting. We really have to come together and take action. And also this room is mostly, I see mostly older white people. So again, remember that your people who are Latino are typically working right now, so they can't make these meetings and make their perspectives heard. And they need these type of accessible, you know, transportation. So thank you for hearing me out and I hope that y'all move forward with this and don't weaponize consensus, please.
Hi, my name is Leslie Nielsen. I'm a Capitola resident and I'm on the Business Improvement Area Board for Capitola. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for being good stewards of our tax dollars and protecting our coast. I'd like to just make a few comments on a specific part of the rail and trail plan that has been excluded from the continuous solution for both rail and trail, and that's the Capitola trestle. It's been documented for years that the RTC plans to promote bicycle and pedestrian traffic on the majority of the trail, but to exclude the trail over the trestle and instead route bike and pedestrian traffic through the Capitola Village. I applaud the RTC for promoting a negotiation with the rail operators to relocate the tracks at their expense over SoCal Creek. And when this negotiation is, negotiation is done, the train will have its path. The existing trestle will not be needed for the train and the interest of the RTC to fund this section for the trail appears non-existent. The RTC has also not voted to rail bank the trestle or any part of the corridor. The solution to route thousands of trail users through the village is unsafe and not sustainable. However, the RTC will fund such improvements as it is much cheaper than retrofitting the trestle. The challenges resulting will become Capitola's problem and the RTC will unlikely fund improvements to the aging trestle they have authority over. The trestle needs to be repurposed and used to safely move the trail traffic through this scenic part of the trail as part of this project. Rail banking the trestle requires regulatory approval on the right of way from the rail operators. That was brought up earlier in the discussion tonight or today. So I would just encourage you, whatever outcome you decide today. I'm not here to say go or don't go, just do it right, which I appreciate that you've been trying to do. And get the trestle to be included in part of the solution for the trail part of the rail trail project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anne Smith-Easley. I'm a longtime resident of Santa Cruz, 60 years here. And I want to thank you for the job you're doing, the supervisors and for the staff. I appreciate all this work. I was at the Scotts Valley Transportation Meeting last week and feel that I have kind of an understanding about some of the concerns about financing. And I just want to say, please have faith, be bold, do this. We need mass transit. It's important. And thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat Dillon. I worked for the Regional Transportation Commission for over 20 years, mostly as the deputy director, but in the end as the acting executive director right before George Don Darrow came on. I want to say that I was there over 30 years ago when we started talking about buying the rail line and then doing the trail. Many votes have happened at this level and also with the Regional Transportation Commission and all our city, our coastal cities going forward with this project. And the people have voted many times overwhelmingly to support this project. There are many funding issues, many issues of all sorts that come up with any major transportation project, any major public works project. And I think the staff here, the staff of the Regional Transportation Commission are up to the task to help you through these. But here today, you can take an action to move this forward as we all want it to happen. And I urge you to go along with the CTC's recommendation of this gigantic award of money to our project because it is so good. There are so many projects in other counties waiting for this money if you want to get rid of it, but we need to get it. And I urge you to just move forward directly today and tell the CTC that you're ready to take this money and that we are going to move forward with these segments. I really urge you. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I'm Terry Thomas. I'm a 50 year resident of Capitola and it's okay to talk about cost. There's a $28 million overrun estimate so far, and it doesn't account for the repair of the 33 bridges, which currently only accommodate a single train. Who will pay for these repairs and cost how much? And what about the trail? If it is to go next to the track, who pays for the additional bridges or property to provide for the trail? And what about the nine or 10 proposed stops in the North County alone? Must more property be acquired? And what will the stops consist of? And what about the parking there? And by the way, the trestle doesn't require rare rail banking from what I have heard. There are so many unestimated expenses that proponents say we will eventually cover. But I say, let's estimate first. It won't be chump change. The state is broke and it sounds like the county is too. And I don't want to be paying 20% for all of these expenses with more taxes. I am for fiscal responsibility and thank those who agree.
My name is Pauline Sales and I represent 1,900 members of Santa Cruz Climate Action Network. The county started, the staff started out with talking about the greenhouse gas emissions from our transportation system. It's a disgrace. If you haven't heard, 2023 was the hottest year ever and 24 is shaping up even worse. This is an emergency and bold steps are needed. Money will be available in the future. No procrastination, no more estimation. Let's go ahead right now. Thank you.
I'm Solidine Sale. I live in Santa Cruz. The interim trail option was added to environmental contracts before the vote on 2022's Measure D in case that measure to remove the tracks was successful. County voters overwhelmingly voted no, saying they do not want the rails removed and a trail alone built in their place. The interim trail concept was rejected by nearly three quarters of the voters and should be regarded as dead. What people said they want is the rail trail and electric light rail between Watsonville and Santa Cruz. While it's a large project, it's not an all or nothing proposition like a dam. It can be built in increments, just as the 21 segments of the rail trail are being built. And just like completed segments of the trail, each new contiguous rail segment would attract new ridership, fueling further public support. Rail and trail opponents ignore the reality of incremental project development and repeatedly ask for more time to determine how exactly an entire completed rail and trail system will ultimately be paid for, as if completing the entire project at the same time is the only approach. Greenway activists predicted money would never be found to build a trail while keeping the rail. Since D's defeat, over $100 million in grant funding has been awarded in support of the rail and trail multimodal approach. With approval of segments 10 and 11 today and two years to bridge remaining funding gaps, a contiguous trail next to the tracks from Davenport to Aptos can be finished. This success will boost our odds of success with subsequent grants like those that got us to here. Our county is growing now. Completing the trail next to the tracks will let the voters decide when they want to begin light rail transit. It's inappropriate for the board to predetermine for the 73% how long they will wait. Approve 10 and 11 today. Thank you.
Hi, Jake Goodman, a 50 year resident of the area. 73%. In this day and age, it's hard to get 50% of the people to agree that the sky is blue. And we've got 73% of the people say they want this rail. What's the problem? Let's, let's get going. And now I hear people up here talking about trees. I'm losing my home insurance because I got too many trees. Santa Cruz doesn't have a tree shortage. It's got, it's got a transportation corridor shortage. Let's get it done.
Hello, my name is Susan Kaufman. I'm a longtime 40 plus year resident of Santa Cruz County. I'm a retired Santa Cruz County land use planner. There is an elephant in the room and the elephant is the climate crisis. Our planet is melting and the best thing we can do is think globally and act locally. The way that we can act locally is to build the rail trail now as soon as possible. The way that we can act locally is to build the rail trail now as soon as possible. 70% of the county's greenhouse gases are produced from transportation. We need an alternative to Highway One. Trying to reduce the congestion on Highway One is similar to trying to add holes in your belt loop, in your belt, to reduce obesity. It doesn't work. Highway widening does not work. So what we need to do is we need to certify the EIR now. We need to accept the huge, huge, almost $68 million grant from the state. What a rare thing to have that available. We need to build the trail now and the rail as soon as possible. We need alternatives to Highway One, and this is an amazing opportunity we have. Please. Thank you.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Jeff Perry, and I own a mobile home, the Blue and Gold Mobile Home, Blue and Gold Star Mobile Home. I got a letter from Grace here in January saying that our property is encroaching upon their property. And it effectively said, I'll quote the letter, that the Santa Cruz Rail to Trail reserves the right to remove any remaining unauthorized encroachments and charge the encroaching party for the cost of the removal. So I, I, I'm just really scared about this. It just completely changes my financial situation. I own the mobile home that was purchased by my father for my disabled brother, Chris Perry. Again, he spoke to all of you back in March. He was one of the first people to speak. So, you know, I love the environment. I've always voted for the environment, but this, we, I'm really hoping that you vote for the interim one at this point in time because it will give us some breathing room to be able to figure out what to do. Now, from what I counted, and hopefully I'm not off, there was 15 mobile homes that were along the rail line for the Blue and Gold Star Mobile Home property. On the other side of the property, and this is in Section 10, there is 24 properties. So that's 20, that's 39. 39, you know, people that are affected by this. And we all got the letter. And my big question is like, what about the actual landowners? What, I don't know. And last time, Justin, you said that you wanted, you had a question because there are so many people talking about the mobile home to have the RTC to kind of address it, but I didn't see anything in your op-ed. Anyways, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is David Pace. I'm a Santa Cruz County resident. I'm in District One. And I wanted to thank you for your action today, supporting staff's recommendation. We don't want to sacrifice the $68 million grant from the CTC. I'm a strong supporter of rail and trail, the ultimate trail. This helps with transportation solutions. We need to invest in our infrastructure. I like to use all modes, and this is a very important one, both the rail and the trail. It helps with climate change, addressing climate change and transit equity. So thank you for your support on this, and let's start moving forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Fredericks. I live in Felton, District Five. And I'm at that stage of life where I'm transitioning away from my car to the metro. And I've been using the metro a lot this past year. And it's an amazingly wonderful experience. There's been a lot of changes. The way I use it is the 35 goes downtown. And then the part that's missing for me is I use Simpkins Swim Center. And, and I have a B-cycle subscription. Except that at my time of life, using the, getting into traffic with those bikes is not something that works for me. So I was really heartened by my supervisor's comments at the beginning of the meeting. Supervisor McPherson, I voted for you twice. And when I was first in Santa Cruz in 1990 as the new Director of a nonprofit here, you were very generous to me and my organization, and I never forgot that. And I'm really heartened by what you said today. Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Leiby. I live in Santa Cruz. My wife and I do almost everything we can on a bicycle. We have a tandem around town. And we really, really, really would like to be able to go out to Watsonville and visit our grandchildren that way. And I would like to ask you all just to go ahead and put in the rail and the trail as soon as possible so I don't lose any more money over this. Thank you.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Susan Cavallieri. I have retired nine years ago. I have a
Susan, can you pull the mic closer to your face?
I haven't owned a car for the past nine years. I rely on walking, riding a bike, riding the bus, and carpooling. My goal has been to protect the environment and add, not add another vehicle to already congested roads. That said, there is little hope of alleviating the Highway One congestion if no alternative to vehicles is built. The county needs a commuter train to give all residents an opportunity to improve their commute. And this doesn't happen by widening the highway, which will not decrease plastic pollution from tires, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, ultimately reduce travel and ultimately reduce travel times or safety. Please vote to complete segments 10 and 11 of the rail trail with the nearly $68 million from the state grant. Thank you very much.
Hey, we're sure we're here. In regards, in regards to making any part of the trail less wide by any amount, this would impact my ability and the ability of other disabled peoples to safely use the trail with my wheelchair and other mobility devices due to other pedestrians, bicycles, and bicyclists using the trail at the same time. Furthermore, as I understand the interim plan, it would prevent me and other disabled people from using the trail at all. This, I am not, because of this, I am not sure that this is not only not a good idea. There might be federal laws that would prevent such a thing. I encourage everyone involved in the decision-making processes to consider whether or not cost-saving decisions and other decisions come at the expense of disabled or other disadvantaged peoples. When making decisions based on number of trees being removed, I think consideration should be made as to whether or not those trees are heritage trees, trees, or invasive trees that should be removed for fire and public safety anyway. In other words, does the tree being removed belong in Santa Cruz, California and have a positive effect on the environment? Or do they not really belong in Santa Cruz, California in the first place and have a negative and, and just feed to the fire non-safety of the county? When deciding whether or not to remove or bank any of the rail so that the trestles can be repurposed, I encourage you to make sure you're not opening up the ability of the vocal minority to bank all of the rail. In regards to long-term funding, financial responsibility is always a great thing. However, this is such a long-term project, it is not appropriate to fund, to find funds for things that are not going to happen until significantly down the road. It's just not how the system works, or at least it's not how it's supposed to work. About the mobile home displacements, I encourage the county to find out how people were able to purchase land with a majority right of way on it without knowing about it. There are supposed to be laws and regulations in place to ensure this doesn't happen, but it did. My question is why?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Beverly Day Show, and normally I'm here representing the Electric Vehicle Association. But the larger picture for me is the environment, the climate crisis that we find ourselves in. And transportation is always expensive and difficult to deal with. So I, I want to request that you do accept the money because this is one option that's available. There are so many options that are not available because of even greater funding restrictions. So the 70% that, 70% of emissions that are coming from vehicles isn't saying the whole thing. The whole thing is that what that implies is that these, that vehicles, non-electric vehicles especially, are impacting the climate crisis. This is a solution that will help with those who are able to use that rail trail. Every time I sent my children off to school on the roads, I wondered if they were coming home. I myself have been knocked off my bike and 30 years later still suffer the consequences of that car opening its door and knocking me off my bicycle. So to have a safe corridor for people to commute on is a good idea. Please accept the funding. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Evan. I am a former small business owner that used to run the gamers den in Watsonville. And I am here today not directly as a result of any of the proposals put forward. I am here because I have seen this on the ballot initiatives repeatedly in the past. And on more than one occasion, I thought the matter was already settled. At this point, I have to raise an ancillary effect of this sort of stalling and obstructionist tactics. It's, you're undermining the faith in representative government by doing this. That's a problem. People get disillusioned when a 73% approved measure is held up for a minority that has the money to do whatever they want. You need to act not only in accordance with your office, but with preserving the integrity of the position and the system you represent. I just encourage the supervisors to have a care for what this looks like to the people you represent. If they lose faith in the system and people get disillusioned, I mean, look at January 6th. You, you are playing with fire here. This, this is, this is not good. You need to represent the people who elected you, not anyone else. That's all. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good afternoon. My name is Carl Seibert. I reside in Soquel. Thank you very much for this opportunity. When I've had the opportunity to speak before, I've emphasized, rather than stress people talking about the costs, I'm looking at it more as, considering it as an investment, an investment in our county's future transportation and infrastructure needs, one that future generations of Santa Cruz County residents can utilize, hopefully enjoy and grow. And included in that growth aspect, I'm sure the staff, somebody's got better numbers than I could come up with. But isn't this bound to create a lot of green jobs here? A lot of jobs, period, but many of them I would think would be green jobs. At least I'd wager that much. Anyway, those jobs would be here in Santa Cruz County, which is not much of a commute. That's one I'd sure like to make. Anyway, thank you for consideration. And I'm kind of a fiscal conservative, so I feel really strange standing up here and saying, please, take the money. Take the money, please. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Tina. I just want to say from the beginning, it's been rail and trail. Rail and trail construction, not obstruction. I'd like to also say, as we all know, delays cost more money. And every delay in an action costs us more money. Too many studies, not enough action. And I can't find mine once, and I want to really support Watsonville. I had staff that lived and worked in Watsonville, and Salinas born and raised there. And we need to finish the rail so that we can get electric passenger rail from Watsonville. 80% of the employees at the boardwalk live in Watsonville, probably about 80% live in, that work at Costco, live in South County. So please move forward. Thank you.
Sean Schrum. Having this rail corridor occupied is going to be, it's going to mean more money for every business that you can think of. Imagine Seascape cutting deals for their guests with surf shops and caterers, you know, working out contracts with Mountain Wineries down on the, down on the north end. Every linen company, every, every liquor marketer, everything you can imagine, housekeeping. Money is gonna be made and it's gonna, a lot of it is gonna stay local. I hear the word historic tossed around by people on both sides of this issue. That makes it sound kind of cute, but this is valuable infrastructure. This is a generation's worth of infrastructure, built by people like my grandfather, a disabled Afro-Mexican native who worked in the roundhouse and double shifts during the war because he wasn't a, he wasn't a citizen. My other grandfather packed railroad cars with blocks of ice when he and my grandmother were, when their marriage was fresh and new. You know, Foster Anderson, the executive officer and founder of Shared Adventures, the largest, most well-networked, best-known nonprofit for indoor and outdoor activities for people with mental and physical disabilities. He was here earlier and he couldn't stay any longer. But he says he, you know, he can't wait for this to be finished as soon as possible as when he wants it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Ellerick. I'm a Mid-County resident. I've been in Aptos and up, or closer, Vienna Woods for over 50 years. Trails are, and rails are very important to me. And, you know, I've, I got a few more years, but I'd love to see people, you know, that are growing up have that to look forward to. And I would hate to see it, you know, slip through our fingers here on, on the cost issue. It's, it can't happen. Just don't let it happen. And think of the future. That's, that's where we're at right now. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Melody Sharp. Been here since 81 and paying my taxes, my property taxes. I want to thank you so much for changing your mind. First of all, I know your entire campaign, both campaigns, were funded by the train, the train haters. And so I'm really grateful that all these people have had an impact on you. I want to make one small point about the rail banking, which is a complete lie. When you pull the tracks, they never go back. We all understand that. So the function of keeping those tracks there as long as possible to me is the wise move. So thank you again for changing your minds.
My name is Stacy. I'm, I live in Ben Lomond. I moved here 26 years ago, and I didn't know I would live here this long. But I commuted on that path that you're taking through Capitola to Santa Cruz when, when I moved here. That's why I'm here. But we have a unique opportunity to link our most popular and populous villages together with rail. Please take the funds and approve the ultimate trail.
Hello. Hello, and thank you so much for your time and listening. Hard for me to, to come up, to be up here. I struggle not because I struggle not because I don't have something to say, but because I witnessed such mean spiritedness from people who have differing opinions and, and points of view and who choose to frame the conversation in, in a negative way. And it's intimidating, frankly. I also hear people referring to a measure that has passed or another one that has not passed and then attributing motivations to people who voted. And I feel that, well, so if, well, in other words, so if someone voted one way, it means this. If they voted another way, it means this other thing. And I think that, I don't think that's true necessarily. And I think at the very best, it's inaccurate. I'm here to make a stand for the interim trail for all the reasons that have been brought up at previous meetings and previous discussions and a little bit here today. Although of course, as you've seen, not, not so, not so much with the organized groups that are here. But the reasons that would stand out for me over and over again is that it is, it saves more trees, it is less costly, it's more financially responsible. It doesn't force people from their homes today when they don't need to be. It doesn't restrict coastal access. The historic Capitola trestle can be used for the trail. And the, 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 the list goes on. So thank you so much for listening to me amidst what feels like a sea of something that's very different. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before you speak, let's see, is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak to us on this item? Okay, please stand in line and after we finish it, we're going to move to the online participants. So go ahead.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name is Trina Kaufman Gomez and I have been a former council member for the city of Watsonville and have also had the pleasure of serving on the Regional Transportation Commission as well as the metro. I'm working also with Mr. Person with the Community Choice Aggregate, which is also an environmentally useful energy solution that we've had, that we've adopted in this community. So this also goes in alignment with that legacy that we have for our retiring supervisor of not only the Community Choice Aggregate of the Central Coast Community Power, but also the legacy of having these funds accepted for us to move forward with this particular project. And that is to keep in mind with what the strategic plan is. That's health equity, attainability for the community development, reliable transportation, community mobility, sustainable environment, and also the local conservation. All of these are components of the strategic plan to get us to this particular point that we're in. We will always be looking for money. That will be for every project, whether it's in your own household or whether it's in projects that we're doing for our community to benefit the community here. We also have young adopters. We have many youth that aren't getting licenses, that are using public transit, and they will be the first set of adopters. And I'm hoping that we have a solution before I've retired out and we've been here, my family's been here for about a century. We have also the, the, this is one of the largest grants in, for us to lose that would be detrimental. Because it would become the brick Berlin wall of our county if we don't move forward with this particular project. We have sacrificed tremendously from the south, 100, an hour and 20 minutes to get to this campus. If we're going to be here to work on time at 9:00 AM sacrifices our community's quality of life from the south end of this county. And we need to make sure that we're no longer compromising this and that we are finding the solutions and working collectively to make this happen and benefit our community as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Jeremiah Daniels, Santa Cruz District Five. I wanted to first speak to the obstructionism. Leaders lead from the front. They identify challenges, but then they work with their communities to find solutions. Over and over again, the community has shown you through not just popular polls or organizations coming to these meetings, but actual referendums to the votes. Time and time again, a super majority, most often, speaking to the 2016 Measure D, that was 67% passed. It's a very popular thing. And as someone else said, very hard to get that much, that many people, more than 50% to say the sky's blue. So to suggest that it was a, not a popular thing is, is misleading. So Measure D 2016 was very popular, even though it was a sales tax. Yeah. And so when you are not finding solutions as leaders, that is obstructionism. We really need you as, as a youth, as environmentally conscious folks. We need you to, yes, nobody doesn't say that this isn't going to cost us money, but we all acknowledge that investing in the future for both the climate change, for, for getting rid of car, 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 car culture and roads and how expensive all of those are. This is the future that we're talking about. And deficit spending is not a new concept. Alexander Hamilton wrote to great length about deficit spending. This is not at all, yeah. Finding money, as the last speaker said, finding money is gonna be the job that we elect you for. And when we also vote over and over again for this, please listen to us. So yes, please approve the staff recommendations without any further delay. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Barry Scott. I've lived in Aptos. And I first, I first want to thank Supervisor McPherson and Supervisor Koenig for, for being willing to come together with the, our other two supervisors. And I'm gonna go out on a limb and I'm gonna ask this board to unanimously support staff recommendations without exception. Maybe I'll get my way. I want to, I know this is not the end of it. You know, we know that there's going to be some resistance, but I would like to speak to the unnecessary, I think, divisiveness that has occurred. And some of that comes from, we all have different values. But what I, what I would ask people to do is to just try to look at the other party's point of view. Look at, I spent a lot of time in Watsonville, most of my time in fact. And nobody down there is super concerned about a continuous trail to Santa Cruz. They want Watsonville's segment 18 done. That can be done, I believe. Doesn't have to wait for the train. They want the, they want the rail so badly. And I think plenty of people in the north want the rail as well. I know that we're going to be hearing more and more about the Capitola trestle, which the capital bridges, which belong to the RTC, which belong to the county and are part of what will be a regional rail network. And I pray that our leaders will set that aside. The idea of an interim trail, rail banking, or any other such thing, and be, be joining Tam C and others in a vision for passenger rail system. And of course, a trail where we can do it when we can do it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elaine Rolphas. I'm in District One on Glen Canyon Road. Been there for 49 years. And I'm appreciating your all coming together on this and to going forward to get our rail going. And I'm hoping also, not just beyond Section 10 and 11, but all the way to Watsonville. So, and I'm hoping I live long enough to be able to ride it. So, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Victoria Nobles. I have lived in Santa Cruz for 23 years now. I'm a homeowner in District One and a business owner in District One. And my business specifically is preschool and it's working with families of Santa Cruz. And for the past 10 years, I've seen a lot of families leave for a lot of reasons. We serve families in Ben Lomond, all the way to Aptos. And a lot of families have chosen not to go to our preschool because of the commute. And if our, if our community actually had more accessibility, not just via bike routes, which I love. I'm a cyclist myself. But if we were thinking beyond ourselves and our own experiences, even I'm 41. If I don't see it, that's a damn shame, but at least people beyond me get to see it. And I really need y'all to get a little more radical with your imaginations. I understand the bureaucratic nonsense on some level, certainly not as much as you. But I need you to push harder for something a little more creative than the status quo because our community deserves it. We have voiced our opinions. Our families need it if we want families to thrive and have accessibility in our county. And I'm here to advocate not just for my own interest, because yes, I would love to have a rail trail in completion in my lifetime. But really thinking beyond our own experience because it's easy to get stuck when everything feels like shit. And it does right now and it feels hard, but be more radical, be braver. Please come up with better creative sys, solutions because the future of Santa Cruz depends on it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jerry Libby. I'm really old, but I've got a pack of grandchildren. And I want to see a happy, environmentally workable future for them. And for, I, I see people in Watsonville, my grand, one grandson lives there. It's an hour commute and don't be pound, what is it, penny foolish, pound foolish, whatever that old saying is, go for it. And 70% said, go for it. Make it 100%, you guys.
All right, with that, we're going to close our in-person comments. And so I'd like to turn to the click to see how many people we have online.
Some folks are raising and lowering their hands again. Right now we have 21 speakers queued online.
Yeah, I think what we're gonna do, given the amount of comment that we've had here in the room today and the people for coming out, I'm gonna say that we'll reduce it to one minute for the folks online so we can continue moving forward.
Cammy, your microphone's now available.
Hi, sorry to hear that. I only have a minute yet once again, but, so I'm Cammy Corbin. I live in Castle Mobile Home along the tracks and my family's been in Santa Cruz for over 100 years. And I, I'm gonna ask, first of all, I was a little disparaged by a couple of comments. Please don't be bullied by the threats of violence, as a couple have said. I don't think that should have even been brought up. And I'm not going to go through all the stuff that I was going to go through, but I am going to address the real elephant in the room. That is the residents who are affected by this. So no one is talking about this. Mr. Cummings, in March, at the March meeting, you asked the county head about the residents to which he replied, the RTC is working with them. RTC is not working with this? We have heard nothing. Let me repeat, nothing, except for a letter a few months ago that stated we had to move our fences or they will. Where are the answers? Where's the dialogue? Who's in charge here? Who's the one answering us? And are you listening to us? We ask you please to take this moment and listen to us, please.
Brian, your microphone's now available.
Hi, this is Brian Peoples with Trail Now. We support, we would like to add the $2 million for the interim trail to be included in the design as well as the Capitola trestle being converted. That's important because the ultimate trail design is already out of specs. On Thursday of this week, the consultants for the rail have already said that the ultimate trail configuration design is not meet in code. It's at 8.5 setback and it requires 12-foot setback for a train traveling 60 miles an hour through our community. So I, I want you to suggest that we add that 2 million. The other thing I'd suggest to the community about the interim trail is it's a quick solution. It's a fast solution. And when you leave the tracks there, you have 88 minimum requirements not met, such as Palm Street on the existing trail on the west side. Go look at it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, your microphone's now available.
Hello, my name is Helen Bryce. I live in Capitola. I am speaking in support of interim trail. Very concerned about the fact that the ultimate trail will not need specs. I'm concerned about budget over, that the budget will go over. I am also deeply concerned about the people who will lose their homes. There's something like 40 people who have property that will be taken by the ultimate trail. And I'm shocked that no one has mentioned the Monarch Butterfly situation that would be disrupted by removing any trees. I could go on for quite a while, but I'll just say that I believe that the interim trail is a great thing to do because we could always add the rail later. Thank you.
Lonnie, your microphone's now available. Thank you, Chair Cummings and Supervisors. Equity Transit urges you who serve our voting majority to approve all staff recommendations in support of the ultimate trail configuration. Any supervisor voting today who is serious about equity for South County will support the staff recommendations as not doing so will seriously jeopardize future grants from the state to complete the trail all the way to Watsonville. The interim trail requires rail banking and this means no passenger rail ever for our community. Rail banking jeopardizes our zero emission passenger rail connecting us to the state rail network and means we continue to contribute to the climate crisis and undermines our future, our children and equity. The steel-on-steal of rail is the most energy efficient, safest, ecologically sound formal travel ever invented, minimizing our extraction of natural resources and production of toxins from toxic tire spray plastics. Please approve and move forward and ensure we do not lose the $68 million grant we applied for and received for segments 10 and 11. Thank you so much. Please approve staff recommendations today. Lowell, your microphone's now available.
Thank you very much. I do live in Watsonville and on the west side of Watsonville in the second supervisory district. And I have been a longtime elected official in South County. I want to thank the supervisors and the staff for moving us forward. It's been a long time struggle, but linking 10 and 11 to the north and the south, this is, gets the communities connected. And so I want to say, clean up the line, clean up the right of way and use it. Let's be bold, brave, get the job done, get the, get the county moving. And please approve staff recommendations unanimously. Thank you very much.
Joanna, your microphone's now available.
Hello, Supervisors. Thank you for seeking the information you need to make well-informed decisions. The EIR states that no rail service of any type is proposed as part of the trail project. Yet I think we can all agree that the reason for building the ultimate trail is so that we can accommodate passenger rail whenever that might happen. Keeping that in mind, today you're considering segments 10 and 11. But I hope you've had a chance to see the RTC staff report for Thursday as it explains that the ultimate trail as proposed right now is too close to the railroad tracks. Current setbacks are insufficient for passenger rail. What this means, I think, is that on the, on all of the corridor between Santa Cruz and Aptos, the RTC must opt for either moving the trail away from the tracks by narrowing the, the trail's width or moving the track away from the trail through realignment. This sounds expensive, possibly project prohibitive. And I hope you will evaluate whether the benefits of the project satisfy the CTC requirements. Thank you.
David, your microphone's now available.
Hi there. Thank you. My name is David Moody, Santa Cruz resident since 2012. I'll be very succinct. I just wanted to say, please move forward on the ultimate trail configuration without delay. Don't put the grant money at risk. Honor Santa Cruz voters. I will add, based on what, some of what I've heard today, there's obviously problems with all plans. I believe that they can be solved. Please approve segments 10 and 11 and build it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Pam, your microphone's now available.
Yes, Pam North from District One. I am not in support of the staff, staff recommendations. I am not in support of 39 homes being uprooted without a rail solution. I am in support of financial responsibility and of continuing to support the metro enhancements which use an existing infrastructure. If you must, the interim trail for now. Thank you.
Alex, your microphone's now available.
Hi, this is Alexandra Fisher. I just wanted to voice my support for approving the ultimate configuration for segments ten and eleven of the rail trail. I want to repeat the fact that almost seventy percent of our county's emissions are from transportation, according to the 2022 Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Building a zero emission train is one of the only ways we will be able to bring that number down. Building a train is expensive, but dealing with climate crisis catastrophes will also be expensive. Please continue to support the rail trail, especially in the ultimate configuration. Thank you.
Deb, your microphone's now available. As a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself.
Hi, I have a different reason why I believe the interim trail is the best solution at this time. As we all agree, this is a long-term project. By the time we ever get a train funded, will we really still believe that a train on tracks is the way to go? Fixed track trains are already old technology. We all know that the current train tracks will need to be removed and or moved. This single train track doesn't allow the folks to actually get people where they need to go. If we had rubber wheeled vehicles that moved along the corridor but could also act like a metro bus to get people where they live and work, that would be a better transportation option. It gives us the option of a safer, wider trail and the flexibility of a vehicle that goes on and off the corridor. And if and when the coast cliffs crumble, this vehicle can go around that area. Please think of the future technology that may work better for our community and support the interim trail now so we can consider other technology options. Thank you.
Diane, your microphone's now available.
The interim trail has been voted down by a landslide, as we all know. So it's time to stop studying it, to stop talking about it. There's no funding for it. And we need to stop talking about rail banking. It will never work. The idea was voted down in 2022 with Measure D. Build the ultimate trail and passenger rail. We need it soon. Thank you.
Theo, your microphone's now available.
Thank you. I live in Santa Cruz County. My name is Theo Kell and I work for the county as well. I bike and use transit wherever, wherever I can, but for commuting to work, I don't have a feasible choice right now except to drive on the Highway One corridor and it sucks. I just would like to say that we need to move forward with rail and trail as quickly as possible and by any means necessary. For the sake of the environment and the livelihoods of the people living and working here in the county, it's irresponsible to delay it. I'm hoping you will approve the staff recommendation and move forward with the ultimate trail and accept the grant money. Thank you.
Rafa, your microphone's now available.
Hi there, Rafa Sonnenfeld. I live in Santa Cruz. I support the staff recommendations without exception. I'm also a bike user and have been actively using the, the trail on the west side of Santa Cruz and would like to see the trail move forward as soon as possible. I support rail and trail and just wanted to say, don't be penny wise and pound foolish. Don't risk the tens of millions in grants we already have. And the fastest way to get a trail now is to move forward with the ultimate trail. Thank you.
Stephanie, your microphone's now available.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Mott and I live in Supervisor Conig's District One. And I just wanted to say, thank you for letting us speak. Supervisor Conig, before the election, I met you in person at the Live Oak Farmer's Market and asked you about your position on the rail trail. And you said, the people have spoken. So I just applaud you and also Supervisor McPherson in changing your decision to approve the rail trail and honor the well of the people. Spending on infrastructure is the best use of our money at this time, I believe. And it will, it's a, it's a vote for the future. And I encourage you to work with, also work with residents to solve some of the problems that exist. There will be problems. There will be challenges, but I applaud you and I have confidence that you will be able to face those challenges. I encourage you to vote for the rail trail. Thank you.
Jessica, your microphone's now available.
Hi, this is Jessica Evans. Thank you, Chair Cummings and supervisors for having a public hearing and letting everyone speak. I know you've heard a lot of people say a lot of things and I'm probably not going to say anything different than everybody else, but I do, I do just want to encourage you to move forward with the piece of infrastructure that is in front of you, which is the ultimate trail configuration with a grant in your pocket. And that segment ten and eleven will create an incredible benefit for quality of life for young people in mid-county especially, to be able to get back and forth to Santa Cruz to their first job at the boardwalk or wherever it is, it's going to make a really big difference. So thank you for, thank you for voting for the ultimate trail and accepting the grant.
Lisa, your microphone's now available.
Hello, my name is Lisa Colombo. I'm thirty years old and I live and work in the Live Oak area of Santa Cruz. I use my bike as my primary mode of commuting and alternative means of, means of transportation are the future of Santa Cruz as we work towards environmental protection and sustainability. I wanted to articulate my support for approving this project, accepting the grant and building section ten and eleven of the rail trail. Thank you.
Linda, your microphone's now available.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Will Schusen. I live in Live Oak and I was Executive Director of the Regional Transportation Commission between nineteen eighty-five and two thousand and five. It seems to me that the longer we wait to get going on the trail and the rail, the more costly and overdesigned the rail trail system is going to be. We've needed this system for at least fifty years and the RTC has been working on it for over thirty years. We need forward thinking leadership from our elected officials as well as from our fabulous civic advocates. And I appreciate all of you who are showing us that today. I also encourage the RTC to increase their communication with the mobile home residents who live along the rail corridor. They will be directly impacted and I think they deserve to be listened to. Thank you.
JT, your microphone's now available. As a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself or you can accept the unmute request. I'm going to move along to the next speaker and we'll come back to JT later. Rosemary, your microphone's now available.
My name is Rosemary Sarka and I work with Roaring Camp. And I think that we are in a very good position to express great appreciation for the staff's work on this. We've worked with them closely and their dedication and enthusiasm and energy has been terrific. We also are grateful to the supervisors, especially those who have taken this opportunity to reconsider their judgment and vote for it. And we show our appreciation by willing to work with the county and with the RTC in any way that we can volunteer both with work and also with counseling. Thank you so much.
Ben, your microphone's now available.
Ben Vernatz here. I'll leave the worst for last, I guess. The ultimate trail is a public nuisance. Forty percent of ten and eleven is eight foots in width. The estimated usage in two hundred and nineteen, two thousand and nineteen was five eighty-four per hour during the peak, both adding both together. Now with rentals and e-bikes is six to seven hundred. Re, e-bike, mini bikes have three feet handle to handle. And they have to go in a four feet with trail with pedestrians. That's not going to work. This is very extremely dangerous. I recommend that you have the Department of Justice, ADA compliance people review it along with California OSHA before you decide. I mean, this is deadly. Figuratively and possibly really. And you'll be subject, if you don't, maybe to misfeasance or malfeasance and so will CTC. They've been notified and they're promoting this also. Thank you very much.
Circling back to JT. JT, your microphone's now available. It appears they're not able to, to connect. However, one final speaker has their hand raised. Kim, your microphone is now available. Oh, she has removed. Okay. Dawn, your microphone's now available.
Hello, this is Don Lortzen. I live in Mid County in Santa Cruz.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that, Dawn. Go ahead and try again.
Thank you. Hi Lo, this is Don Lortzen. I live in the mid-county area in eastern Santa Cruz. I recommend that you approve the staff recommendations for the ultimate trail. I believe county residents need all the right of way from Santa Cruz to Watsonville that we can get to serve all in the future and all forms of transportation. Highway one, as we know, even widened will not be enough in the long term. I think we should move forward as far, as fast as we can. Funding is always an issue for these kind of large projects which require, you know, persistence and work which we all need, know we'll need to do. Thank you.
Final attempt for JT. JT, your microphone's now available. Okay, we have no further speakers here.
Okay. Well, I just want to start by thanking everybody for coming today and for their comments and thank the staff for the presentation. A number of questions did come up that I think I want to see if staff maybe could provide some clarity on. The first of which, you know, there's a lot of discussion around what's before us today between ultimate trail and the interim trail. I'm just wondering if staff can highlight a little bit about, you know, why removing the recommendations to move forward with interim trail and the, you know, what challenges there will be should we have moved forward with interim trail.
Yep. Thank you for that question. So as you all know, to date, the project through the environmental review processes included both the ultimate and the interim trail configuration. And the, the reason for that was, 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 there were multiple reasons for that, but mainly, you know, it was important for the county and the community to understand and to have a transparent process that analyzed the impacts and the design for, for both of these configurations, which were the, you know, the two dominant ones in the community. So we, we carried that through the environmental review process. However, at this point, the board is required to take, to make a decision essentially. So in order for us to file a notice of determination, which completes the California Environmental Quality Act process, that's the environmental review process for the state, there has to be a clear definition of what the, what the board is approving today. So essentially you have to choose one of the alignments. And so the staff recommendation is, is to approve the project in the ultimate trail configuration with the inclusion of design option B, which as we discussed on March twenty-sixth, is the portion of the trail that runs between Grove Lane and Coronado Street where the, the rail line is close to those bluffs. And so that gives us the flexibility in that area to, to have the trail on either side of the track, should it become necessary with the coastal commission. The second piece is that the, the actual transportation program grant requires a single alignment or a single build alternative be selected. And again, when we applied for the grant, we've applied for the ultimate trail configuration. So baseline agreement and the grant require that we move forward with, with only a single option. So the, the majority of the, the recommended actions in front of you, numbers four through six are for the ultimate trail configuration only. The one that is slightly different is the, the adoption of findings, a statement of overriding considerations and the mitigation monitoring reporting program is for the project in its entirety. And that includes both the ultimate trail and the interim trail. And that's simply to have sequoque clearance for both options to sort of to provide maximum flexibility in project delivery. Great. So that answers the questions.
Thank you. The next question that came up is the impacts of the trail and the mobile home parks and, you know, what's going to happen with those people's homes. And I did bring that up last time and I still share concern about that and just wondering if staff can speak to that and then, you know, what opportunities are there to kind of work with those homeowners. I I think in part there's, you know, issues as it relates to the sale of real property in certain cases, and sometimes maybe not everything's disclosed. And then all of a sudden somebody owns a house and they didn't know that they were encroaching on other property. I'm not sure what happened in this instance, but I do share some of the concerns with the homeowners, you know, the fact that we're going to move forward and there's going to be impacts on these, these residents. So just wanted to hear, you know, what to hear from staff about this and what opportunities there might be.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that question. So yeah, I just want to acknowledge obviously this is a very sensitive, difficult issue for, for the people affected. From our analysis so far, there's approximately ten to eleven mobile homes that would be impacted. I believe there's six on the north side of the tracks and five on the south side. This is a very narrow portion of the rail right of way owned by the RTC. Those mobile homes for, as you noted, for, you know, a variety of reasons that were in the past and we don't have full knowledge of are encroaching onto the RTC right of way. And in this particular location, it's very likely that we'll need the full width of the right of way to fit both the trail and the train in this area. So the RTC has started, as, as some of the, the callers has mentioned, discussions with mobile homeowners. I know they've had several meetings with the mobile home park owners. And I believe right now they're in the process of finalizing a contract with a consultant who specializes in, in mobile homes and mobile home relocations that will advise the RTC on, on the next steps and what, what can be done in these areas. I do know, I don't want to speak for you, Grace, but, you know, the RTC is taking this seriously. There've been some, some closed session discussions at the RTC talking about how this is handled. So, and, and just to clarify too, I didn't state this originally, but the RTC is responsible for clearing encroachments into their right of way. So this will not be handled by the county. This will be handled at the RTC. And Grace, if you want to add anything else, you're welcome to do so.
Thanks for raising the issue. I'd just like to say that we'll bring an update to the RTC either at the May or June meeting on the progress we've made with our consultant and looking at options and so that people have know what's happening and give us a timeline for next steps.
Great. Thanks. Well, it's good to know that the RTC is going to be following up on this item and that more discussion on how that can be, those issues can be resolved can happen with the RTC. Okay, with that, I have, I don't know if there's any other questions or comments from ward members at this time. Seeing none, I'll just make a couple final remarks before we take a vote. And I just want to, you know, thank my colleagues for bringing up the questions that they had to help me to clarify around funding. It does actually seem like some of the concerns that were raised have been resolved with, you know, the RTC making a commitment to funding the project moving forward. And, you know, we're definitely going to need to, you know, get creative in terms of how we're going to fund this project fully to make it work. But you know, we've been moving, we've been making a lot of progress over the years. I know it's been a long time coming, but we've seen the trestle at the, well, the, the, the portion of the trestle on the Santa Cruz trestle get widened and that, that came in under budget. I believe right now we have segment five that's, that was out to bid and it sounds like there's a contract that's going to be awarded and that came in underbid. And we've been, you know, making progress within the city of Santa Cruz on their segments. And this is going to can further contribute to us being able to complete the rail. I, I do also want to bring to people's attention that we did receive a letter from the city of Watsonville this morning and they are also in support of us moving forward with this today. So So with all the talk around equity and impacts to South County, I mean, it does say something when the city of Watsonville says we want you to move forward because I think they understand as well the impacts that could occur if we were to lose this funding here today and what that would mean for South County. And so I hope we can all continue to work towards South County, getting as much funding as they need to move forward with their projects. And my hope is that today we can approve this segment and keep moving forward with the rail and trail. And so with that, I'm going to, there's separate motions that need to be made. I'm going to go to Supervisor McPherson.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, the, on the recommended actions, the first one is withdrawn. Is that, that's part of these?
Yeah, the first, the first action that you should take, the chair should solicit a motion to withdraw the approval of Resolution 78 2024 from the March 26th.
Okay.
Board meeting. That should be the first thing we do.
I would move that.
Second. Yep. So motion by Supervisor McPherson, second by Supervisor Conig to withdraw the approval of Resolution 78 2024 from March 26, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. With that, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Supervisor Conig.
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Item two is. So item two is to conduct a public hearing. We've already done that. And so the next items that would need to be adopted would be items numbers three through seven on the, with the staff, on the board's agenda.
With that, recommended actions.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor McPherson, second by Supervisor Conig to remove, to move the remaining staff recommendations for this item. And with that, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Sure, me too. Supervisor Conig.
Aye.
Hernandez?
Yes.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously with Supervisor Bren. And with that, we have had a long meeting today, so that concludes our meeting and we hope to see you all in the future and look forward to hearing about the progress on this project. Thank you.